Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, city manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Protem, and District Six.
Joanne Kogle, District Seven.
Walker Garrett, District Eight. Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor.
Tyson Begley, Post Ten at Large Counselor.
Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Appreciate you tuning in on the August 29th city council meeting. This is a work session. There'll be some business conducted, but for the most part, the counselors will be taking a look at some items that are timely and of importance right now. We'll start off as we always do, though, and that is by asking God's blessing on these proceedings. And we're delighted to have Jimmy Blanton, from Columbus Baptist Association of Columbus here with us. Jimmy, welcome.
Appreciate that. I have a verse of scripture I want to read. First of all, then, I urge you that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all who are in authority and high positions, that we, the citizens, may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. I'm to pray for y'all so that you can lead me. Our city needs to be led in deep, deep waters and do the right things. And I appreciate each one of you today. It's my joy to pray with you. Father, I pray in Jesus's name today. I pray, Lord, asking that you would bless our counselors and our mayor, or that they may all have wisdom and strength to do the right thing regardless of popularity. God, I pray that you would give them grace as they walk through delegate waters and, Lord, as they try to maneuver through all of the obstacles that they face as a council. God, let the people pray for them daily, and, Lord, may they serve us faithfully. And we'll give you the praise and honor and glory of what you do, for we ask it in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Jimmy, thank you, sir. We appreciate what you do. If you would, please rise and join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, one order of business, one of the first ones. We'll ask council if they've had an opportunity to review the minutes. And if they have, and if there are no edits, we'll entertain a motion to approve. All right, motion is their second. Motion, second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, from there, we'll move to the city attorney. Can hit your light. There you go.
Work session agenda, listed, Mayor. We don't have anything official till the end of this agenda, but city manager, I want to kick off his presentation.
We'll move straight into the work session agenda then. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and good morning. I've got items on the work session agenda that have been requested by members of council. And so first, I've got the inspection and code update by Director Rand Pruitt. We've got railroad crossings that will come by Director Donna Newman. Parks and Recreation's update by Director Holly Browder. And then listed is something for the Mayor Protem, One Small Step. And then the chief appraisal of the tax office, Tax Assessor's Office has asked to bring forward an update on Department of Audit and Accounts Sales Ratio Study. It's a time-sensitive matter that she needs to respond to prior to our next city council meeting. So we will start off with Director Rand Pruitt with an inspections and code update. Mr. Pruitt?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good morning, Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Attorney. As requested, I am here to provide an update on code enforcement, but after discussions with the city manager, wanted to highlight all the work that inspections and codes does. So the bulk of the presentation and discussion may be on the code enforcement side of the house, but didn't want to highlight all the work that our department and my employees complete for the city. So I have some pictures, and we'll talk about some processes and things in this presentation. So if there's any questions at any time, please let me know. So inspections and codes, so what do we do? In a nutshell, we are a law enforcement department. So a lot of times, people don't think of building codes and minor city ordinances as laws, but that's what they are. And that's what we are responsible for the enforcement of. So the state adopts a minimum building code. We are given that authority through state law as a local jurisdiction to enforce that building code. We also enforce the city's development ordinance, all the zoning requirements, anything historic properties, all that kind of stuff that's in the development ordinance. We're charged with that. Nuisance ordinances, you know, trash on people's property, overgrown grass, anything related to private property that our ordinance defines as a nuisance falls to us. And then some other miscellaneous ordinances. We'll get into a couple of those later. We are also responsible for project management of city building projects. This was something that was adjusted in 2021 when, within my department, a chief inspector position was created. And that position has the responsibility of supervising the inspectors we have, as well as assisting in the management of city projects. And we'll get into that a little bit later as well. We have a total of 30 employees, including myself. Most of my folks are split into two divisions, the building permitting and inspection side and the code enforcement side. And there's four positions, myself, I have an assistant director, an office manager, and a GIS position that kind of service both divisions. So I'll jump into code enforcement. Code enforcement has 11 positions currently. There's a code enforcement manager responsible for the overall operation of the division, code enforcement technician who's in the office all the time. That position's responsible for helping to answer the phones, helping to mail out letters, and ensure the paperwork that the officers are doing is in line. Then we have nine code enforcement officers that are charged with going out in the field every day and working the cases and resolving any violations that they may find. I would mention that during the last fiscal year, we did have three vacancies happen at the same time among our officer positions. So we did get down to six out of the nine filled at one time. However, we are fully staffed in this division since July 24th. So the code enforcement officers are split. Again, there's nine of them, so we have districts A through I. Here's the map of those districts. The map, the districts are not created based on land area. They are created based on the number of complaints and work orders that we get in those districts. So you can see some of the smaller districts. That typically means we have more complaints and issues in those districts. So this is how the nine districts throughout the city are created. So each officer is assigned the district for a year, and then they rotate to a different district the following year. Usually, April is when we do that transition. So that's how those districts are arranged. So responsibilities, so what are the code enforcement officers going out and looking at? So it's private property code violations. So again, everything, mostly everything inspections and code touches has to do with private property. There's issues on the right-of-way that is typically going to fall to public works, although we do try to work together to resolve the problems as, you know, as quick as we can. So private property violations, those would include weeds. And again, I have some pictures and some examples of most of these cases later on in the presentation that just provides more detail. But weeds, solid waste, which is trash. There's also stockpiling violations, which is things that you shouldn't have stored outside, such as, you know, washing machines or things like that, appliances you see stored outside, junk vehicles. The property maintenance code, so property maintenance cases are for structures that are, have some issues, but they are not so bad as to be qualified for demolition. And then, of course, we handle the demolition process, which I think everybody here is pretty familiar with. We come several times a year for approval to tear down some structures. Code enforcement also does business license enforcement, so we work with the finance department. We are the enforcement arm for the business license side. So non-renewals, excise taxes, we handle enforcement of those when there's any issues. Short-term rentals, those fall to code enforcement as well when there's any issues with those, ones that are non-licensed. Those will fall to code enforcement. We do do a few things on the right-of-way. Probably the most common are the illegal signs on the right-of-way. This is a challenge for us. We pick up a couple hundred a week, and it seems like every time we pick one up, a couple more pop back up in their place. But we do handle the illegal signs. The other one that's common is the commercial vehicles, either parked on the right-of-way or parked in a residential district where they're not supposed to be. So those types of calls do get handed off to code enforcement. Landlord tenant issues. So these are complaints where a tenant is living in some housing that does not meet the property maintenance code that the city has adopted. The tenant can call us, we'll go inspect the property and document any issues. And then zoning ordinance violations. So, you know, one common example is a, you know, auto repair shop's supposed to have a fenced enclosure to keep the vehicles out of view. If their fence gets damaged or anything like that, and they don't repair it, we'll go out and give them a notice or a warning to fix the fence and work with them on those issues. Again, this isn't an exhaustive list. This is just the highlights in some of the most popular cases that we get. So some numbers, so what we were able to accomplish in fiscal year 2023, so this would be for the period from July 1st, 2022, until June 30th of 2023. So we investigated and closed 4,525 cases. 4,280 of those, or 94.6%, were closed within 90 days. And 90 days is really my, you know, my goal's to get 100 cases closed within 90 days. And we'll go through some of the processes later. But, you know, there are some issues that can arise when we're working a case, but the goal's to get 100% closed within 90 days, get the nuisance abated if we have to, and get everything closed out. So the average case duration was 24.7 days. We conducted over 9,600 inspections. 67 properties were removed from the demolition list, both through what the city demolished ourselves and through what the owner took care of on their own property. 226 properties were cleaned up by the city and bills and liens sent to the owner. And then we towed 67 vehicles off of private property that, this was an ordinance change council enacted last year. So that was a new process for us. We're getting better at this process. There's a little bit of a learning curve for us, but this number will go way up this fiscal year. For example, last week, we towed 10, just in the last week alone. So that's just was a new process for us we were easing into last year. So I think this slide shows a lot about what we were able to achieve. This is how much money we spent on cleaning up private property in the last five fiscal years. So you can see back in FY '19 and '20, you know, we weren't spending a whole lot of money below $50,000. So we're really just getting the really easy cases. You know, the $100 cleanups, $200 cleanups. You know, last year, we spent over $250,000 cleaning up other people's property. So, you know, there is a process. It can take a little bit of time, but if you have violations on your property, you're either going to clean them up, or we're going to come clean it up for you. So let's talk about the process of how a case starts, how we work it, you know, a little bit, dive into a little bit of those details. So we receive complaints in many ways. You know, one of the most common is the 311 or 3311, so they use Q Alert, which is a work order system. So citizens can call 311, you know, give them, you know, the address of a house in their neighborhood that has some issues. 311 routes it to us, and we take that and create the case and work it from there. We get phone calls straight to the department. We'll get letters. Neighborhood groups often will send a letter, and, you know, a handful of neighbors will sign the letter, you know, indicating that there's a problem at a certain location. We'll get emails directly to our department email. The quality control team, which is something that was created, the city manager created a year or two ago, where some employees go out on the weekend and just document issues and create work orders for various city departments. So we get about 75 to 100 work orders per week from that effort. So we get a lot of input from that. And then our officers do patrol. So when they finish their inspections for the day, have an hour or two where they don't have any inspections on the books, you know, they'll go around and look for issues. The other thing we emphasize with them, and the expectation is, is that if I'm working, I got to complain about this house, it has overgrown grass. I work that case before I hop back in my truck and leave, you know, take 30 seconds and look around, see what other issues, you know, are on that street, what's next door. You know, we create, the expectation is, even if it's not for inspections and codes, we're going to create a work order, you know, if there's some trash on the right-of-way or pothole in the street. If you see something wrong, go ahead and create an issue in 311 and get it routed to the appropriate department. So initial inspections are typically scheduled within three business days of the complaint. So if we got a complaint today, we would be out there no later than Friday. And that's really during the peak time, which is right now for us with the grass growing, during the colder months when everything's dormant. It's usually the next day when we get out to investigate, do an initial investigation of a complaint. So I did want to mention the specific ordinances that we're talking about when we get into the processes and the laws that we follow.
Hey, Ryan, that's one question. What would you say, are we allowed to ask questions? Oh, sorry. What would you say is your backlog of parcels that you are trying to get to? And has that backlog changed with the increased budget that you've seen over the past couple of years?
So you mean, you mean the backlog of complaints that we have, or?
Well, you could have multiple complaints on one property. So I guess, what's the backlog of properties that you're like, hey, we need to go address this property?
So at any given time, you know, we have 500 to 600 open cases that we're working through the process on. You know, there's about 50 properties where the paperwork has been completed, and we're in that process of contracting out, hiring the contractors, getting into it, you know. Like weeds cases, for example, we have an annual contract with the company, and they do all the work on the weekends. So every week, we give them a list of 10 to 15 properties. They come down Saturday and Sunday and cut everything. And then when they get that list done, we send them the next list. So there's about 50 or so properties that the paperwork's completed. You know, we're just waiting on the contractors to get to it. You know, some of these larger cleanup efforts, you know, there's a coordination effort to win. Our folks can be there, law enforcement perhaps needs to be there with us. So there's a whole scheduling effort that goes in for some of those.
That 500, have you seen that number change over the past year as you had a larger budget?
So, no, it stays pretty much, because again, most of them, the private, the owner's going to resolve. You know, it's still fairly, a pretty low percentage of properties that we have to step in on and do. So that 500 is just kind of the normal turnover. You know, as new complaints come in, we're closing out, you know, cases as they get resolved.
Last question, of the ones that you actually have to take action on, what percentage of those do you think are repeat, where you had to do the weed lien last year, and they're doing it again, like is it, is there just a small number that's really causing a lot of your headache?
So we do have, and that's one of the issues I was going to highlight, so we do see an increase in repeat customers, so to speak. So, you know, there's certain vacant properties. We know that we're going to have to cut the grass two or three times every year. It's just, we've been doing it forever, and that's, so we have a list of those. And now we're even seeing larger cleanups where we're spending, you know, $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 to clean up somebody's property, and we come back two months later, and it's back in the same case. So we do have a lot of repeat properties.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, in reference to the property abatements, how many contractors do we have to actually go out? When you say you're sending a list, is that to multiple contractors, or we only have one individual that go out and cut all these properties?
So we have, we have two annual contracts. One of them is strictly for just grass cutting only. So there's no trash pickup, it's just a property that has overgrown grass, and that's it. So there is just one company that we have on call for that contract. We have another contract to where they'll cut the grass and pick up all the trash. And so we have three companies that we use on, with that, those types of cases.
And in regard, and the one individual that just goes out and cut the grass, is that enough based on the issues that we have, you know, in the city? Far as, you know, the grass being overgrown for probably months, is that one person, you know, suitable for the city of our size?
Yeah, I believe that it is. Like I said, we give them 10 to 15 a week, and they come in, and that's about the number of new properties that we take care of, you know, or that we're able to get the proper, or the paperwork done every week. So as soon as we get the paperwork done, you know, the supervisor checks all the work, make sure everything's in order, and then she turns around and flips it to the contractor. You know, occasionally, having one, you know, they'll have something come up, whether it's, you know, it's a small business, so whether it's a family issue or equipment problems or something like that, that may, you know, delay them a week from getting to something. But overall, they perform well. And we went through an RFP process and frankly, didn't get a whole lot of interest in it. You know, it was a competitive process. So, you know, they were one of the only firms, or maybe the only firm that was qualified and could actually perform the work that applied to do the work for us. But I do feel like one is sufficient.
Do you think we need a backup person, just in case as a?
Well, again, ideally, we would have, we would have that. But again, through the RFP process, the submissions that we got, this was the only one that the committee felt could adequately do the work. Because there's insurance requirements and all that stuff that, you know, we're going onto other people's properties, so they got to have some of those legal things to help protect themselves and us should something happen. And so they, they were the only, through that process, that.
How often do we do that RFP process? Like, how often does that open for us to go back and look over the process?
So typically, it's a two-year, the initial term of the contract is for two years, and then we have mutual options for the next three years. So it could be a five-year contract altogether. But if at any time, we're, you know, dissatisfied with the performance of the contractor, we have the ability, you know, to put it back out on the street.
Thank you.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Ryan, one, I use the 311 app a lot. So I've pulled it up here. Can you come and grab my phone and tell me where we would put in a 311 app? You know, go for, like, say we, we saw overgrown grass, because I don't see it there.
So in the 311 app, if you're, if you're looking at this, it's under Housing/Neighborhood Issues. And that brings up a whole, a whole list of dilapidated structure, junk vehicles, landlord tenant, solid waste, standing water in pools, weeds. So it's underneath the housing neighborhood.
So you click the housing neighborhood? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Counselor Kogle?
Looking at the, the list of receiving complaints, well, just actually, real quick on the 311 app, is there a way that we can update that 311 app to have a search toggle in there so that, you know, like if I'm, if I'm driving down the street and I need to report some bulk pickup, I have to scroll through there and try to find bulk pickup? And sometimes it's, I mean, it's not where I would intuitively think. So if there was a way that I could search in there, bulk pickup, or something along the lines of, of what I'm actually looking for with some keywords, is that, is that a possibility? I think that would make user interface much simpler. And I think a lot of people get frustrated with the 311 app just because it, it's not super user-friendly right, right now.
Ms. Mayor, I know that Danielle Frazier is listening, and I'd ask that she list that as a referral and take a look at what the counselor has voiced.
That'd be great, thanks. And then my original question, comment, also on user-friendliness of looking at the, receiving the complaints, there's, you know, six or seven ways that you receive these. Are they all listed somewhere? Like, how do you keep track of all of the complaints and issues that are coming in?
So we have a software system that we actually use for code enforcement, as well as the permitting side, called Intergov. And it is tied into all of the GIS data, all the tax assessor's data, the parcel IDs, who the owner is. All of that information's automatically queued up in the system when you enter the address. And then it has, it schedules the inspections, and it tracks all the activities that you do. You can upload the pictures and the letters we send. All of that is in that system. So no matter where the complaint originates from, a case is created in the Intergov system for us to be able to track. And, you know, we've been using it for code enforcement since 2017, when they first came over to inspections and codes. So we can pull up, you know, if we search an address, we get six years, you know, of complaint history or case history on that, on each property.
Is it a far reach to do something along the lines of what zoning does for council of listing something in Trello, where we can track the, I know a lot of us reach out to inspections and codes wondering what the status is of certain properties or certain things that we've put in for, for citizens. And I know the citizens that use the 311 app can track the progress of what their, what their issue is. But often, it just says processing or still in process after several days, weeks, hopefully not months. But is there a way that we might be able to tweak the system so that, as counselors, we are able to pull up those complaints and see where they're at? Much like with the zoning, you know, when somebody submits a zoning request, we can see that it's gone to PAC. We can see that it's gone, it's been approved by PAC. It's been approved by whoever in CCG. It's been, and we can follow along those steps. Is there a way that we could do that, either broken down by district or across the city in general?
So we have a couple tools already available that I think can be adjusted to get, you know, a little more detailed. The issue that, that we've always had is, you know, our internal notes share or have some information that are not necessarily public with some contact information and things like that. But we do have a customer service portal that is on the website, where if you type in an address, you can see the code case history on it, as well as any current cases. And you can see, you know, when we were out there doing inspections and that type of thing. And then we also have a dashboard that's a GIS map that is available that will show the code case history. Now, I have struggled keeping my GIS technician position filled for that map to be accurate. But like I said, I have that position filled now, so it'll be up to date as well. And so I can provide the council links to those resources. And we may already have the capability to do what you're asking for.
I think that would be very helpful for us to, one, stay out of your hair and probably send you less emails and give us some information that we need right away so that we can keep our citizens happy and moving forward. Thank you.
Counselor Davis?[1794.44]
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good morning, Director Pruitt. Uh, it seems to me that there are people, whether they're quite capable of taking care of their properties or they just choose not to, and then those that can't under the circumstances. And we continue, for lack of a better way to phrase it, somewhat it could be perceived as a game out there that people are playing and the city's getting caught up into it and the taxpayers are footing the bill. Over the course of time, it seems like if you're dealing with some of these properties over and over and over, you know, there comes a point of zero-sum return that, that basically we've surpassed the value of the property or the house or whatever, and we continue to, you know, to spend dollars to keep these properties clean. That's just, you know, it's just crazy. It's, it's somewhat the definition of insanity and just insane. What are the, excuse me, wh- what are the, what recourse does the city have? What can your department do? What can the city do besides just finding to the different levels to deal with situations like that?
So as far as what inspections and codes can do, you know, our ultimate goal is to, you know, if there are repeat violators, is to get the responsible party, you know, into court and allow, you know, the judge and the, and the legal system to play out that way. Once I can get you into court, typically I can keep you there. So if you keep repeating it, you know, every time, every time we have a court date, you know, we're gonna issue a new citation just cause the violations keep going on. Um, you know, as far as the, the foreclosure or the liens and all, you know, what happens after I'm through, I would have to defer, you know, cause once I do the cleanup, we send all the paperwork to the finance department and they handle the billing and the liens. So I would have to defer that, um, you know, to the city manager.
Well, let's, let's back up, okay? We're, we continue to call the maintenance people that we contract out with, and you continue to still maintain the properties twice a year, several times a year, whatever the complaints may be by the citizens out there. And then you're citing them at that point, right?
We attempt so, and we've talked about the issues with the citing before. If I can't physically touch the property owner, then there's no citation that I can issue. And so then we go the route, you know, of cleaning it up and putting the lien on the property.
So we're paying that cost, so we're paying that cost on top. And then they go to court. If they go to court, if they get them into court, they're gonna fine them. And then they just go back out and they do, basically do nothing. And then we're gonna bill them later, uh, or we're gonna tag a lien onto the property and it just sits there.
Yeah.
And they know it, it's a game. And they know it. Some of these people are well-to-do people that have no problem at all. It's just, I guess they just, it's fun and games when, when, you know, working the system. But, so after that's sent out by our department, is that as far as it goes? I mean, what, is there, when does it come a point that the city can recover its losses? Or to, let's just say, take over the property? Knowing that that's what's happening? What is that process? Does the city have the ability to do that? You, you follow what I'm saying?
Oh, absolutely. Uh, and it's, it's really frustrating because, I mean, we've got a lot of properties with liens on them and the value, uh, uh, the, the interest, uh, in lien exceeds the value of the property. And we're doing it over and over and we keep adding to it. And I hear your frustration, that frustrates me as well. And, 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 you know, I'd have to yield to the city attorney. But, you know, I wish it would, it would be that once the, uh, liens exceed the value of the property, that we could take over the property.
But he's saying, let me add to this, Mr. Mayor, you know this, they pay their taxes.
Oh, yeah.
They pay their taxes.
Yeah.
So once all that is done, again, I go back to what is the recourse? Is that our only recourse?
I think, I think another avenue is to have a discussion with the newly designed Recorder's Court, uh, process and, uh, let them know that they, they, that the justice side, the justice system pays a, plays a big role in helping us to, to discourage these individuals from keeping it going. They can escalate those fines up a little higher. And then when they reach the maximum on them, they, they keep hitting them every time. And if they're, if they're gonna go to court on a regular basis, they're gonna end up spending a lot more than the taxes that they're paying on that house.
Yeah, well, the, you know, and that's, it was mentioned about the Recorder's Court or having that, um, uh, option to do that. But then they just pay it, they continue to pay their taxes and we're continuing to, the, the cost of maintaining continues to escalate. Again, I'll ask, what is the, what's the highest level we could go of recourse?
And, and Counsel, I, I really think, you know, we, the staff, need to have a conversation with the city attorney's office, um, about, you know, it's a where do we go from here kind of conversation? And I don't know if we could have the, the powers locally to do something or if it takes state legislation to do, you know, to do something. But that's a conversation we need to have.
Now, we've had that conversation a lot with Director Pruitt lately. And there are about five types of actions that can take place under Georgia law. The first type of action that can happen is the tax commissioner can actually foreclose on a property that's tax delinquent. And when she does that, she can also, uh, foreclose on the city's tax lien, I mean, demolition liens and other city liens and get, uh, those paid off. Uh, sometimes she will actually sell the property on the, sell the property on the courthouse steps and get the, all these liens paid off. Sometimes there's no sale and she just hangs on to the execution and the lien continues. The second thing that can happen is-
Can I, can I, can I stop you right there?
Well, I'd like to go through all five.
I know, but on, on that option, that's why I want specifically on that option. If they're paying their taxes, does that option still apply?
No, if they're not tax delinquent, the tax commissioner can't go foreclose on it.
Go on, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. Number two is if the city has a demolition lien, the city has the power under the Columbus Charter to foreclose on the lien. Uh, and when the city does that, they may be able to get the tax commissioner involved and get all, all liens paid off. Uh, and the problem with that is if the city actually goes to the trouble and expense to foreclose on a lien, the city may end up with, with a piece of property that it doesn't want because then there's another expense of maintenance. Uh, but of course, if the city ends up with a property, like, the city can try to sell it as well. Uh, third thing that can happen is the tax commissioner can take her execution. That's what they call a formal lien placed in Superior Court. She can transfer that to the land bank authority. The land bank authority has limited resources and is funded by this council. They have power under state law to extinguish all taxes and all liens. And then they can sell property to low-income housing developers. And that has been used on occasion. They have limited resources as does the tax commissioner. Fourth action that can happen is a nuisance civil action. This is sort of a last resort. We've done that occasionally, uh, recently, a couple of times for, I think, property on Slade Drive and Eleventh Avenue. That was actually a public safety danger. We got court orders to clean up the property, get people out of the properties, board them up, uh, or, and then the case of a residence, get all people out except the owner. Uh, the fifth type of action that can happen is what Director Pruitt's been talking about. He cites people to court. And sometimes that'll get their attention if they get a thousand dollar fine or enough citations and fines, it'll get their attention and they'll clean something up. Sometimes they just keep paying the fine and, and the lien sits on the books until another owner comes along. But, you know, all of these things can happen. All these types of foreclosures, you know, are not free. There's a cost associated with them. And, um, Director Pruitt uses his resources best way he can and the tax commissioner does also. And of course, the land bank has been used on occasion, but that's a good tool to have in your tool box. But you've got to have some, some funding to keep it operating. Those are really the five kind of things that can happen under Georgia law.
So you said two, three, let's go three and four. I'm gonna ask you the same questions. If they pay their taxes, would that be, it, it, it really wouldn't apply. You could still, you could still ask the courts for relief there and, and to, to make a judgment on it regardless if they pay their taxes or not. Is that right?
Yeah, if it's, if it's a real public safety danger or an emergency situation like a couple of these were, you can ask the Superior Court to help clean it up, empty the property, board it up, which is what we had to do in those two instances. But there's gotta be a real danger, whether taxes are paid or not. If there's a public safety danger, you can go that route. But that's the last resort.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. City Attorney. Mayor, you may be right. Maybe we just look at, uh, increasing the fees, uh, and, you know, and enforcing it a little bit firmly or more firmly, stronger. Uh, but.
Be, just as long as, as long as they're, as long as they're paying them and there's an escalation of those fees and then, you know, we'll have to defer to the city attorney with regards to state law on how high we can go on some of those.
Well, you can only go to a thousand dollars per offense.
That's a state law?
Per day, right.
Maybe that's what we need to ask.
Yeah, it's an ordinance violation. Any, each day is a continuing offense. It could be a thousand dollar fine per day for offense.
Well, I know it's very frustrating, Ms. City Manager. And I know you're frustrated, I can tell. And thank you for your comments. And Director Pruitt, appreciate all you're doing in these matters cause I know it's, it's a very frustrating cycle, so to speak. But, uh, we do need to find out a way to, to resolve it and come up with some solution or else it's just, it, it just, like I said, it doesn't make sense. It's insanity, uh, of doing that. And it's not, it's not a wise way to, to conduct business in your community and build your communities when you know that's, you're continuing to spend taxpayer dollars at such a rapid pace to go in that continuing cycle. Thank you, sir.
Yep, Counselor Huff.
Good morning. Uh, I don't know if I missed it before I came in. When we have a fire in a neighborhood, how long is it as far as any fire investigations and things of that nature before it gets to you and we can do something about getting that structure taken out?
So we typically, for fires, our standard, uh, procedure is we typically wait, uh, ninety days after the, the fire happens to, like I said, let the investigation, if there is one play out, to allow the owner, hopefully their insurance steps up by that point and starts to take action. And then, uh, depending on the severity of the fire, you know, if it's a total loss and all we have is debris on the ground, that's a solid waste case. So we can take care of that usually within two, three months and get it cleaned up if they're not taking any action. So that would be after the ninety days. Um, if it's only a partial fire and it's more of a demolition case, then we go through that process, which is a little bit longer.
Okay, okay. And when we get to the point of, uh, I see, uh, Public Works in the back. If someone could address what it means that it's in, it's on the route, it's coming soon? If you could explain what that means to the public?
You mean if it's on the right-of-way or?
Yeah, it, it's, it's a right-of-way situation. I have a, a gentleman, he's listening this morning. He called in in June and, uh, he's called, I think, five or six times. He's very laid back, he follows all the rules. And he called me back yesterday and said he just wanted to know. He said he's received recently that it's on the route to be done. He said, but he had heard that once, so he wanted to make sure. Does that mean they're in, in the neighborhood, coming that direction? And does it mean it's the next one on the list?
So if, if, you know, if it's something that, um, if it's an inspections and codes issues and, I said, I don't know that we would use that exact terminology, but, you know, that would normally mean that the, you know, it would've given it to the contractor and they're gonna take care of it, um, you know, as soon as possible. So I don't know it, what exactly the issue or his complaint is, but, um, you know, if you give me the address, I can go back and look and see.
Yeah, I, I see Public Works in the background. I think it's probably a Public Works issue.
So.
It's, it's, it's basically, uh, property on, on Bennett, Fort Bennett Road.
So, so is it a burned-out structure?
No, no, this is just a right-of-way-
Just debris on the right-of-way or the grass over?
Grass cutting, right-of-way.
Grass overgrown?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that would be a Public Works, uh, matter.
But he put the, uh, uh, he had that called in and everything. So he said he heard back from, uh, somewhere, I guess from Public Works, uh, recently that it was on the, in the, on the route. So that's why, I'm just trying to get clarification this morning. What does it mean? Is, is it, what, what I'm saying is, is it a list that states that on the route means it's the next one in line or on the route means it's gonna happen in two more weeks?
Well, I, I'm not really clear on, but it, it sounds like the grass is overgrown on the right-of-way and Public Works mow all the right-of-way throughout the city.
Right.
And, uh, and typically they're going to get to areas, um, two, three maximum or four times a year, but I think the goal is three times a year. And so I don't know where that is. You said Fort Bennett Road, did you say?
Fort Bennett Road.
Okay, we can have-
It is, uh-
We can have them to-
It's along Shelby Street between Fort Bennett Road and Munson.
Yeah, we can have them take a look at where you're talking about.
Because this guy's really laid back. He waits his turn and he started in June.
Yeah.
And we're approaching September.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he's, he's just wanna know, yeah. But again, it's Shelby Street between Fort Bennett Road and Munson Drive.
They can, she, she's got it in the refer, in, in the referral, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Thomas.
I'm, uh, picking up on one of the things that, um, Counsel Huff said. Uh, there is a, a house on the corner of Tenth Avenue and Twenty-Ninth Street that burned around the first of the year. And the shell of that house is still there. Nothing has been done. I know that at one time, when there were other complaints about that property, I was told that the owner is out of state. And I'm not sure how that plays into what we need to do. So Director, could you, could you enlighten me, uh, us about how we deal with owners that are out of state and don't respond? And, uh, you know, this, this, uh, burned-out shell of a house is an eyesore in that neighborhood and, uh, it needs to be, uh, taken down. Uh, but as I said, it, it, as far as I know, the owner is not local. So can you talk about that in just a minute?
Uh, yes, ma'am. And I do, I do recall you, uh, referencing that property before. So, um, I'll go back and, and double-check, but I would hope that we have a demolition case and it's working its way through that process to bring back to you hopefully soon so I can get you an update on that specific property. But, um, yeah, I have a slide of challenges later and out-of-town owners, um, are definitely on that list, specifically LLCs, um, that are, you know, we probably have some from all fifty states, uh, that own property here in Columbus. Um, and so, yeah, we don't have, again, we can't physically touch them, so there's no, uh, possible way for us to cite them, to get them into court, to hold them, you know, allow the legal system to hold them accountable, uh, for failure to maintain their property. So our only option is to do the process, send the, send the notices and then clean it up for them if they don't take any action.
And typically when a, a property burns, um, are you, is your department notified that at this address, this house burned and needs to be taken care of?
Yes, yeah, we work real closely with the, the fire department, both on the building side, inspecting all the construction, as well as on the code enforcement side. So when they have, um, you know, an issue or a fire, a structural fire at a location, we do get a list of those, uh, from the fire department so that we're aware that there is a problem.
Well, I'm sure that the neighbors in that, wherever you're located in the neighborhood would, uh, love for you to get that eyesore off that corner of Tenth Avenue and Twenty-Ninth Street. Thank you.
And, and Ms. Mayor, if I may, on that, just a, uh, it, are you dealing with insurance, uh, potentially fraud, investigations, sometimes that will delay you?
So that's why we typically, if there's a structure, we don't start enforcement actions for that ninety days to allow that process, you know, to, um, to play out, you know? Cause some, like I said, some cases are just vacant property where the owner is never gonna take any actions. And then you have, of course, uh, homes where families, or fires where families lost their homes. And so we don't wanna show up the next day, you know, giving them a, a demand for compliance when they just lost their family home. So that's why we take that little pause to hopefully allow the property owner to make plans and arrangements and hopefully if they have insurance for it to kick in.
Well, I, I just heard that in some cases you had police or fire fraud investigations Well, I, I just heard that in some cases you had police or fire fraud investigations that you are not allowed to touch the property.
Correct, yeah. So we wait until all that's completed before we do anything.
Uh, Counselor Huff?
Yeah, I did have one last question. Um, there's a situation in one of my neighborhoods where the original owner's husband and wife raised a family. The husband and wife are deceased. The daughter is also deceased. I think there's one existing relative that may be in California and the house is falling in. Uh, as you go through your procedures, how long is that? Is it typical to go, like you said, the ninety days and then hundred and twenty days?
Yeah, so, um, for the, like weeds and solid waste, um, processes, again, for the vacant property, you know, we're gonna send a letter to whatever the address is in the tax records. That's what we're.
I mean, the house is falling in.
So if it's a demolition case, you know, those typically take, um, about a year or so for us to start the case and bring it to council. And part of that time is spent trying to track down who actually owns the property. You know, if there was no will, nothing was ever probated, you know, there's a little bit of legwork or a lot of legwork to do to find that last living relative.
I have some neighbors that are trying to help, because I think they have like three houses in the neighborhood now. Yeah, I'll get your list.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Pruitt, I think that's all the questions. You wanna move ahead, sir?
Yes. So I did wanna, uh, specifically reference, um, the ordinances that we operate out of, um, both for the council and those watching by TV. If you wanna go look up the city's ordinances, these are the sections that we use. Uh, so weed violations, uh, those are covered in Sections thirteen dash one, one, three through thirteen dash one, one, five. Uh, solid waste, junk vehicles and stockpiling issues are all covered under thirteen dash one, six, seven point seven. Property maintenance issues, including landlord tenant, uh, complaints and how those cases are handled are governed by Section eight dash forty-one through eight dash fifty point one. And then the demolition process and, and what qualifies a structure for demolition is in Section eight dash eighty-one point one through eight dash ninety. So, um, those are the sections specifically for the nuisance type cases that we operate out of. So I did just wanna briefly touch on, um, our typical procedures for some of these nuisance cases. So if an occupied property does require a little bit more legwork than a vacant property, um, so an occupied property during an initial inspection, you know, the code enforcement officer is gonna document the, all the issues on the property. So, you know, if there's weeds and solid waste, we're gonna write both of those things down. Um, and then our goal is to actually hand that to an individual on the property, so that way we can have a conversation with them, explain the issue, explain what they need to do to correct it and explain how much time they have to do that. Of course, a lot of times nobody's home or they just simply refuse to answer the door when we're knocking on it. Uh, if that's the case, we'll post it in a conspicuous place on the property. And then typically we're gonna give them fourteen days or so, depending on the severity of the violation, uh, to correct that issue. So if we give them fourteen days to correct it, day fifteen, assuming it's not the weekend, but day fifteen, we would come out there and do a reinspection. And if, uh, absolutely nothing has been done, the officer will attempt to issue a citation. And this is where, again, it can be a challenge. Uh, people aren't home, uh, people refuse to answer the door. You know, we've had cases before where, you know, they'll be sitting on the front porch, they see us pull up and they go in the house and we can't physically hand them that citation anymore. So if we are unable, you know, if we issue the citation, then it goes to court and then the judge can take the appropriate action. If nobody's available for the citation, then at that time, we're gonna mail certified letters to both the property and the property owner, if it's different addresses, um, to make them aware, uh, of the issue. And then, again, we give them typically, that's a ten day letter. So once they get the letter and we can prove that it's been delivered, another one of our challenges is the postal service. There is a significant percentage of our mail that just never gets delivered. Uh, and I think everybody's kinda had some of those issues probably in your personal life. So we do experience, experience those issues as well. But once, uh, the letter has been delivered, the expiration period in the letter expires. Uh, code enforcement gathers all the evidence, all the letters, all the warnings, all the case notes, all the pictures. Um, and then we take that to, um, the Recorder's Court Judge, um, prepare an abatement order and ask for their approval, uh, to go on to the property and abate, uh, abate the nuisance. So, you know, in our, in our country, it's a big deal for the government to go on to private property and take people's belongings. You know, to us, it looks like trash, but to the people that live there, those are their belongings that we're taking and cleaning up. So there is a very thorough process, um, for us to follow through. You know, we also want the liens and all that to be able to stick. So we are very thorough with the paperwork to make sure it's right. Uh, but the judge will review, um, all of the evidence, all the paperwork. If the order is granted, the contractor will be hired to abate the nuisance. So again, we have a group of three contractors. We will solicit pricing from them so we can be good stewards of taxpayer money. So that takes a few days to go out for quotes, let them look at the property, see what it'll take. A lot of times they gotta bring in equipment. You know, they gotta bring in big forty yard dumpsters to get everything taken care of. And then, so we'll, we'll get those pricing and then we hire the contractor, uh, to help clean this, clean it up for us. Oftentimes, law enforcement, whether it's the Columbus Police Department or the Muskogee County Sheriff's Office, is on site with us while we're doing these abatements. Um, again, the people, we're cleaning up their property. They're not happy about it and sometimes they can get agitated. So we have, uh, law enforcement there for security for us as well as our contractors and we, we certainly appreciate their support, um, through this process. So vacant property is a little bit easier again, because there's, we kinda lose that initial step. And then since it's vacant, we also don't, uh, the ordinances do not require us to get an abatement order from the judge. So the certified piece of mail is enough. Uh, so once we have proof that that's been delivered, the warning period in the letter has expired, then we can, we can go on the property and, and clean it up. Um, again, these are, these are vacant properties, so nobody's living there. Uh, if the owner is local, we do visit their listed address, um, you know, and we will give them a citation if we're able to track them down at their address, um, for the vacant property. The one thing the ordinance does allow us to do for vacant property is a letter only has to be sent every, once every three years. So if I send the letter, um, in twenty twenty-three and we cut, we hire a contractor to cut it, I don't have to send a new letter until twenty twenty-six, assuming that the, uh, ownership does not change. If the ownership changes, then, you know, we gotta start over. But for those three years, uh, if we get another complaint or we just know that this is a recurring issue at this vacant property, uh, the officer goes out, sees the violation, immediately puts the paperwork in the box and then we get the contractor out there. So that does make a turnaround for, uh, vacant property a little bit, a little bit quicker than occupied property. So property maintenance, uh, issues, again, there's kind of two, uh, classes of case that we call property maintenance. The first one is landlord tenant issues. So again, a tenant, um, has some issues in their apartment. They can call us. All of our code enforcement officers are required to be certified property maintenance inspectors. So they have, they have two years from their start date to achieve that certification. So they will, the tenant calls, we'll schedule the inspection for the next day. Tenant inspections are always done the next business day. You call still five o'clock today, we'll come out there tomorrow to take a look at it. The officer's gonna document all the issues and then he's going to notify, uh, the landlord, um, of the issues and give them a reasonable time to fix it. You know, for life safety issues, no heat, no air conditioning, things like that, typically twenty-four, forty-eight hours. And we don't necessarily expect you to have a brand new air conditioning unit at that house in twenty-four to forty-eight hours. But if you can't solve the main problem, we need to come up with some other accommodations. You know, maybe we buy some window air conditioning units that we can put in there, something to provide a safe environment, uh, for the tenant.
Ryan, excuse me just a moment. Uh, Counselor Huff?
Quick question. I was trying to catch you before you got too far ahead. If you go to inspect a property and it's been vacant for a while, you've been through your procedures and you run up, come upon squatters, how does that handle?
So we do not deal with the people's side of things in code enforcement. We're strictly the condition of the property and the structure. So now, if I have declared the structure uninhabitable, as in it's unsafe, then legally, nobody's allowed to be inside. And so we would get with law enforcement and they have the, the ability, under that city ordinance, I've declared it unsafe, nobody could be inside. But if we haven't gone through that process, you know, I have no way of determining who's legally there and who's not. Um, so ultimately it's up to the owner through whatever type of eviction process they would have to do to get the squatters off.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Go ahead.
Um, so that, that's landlord tenant cases. Um, and so we, like I said, we work with landlords and, like I said, all we're, we're trying to achieve is, you know, safe, um, accommodations for, for the tenants when these issues kinda pop up. The second type of property maintenance issues are, are for vacant, uh, properties, um, or owner occupied properties. We get complaints about, um, you know, there's a, there's a home in my neighborhood that's got some problems, but it's actually occupied by, by the owner. So for these types of cases, we do document the issues. Um, you know, the property maintenance code's a pretty wide case. It covers everything from missing shingles to rotten fascia board, to chipping paint is even in there, um, you know, some minor issues like that. So we do document these issues. We do notify the owner of, hey, you know, you have these problems. Um, and then we work with them to try to, um, resolve, resolve the issues. So we do not, um, issue citations for these types of violations, simply be, because we do know that there are a lot of homeowners in Columbus with these minor type issues that simply can't afford to repaint their house or fix, you know, a five foot stretcher, rotten fascia board. So again, these, these aren't rising to the level of safety issues, um, for the occupant. It's just more of an appearance thing that the code, uh, covers. So again, we track the issues. We have them on our list, especially if they're vacant. You know, we know if the, the structure's not being maintained, there's a good chance the property's not being maintained. So we keep an eye on it. If the grass starts growing, then, then we, we handle that with the other process. Uh, and then the demolition, again, I think probably most familiar with this, because I am here several times a year asking for, uh, approval to, um, demolish unsafe structures. So again, it's a similar type process. We do an initial inspection. The officer determines that, yes, the structure qualifies for demolition under our ordinance. The owner, we establish a hearing date, which is done, uh, in front of the city manager or his designee, which, uh, I am his designee. So I hold the hearing at our office. The owner's notified of that hearing via certified mail. Again, there's some legwork to determine who the actual owner is, um, you know, especially if they're deceased or it's an air property. So there's a little bit of work there. Um, we have the hearing. If, uh, I conclude that it is still demolition worthy, they're given a forty-five day notice. If there's no, um, work done, then again, we go through, we get pricing, we do some hazardous material testing to see exactly how much it's gonna cost to tear it down. Um, again, still no work has been completed. Then we schedule the first reading of the demolition ordinance, again, notify the owner that they have the opportunity to come before you and, uh, stake their side of the case. If demolition is approved, then we release the contractor and they get to work. And then, uh, again, once the demolition's complete and we clear the case, all the documentation's given to finance, uh, to bill the owner and then place the lien on the property.
Excuse me, Ryan, just a second. I accidentally turned yours off. I was getting to Counselor Tucker. While I'm doing that, if you'd hit your button. Thank you.
In reference to the contractor, is this a RFP process for the demolition contractor? Is it one contract? Like what's, how does that work?
Yes, so it is an RFP, uh, process. Um, again, same, same, uh, very similar to the lot clearing contracts where, again, it's, uh, the initial periods for two years with three year, three options for the next three years, so a total of five years. Competitive process. Um, it's currently under review, has been issued and, and proposals have been received. So I do know finance is running that process to, uh, re-award it or award it, um, for the next period of time.
Is it just one contractor for?
So for the last time, which again, was originally awarded five years ago, so back in twenty eighteen, which was before my time. But, uh, at that time, it was awarded to a primary and a secondary. Um, but through the years, the secondary hasn't renewed. So we are just down to one contractor.
Continue, sir.
So I did wanna, wanna throw some pictures up here so we could talk about each of the kinda typical complaints that we see. So I wanted to start with overgrown weeds. Um, so, uh, as you can see this photo, this is a house, a property that has, uh, tall weeds. So our current ordinance is eighteen inches, um, which is on me, it's about knee high, a little bit below knee high. So if the grass isn't up that high, there's no violation. So, you know, if it's twelve inches, it's up to your boot tops, that's not a violation. Our current ordinance is eighteen inches for it to be a violation before we can take any action. So in this case, the grass is over eighteen inches, sent the letter, nothing happened. Contractor comes out and, and mows the grass. We also spray a, um, a type of herbicide that stunts the growth of the grass. It doesn't kill it, but it does keep it from growing up so fast, because, you know, we know in Georgia with the weather we have, that you can cut it and it'd be eighteen inches again next week if we didn't do that. So that does slow it down and instead of growing up over a week or two, it takes a few months, uh, for the grass to grow up. So one thing you will notice, uh, we do not, the ordinance does not cover wooded growth. So we will not trim any trees. We will not trim any bushes. That's not covered under our ordinance. Uh, there are no violations for overgrown trees or bushes. So if you drive by a vacant piece of property and the only thing on there is trees and shrubs, there's no action for the city to take with our current ordinances. We do advise people, because we get a lot of calls. You know, neighbors can cut the trees and bushes back to the property line if it starts encroaching on the neighbor's property. But again, our current ordinance does not cover any type of wooded growth.
Excuse me again, Ryan.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I was just gonna say, that's, you know, what, uh, the director said about you in Georgia. You, you mow your grass this week and next week it's eighteen inches again. And so, um, that's a, a challenge for those properties. And back to Counselor Huff's question earlier about, I guess, Fort Benning, whatever street that was. That's a challenge for us with our resources, our limited resources. Uh, and that's why you heard me say they try and do it three, four times a year with the resources we have. And so they're moving about the city and, you know, you can mow the grass and I'll use Steammill Road. This week and next week, the grass is gonna be up again, because that's how it grows. And so if, if our team from Public Works come through and mow that grass on Steammill, I use it as an example, in two weeks or three weeks, you got a problem. But they're going to the next spot and they're mowing. And so it's just a limited resource. I just wanna point that out. That, you know, and I don't like the goal of three times, four times a year. It's just not enough. In, in, in the non-growing season, you know, they get, do get some relief and, and can keep it better because they don't have to. But I, I just wanted to make that point.
So the next example is, uh, solid waste, which is a fancy phrase for trash. So again, this is a property, this is actually one of the ones the city attorney was referencing earlier that we, uh, went to Superior Court and got a court order for, because this property was filled with squatters. So again, I don't know the legal, you know, status or if those people have permission to be there, but they were creating such a nuisance for the neighboring properties that the city took action and actually was able to clear the property of the residents in addition to cleaning up the solid waste. So went through that process. And then again, in this case, we did board up the properties, which typically we do not do, but due to the number of squatters that were living there and, you know, we knew they were gonna come back if we didn't do something. So we did secure the property, uh, to get it cleaned up. And now this property is actually on the demolition list and, and will probably be brought forward soon if no action is taken. So stockpiling, um, again, which is kind of a spinoff of solid waste. It's, you know, the accumulation of stuff that's not necessarily trash, but shouldn't be kept outside on a residential property. So, you know, pallets, washing machines, uh, hundreds of lawn mowers, you know, things that just get, uh, to be an eyesore. Qualified stockpiling. So again, this is an owner occupied property. So we now issued the warnings, tried to issue citations, um, are unable, are never able to find the responsible party. So again, then we went to the judge, got an abatement order and was able to clean it up. We completed, this picture's from June, late June, when we did the cleanup, uh, which was several thousand dollars worth of cleanup. And this is a picture from earlier this month to where it's, uh, back probably worse than it was before. So, you know, it's back on the list. And again, this is a challenge for us of what, what do we do? Because it is an owner occupied property. An individual lives here. You know, we've cleaned it up once or twice already. And like I said, do we just keep doing the same thing over and over again? Junk vehicles, uh, again, council amended the ordinance last year to give us the authority to tow vehicles from private property. So we are now doing that. So, uh, that ordinance requires a minimum of a thirty day notice. So the owner of this property would've got a letter spelling out all these cars as being junk vehicles and giving them thirty days to, uh, either repair the vehicles or remove them. When they fail to take action, we go get an abatement order from Recorder's Court and then we can tow the vehicles. So again, we did over sixty last fiscal year. So again, we did over 60 last fiscal year. And again, we just did 10 last week. So we are ramping up, removing these vehicles.
Excuse me, Ryan. Counselor Tucker?
In reference to the junk vehicles, I know in District Four, we have a lot of, I guess, individuals doing work on vehicles at their property. Sometimes the vehicles are actually in the backyard and it looks like a outside garage. Are we addressing those properties or just the ones where the, the cars are on the front yard?
No, it's, if the vehicle is anywhere on the property, we will address it. Now, we need to be able to see the violations. That's the other thing, you know, we are required to follow, you know, legal proceedings and we just can't go into somebody's backyard if we don't have probable cause to believe there's violations back there. But if you can see it from a neighbor's property, or if a neighbor has a two-story house and their window sees down into that property, if the neighbor gives us permission to go onto their property so we can see the issue, then we can certainly take action on that. You know, a lot of times we get complaints of, oh, there's this going on at this house and, you know, we're standing out on the street and it might look immaculate from the street. Well, and then, you know, we need permission to go on to somebody else's property so we can see the violation.
And I think just recently I had sent a complaint. I can't remember if it was a duel, but it was off Forest Road. And the vehicles, well, one of them was towed, but they came right back. So I will say that some of the, the residents, I think they're a little apprehensive about, you know, calling. And I don't mind calling because that's what, you know, I've been elected to do. But we do have several violators in reference to these junk vehicles.
And, and just to that point about vehicles in the backyard, you enforced one particular property, residential property, it had 52 vehicles on residential property, 52. And you did a request to comply and they didn't comply. And you sent multiple tow trucks out and they started hauling off the vehicles. We did. And so we have those situations in Columbus. You, you wouldn't, no one can imagine that you would have 52 vehicles on residential property. But that was a true, that's a true case here in Columbus.
Well, it was, when you're going, when you're on Hunter Road, going into Carver Park, on the right-hand side, it was probably around 30 cars piled up in the empty lot. And it's just cars. But what they have done is put, it looked like piles of sand, trying to cover it up so people won't see it now. So we, it's, it's a lot of, a lot of issues with these junk vehicles.
Thank you, Counselor Kogle.
For the, for all of these violations for overgrown weeds and solid waste, everything that we're doing to clean up, are we sending the property owners the bill? And then do they pay it?
So I would have to defer to finance for what the ratio of the bills getting paid is. But yes, they do, they send once. Inspections and codes completes our work. The, the whole packet of information is handed off to the finance department. And the, my understanding is they send the bill and if the bill goes unpaid, then the lien gets placed on the property.
And then if they're, like for the stockpiling people that you just went through, do, do those fines increase over and over again? Or, I mean, what, what's to, what's to prevent them from doing this over and over again? I mean, if I wanted somebody to come and mow my lawn, I would just stop mowing my lawn because the city would come and then I would just pay the city.
And, and I think that's the point Counselor Davis was making earlier. You know, you're right. And that's why we need to really get to a decision on if the lien exceeds the value of that property, here's what's going to happen within X number of days, once we hit that ceiling. So, yeah, I mean, I've heard cases where they've issued a citation to someone, as Counselor Davis said, could afford it. And the fine was $125. They'd rather come pay, go to court and pay the fine.
Like what, for example, what's the, how much is, how, how much is a fine for like the overgrown weeds?
So there's two, and I want to make sure we're clear. So there's two things that we, there's a lien, you know, that we place on the property. When we clean it up, so the owner's going to get a bill for the actual costs of cleaning it up, plus a small fee, which I think is $75. So, you know, for cutting the grass, the owner's going to get a bill for 200 bucks because we paid the contractor 125 plus the $75 administrative fee. So that's what they, the owner's going to get that bill. And if they don't pay it, that $200 lien's going to be placed on the property and then it accrues interest over time. So that's, that's when we physically hire a contractor to go take care of the issue.
And is it second offense more?
No, it's still just the actual cost of the work for, anytime we cut it, it's just the cost of the work. Now, the, if we are able to issue a citation and get them into court, then those fines, council adjusted that, those fines, it's a minimum $500 for the first offense. And then the second offense and subsequent offenses is the maximum $1,000.
So, but wouldn't it make sense that if you're a repeat offender, if I mean, if I'm letting my grass grow over 18 inches for, I don't know, the average lawn care cost for someone is, say, $100 a month? If I'm going to let my grass grow to 18 inches over two months or two and a half months, by the time somebody reports it, it's cheaper for me to let the city come and do the work than to pay a lawn care person. So would it not make sense for second and third and fourth offenders to be increasing those values?
So I'm, and I have to defer to the city attorney. I know the ordinance, the lien is for the cost of the work plus that small fee. So I don't know if we have the.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but like, if we're talking about preventing people from doing this, I mean, I would rather, I mean, let the city come and clean up all the pallets in my yard for $1,000 than pay somebody $2,500 to come and do it.
So I think what I hear you saying is if it's 125 to mow, plus the $75 is 200. If we come out another, in, in four more weeks, it's going to be 250.
It should be $400.
Well.
Or what, I mean, I mean, we want to deter people from continuing on in these habits.
So it could double each time we come out, for example.
For example, yeah. I mean, it's got a, it's, there has to be a way to deter people from continuing the process.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like parenting. I mean, if my child, I don't know, my poor kid's hopefully not listening. So if she does something bad, like I'm not going to have the same consequence the second time. I mean, or else she's just going to keep doing it and doing it and doing it. She might even actually like emptying the dishwasher eventually.
City attorney?
Well, again, let's keep in mind that a lien under Georgia law can only equate to the amount that it cost to clean up that property. If it costs $500, your lien is going to be $500 against the property. You can't just go and put a $1,000 lien on there if the cost is only 500.
Sure, but we can, we can get there faster.
They keep adding up. Sure, you can go as many times as you need to do the work.
Well, the key is getting them cited and get them into court. Because if you can get them into court, then you can, you can escalate that fine. And then for each, for each offense, you can get them with a $1,000.
But where, they're only going to court if they don't pay the fee, correct?
Well, that's right. Same, I mean, but chances are they're not paying most, I bet you mostly are not paying these fees anyway.
Yeah, and that's why the liens escalate. And, and I think what I hear the director saying is, you know, they go in the house, close the door, you really can't issue a citation to get them to court, you know, because they're hiding or.
Sure, but then we can get to court faster if we're, and then we can fix the problem faster.
I think it's all part of the bigger issue and that is just how do we, how do we utilize the courts? How do we utilize the fine system? How do we utilize the liens to get this rectified quicker? All right? That's all. Can you continue?
So a property maintenance case, again, this is an example of, of one of those properties that has some minor issues, you know, that we typically do not cite for. You know, it's got some rotten fascia boards and peeling paint. So again, we're going to document that. We're going to send notification to the owner requesting that they, they correct those issues and then we're going to monitor the status of the property. Then example of a demolition, this was one that was approved last year. So again, a house that does qualify for demolition has major structural and other, you know, safety concerns with it. So we bring it forward, get approval, demolish it, grade the lot and then grass and stabilize it. So code, some challenges, which we've, we've kind of already touched on a lot of these throughout the, the course of our conversation. So repeat offenders, again, you know, we have multiple properties and many of them are homeowner-occupied, you know, that have well over $10,000 in liens and that number's just going to keep rising as the interest keeps piling up. The out-of-town owners, you know, we do get a, a low, very low response rate from out-of-town owners, especially LLCs. You know, we get, there's literally properties that these LLCs buy, they own it for less than 24 hours and they're selling it again. So it, it creates challenges of tracking down who the owner is. They are just shuffling through multiple LLCs. And so that is an issue. Again, we cannot cite somebody that we physically can't touch. So an agent for an LLC that lives in Texas, you know, we don't, we can't cite them. So our only option is to go out there and do the work ourselves. And then the postal service, we do lose a lot of mail or, or it takes longer than it seems like it should to get all that delivered. So.
Been out one week and I can't remember which button to hit. That's Counselor Begley.
This, this may be a dumb question, but is there a third-party service we can hire to serve someone to provide these citations that are out of state?
So I, you know, I have to defer to the city attorney. I do know that, you know, there is a provision in state law that allows you to mail a citation, but the only recourse if they fail to show up for court is to clean up the property and place a lien on it. So there's no, you know, we can't, if I physically hand you a citation and you fail to appear at court, typically the judge is going to issue a warrant for your arrest for failure to appeal. But that provision of state law that does allow us to mail things and request, you know, essentially a summons to court, the only recourse if they don't appear is just clean up the property.
I'm asking about a third-party. Who can personally deliver it? So, so not in the Merrill, not you delivering it, a third-party to deliver it in person? Is, are we allowed to do that?
That's something we would, could look into. There are process servers that are not law enforcement personnel, but I mean, there's going to be an expense, obviously.
But in theory, we could add that expense to the amount that they owe. That's part of processing it. And so if they're, because I think the big question is how do we cite, issue a citation so we can get a third-party to issue those citations? And then they incur the expense eventually, that would be a, hopefully not a big expense to us and we would be able to cite, take, issue a citation to these out-of-state owners. How, how do we explore that, explore that further?
Yeah, we can look into that, but yeah, it'd have to be a, probably an RFP for a third-party vendor to do that type work.
Okay. Can we do that?
Yes, sir. We could research and I, I'm sure there are other communities with third parties like that. And I think we could first look to see if some other community is doing it and then don't reinvent the wheel, figure out how they're doing it, what they're doing and see if we can do it here in Columbus.
Counselor Davis?
So, that's a referral. Director, along the same lines as Counselor Begley's question, right now, currently, how do we collect, who says, who in your department, who sends these notices to people out of town or to the people that you're trying to target in this case? Who does that right now? Who does the collections?
So our, all of our notices are mailed by our code enforcement technician. So again, she's sending the certified mail, you know, requesting compliance. You know, so the officer goes out, he documents the violation and then he notifies that employee, you know, send a certified letter on this case and then she handles that part of it.
Is that just a sole individual that does that? And then how about the collections and to make sure that they're paying? Where does that go?
So again, I don't handle, the finance department handles all the billing and collections.
Well, you feel like you adequately have enough people in your department to handle this matter? Or would you prefer it to us to look at city manager and others to, to look at options to maybe in general to try to, try to, you know, to try to, well, it's accounts receivable is what it is, to try to make sure that people are, number one, they're aware, number two, that they're, you know, they know they need to pay.
Right. Well, again, like I said, the billing and all.
They have that obligation.
Yeah, the billing and all gets handed off to the finance department. So as far as my staffing with the notification and responding to the complaints, I do feel like we're adequately staffed. You know, the only number that you could possibly approve on, again, our peak time, the maximum time from a complaint to our first inspection is those three days. And the process is the process from that time. So we, you know, our, our office staff that's mailing the letters and doing the notifications that we have to do, you know, they get those out the same day. So as soon as the request is put in, they get printed and mailed that same day. So we're really not going to pick up any time by adding additional staff, just because the process is the process that we have to go through.
Counselor Tucker?
Um, city manager, can you add this as a referral for us to get a list, just so we can see a big picture, how many of those bills were sent out and how many were paid for these offenses? That way we can also, when we're working on possibly doing a courier service that Mr. Begley, Counselor Begley discussed, we can see what we need to do.
Sure.
Thank you.
You can continue, Ryan.
Um, so that is the end of the code enforcement side. Again, I got, we can certainly answer more questions at the end of the presentation, but I did want to jump into the building permitting and inspection division. You, you all don't hear a lot from me on this subject, which I think is a testament to the, the knowledge and the professionalism of my staff that, that processes these permits and does the inspections. But the permitting inspection division has all these employees. There's a chief inspector, two plans examiners, three permit technicians and nine trade inspectors. So we have three building inspectors, three electrical inspectors and three mechanical plumbing inspectors that are tasked with going out and ensuring all construction work in the county is done up to code. We only have one vacant position currently in this division, which is a plumbing electric, or a plumbing mechanical inspector. So if you know any plumbers looking for work, you can send them our way. So this division has the responsibility of enforcing the Georgia State Building Codes, including all those trade codes, plumbing, electrical, gas, mechanical. So how the process works is the state, through the Department of Community Affairs, adopts minimum building codes, which they use the International Code Council, which is a nationwide standard. And then Georgia admends, admends that code as they see fit through an appointed board that's appointed by, by the governor. But the state adopts the codes and then they grant us as a local jurisdiction, the ability to enforce the codes. So we in Columbus have typically never modified the state code, just whatever the state adopts is what we have. So that process includes review of plans. So all commercial plans, all residential plans are submitted to my office. They're reviewed by one of our plans examiners. Comments are sent back and forth so that the plans, to the best of our ability, meet the code. And then as the work is completed, contractors call in for inspections. Inspectors go out at different various stages of the project to ensure that the work meets the code. We also administer the Board of Zoning Appeals, which has really two functions. One is to grant variances from portions of the, the development ordinance. The most common one is setbacks. So all, you know, accessory structures, for example, in, in single-family districts have to be five feet from the property line. If a homeowner wants to put it closer than that five feet, they can go to the board and try to demonstrate a hardship to get a variance. The Board of Zoning Appeals also can review any decision and interpretation of the code that I make. So if I, you know, if in my opinion, the code says a builder's required to do this, he disagrees with that interpretation, he can go to the board and request them review my, my decision. And then the, this division also. And then the, this division also, uh, enforces the city's development ordinance as a whole, including, uh, work on historic properties, signage throughout the community. And we also review to ensure that any business, uh, before they get a business license, they gotta come see me and we ensure that the zoning, uh, is appropriate for that business. So just some numbers from this group. Uh, we issued over 6,000 permits last year, uh, over 1,300 certificate of occupancies, almost 11,000 inspections. The total valuation of the work that was permitted in the county was over $378 million for fiscal year 2023, which means that's the value of the work that was put in place in this community. So that's the the tax digest increasing, all that work happening, all the development in the community. And the total revenue generated was a little over $1.9 million, which pretty much matches up with the expenses for this, uh, division, which is how it's supposed to work under state law. Uh, one of our future goals and one thing we're really pushing hard is to get, uh, online functionality for permit applications as well as inspection requests. Right now, we still operate a little old school where contractors have to call in and I have an employee that answers the phone and schedules the inspections, really trying to get that, uh, online this year. It's something that our customers in the building community are really, uh, pushing for. So we plan to ease into that transition, again, starting with trade permits and inspection requests, which are really two of the easiest, um, things that we issue. You know, there's not as much review involved with those requests and then rolling out, um, some of the more in-depth review that we do. So one thing to note is that in order to be able to review a big, uh, set of commercial plans, we do need some big monitors and touchscreens and and things like that, some hardware and software. So that, I do plan on having that as a budget request upcoming. The benefit to that is right now we require two hard copy sets for all these big commercial jobs. You know, that's costing the applicant thousands of dollars in permit or in printing costs. So if we can go digitally, we're making the cost of development go down just a little bit, uh, in our community. And the final, uh, area I wanted to touch on was project management. So again, myself and the chief inspector, uh, that position was created to assist with the, uh, management of city projects. My chief inspector, Philip Smith, he is also a certified building official. He, uh, actually has more certifications than I do, so a highly qualified individual. So we are working on all these, um, projects right now, um, all of which you are familiar with. City Hall Judicial Center, Sheriff's Office Building, the pool replacements, fire station number five and kicking off the jail. Uh, those contracts were approved a few weeks ago. One thing to note, specifically with the pools and the fire station, is we really work hand in hand with those departments whose facility that is. So, uh, you know, we provide the technical knowledge, the project management experience. We push, you know, the contract through, we make sure the projects stay on scope and schedule and budget. However, the the department for the pools, Parks and Rec's gonna make all the decisions. I don't really care what color the bathrooms are, you know, those types of decisions, that's a Parks and Rec decision. So we, like I said, we work hand in hand, same thing with the fire station, with the fire department. So we do recognize due to the, uh, size and scope of the Judicial Center project, you know, our current recommendation is that we would create multiple temporary, full-time positions to bring on, uh, some temporary internal staffing to, uh, do the daily management and oversight of that project. So that way they could be boots on the ground, um, you know, seven days a week, making sure that that project's done the way that we want it to.
Judy, uh, Counselor Thomas, Judy.
Director Pruitt, um, I'm I'm looking at the city hall and the judicial center, uh, actually the judicial center, uh, project management. We have not had an official presentation to this council about what's going on in the judicial, with the judicial center. There've been news articles about it, there've been conversations in the community about it, but we have not had an official presentation. And so, Mr. City Manager, I'm requesting that we have one at our next council meeting. Oh, where are we? What's happening? What are you recommending? What are you thinking about, um, in order for us to deal with those questions that are coming to, they're coming to me, I'm sure they're coming to other counselors too, about what's going on down at the judicial center. I know that there've been numerous conversations with the judges, uh, and that there've been numerous suggestions with the judges. I'm somewhat concerned that, uh, we don't have a full-time project manager for that, for that project. From what you have said to us in these 36 slides that you have shown us, um, you're a pretty busy guy. And I'm not sure that, um, you can do, I know you're good, but I don't know that you can do two full-time jobs, uh, at the same time. And I I really would like for us to revisit the issue of a project manager for this multi-million dollar project that we are doing. This is not to say in any way, uh, Director Pruitt, that I don't think you're doing a good job on this. I just think you, uh, uh, may soon be, if you're not already overloaded. And so I would request, number one, that we have a report, we have and and a regular scheduled report on what's happening with the judicial center and that we revisit the issue of a full-time, uh, project manager for the judicial center. I think what I have seen in the, um, city hall, uh, you've done a a good job down there and I I think it's gonna, it's gonna work. But I'm I'm really concerned about the judicial center and what's happening down there. So Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager, if we can have an update as thoroughly and as quickly and as often as possible. Thank you.
Counselor Tucker.
Yes, um, you know, it's been several citizens, um, Mr. Pruitt, that that are saying, wow, that young man has a lot on his plate. And we've said it before at one of the previous council meetings that it is a lot. And one of the things, and I have to, um, echo what Counselor Thomas just mentioned in reference to the judicial center, because we are getting a lot of calls, um, regarding, have we received any updating? And we haven't, I can't answer those questions. But the same thing with the Muskogee County Jail as well. That's the second, um, probably most expensive project that we have and we have not received the update. So I will ask, um, city manager, if we could add the jail as well, um, to, um, the list in reference to getting an update on the jails. And I know that, um, we have Parks and Rec on the agenda for today, but also the pool replacements, like where, where are we, um, in the RFP process? Are we breaking ground, um, with actually putting the pools in or digging them up or whatever? These are questions that citizens are asking regarding, um, these projects. But I do, I do see that it is a lot. Your office has a a heavy, heavy load. And Counselor Cogle made a come in. I actually attended the GIS training, um, this month, one of the GIS trainings. And we were learning about dashboards. I will say that I think myself and Counselor Cogle probably could maneuver GIS, but I don't think, um, I'm looking at counselors. I'm sorry for laughing, but I think that we probably would need a report. I know that was, it's actually a class on reporting features, um, in GIS where we could ex- export, um, reports and you can export it by district. So I would say we probably would need probably a monthly report based on, um, things that are like code, code enforcement issues within our district. And the only reason why I say I can do it, I think Joanne can do it, but I know my friend here, Counselor Barnes, could not do it and he'll be calling Counselor Tucker. So, um, we just need a little help because one of the things that occurs, we have the citizens that contact us. And it will be helpful for me to have something where I can say, okay, this is where they are in the project or this right here is completed. We don't have that right now, you know? And it's, it's almost, and my my background is information technology. So I'm real big on, you know, customer service and being able to go in the, in the database and pull in where the info, where the, um, the status is of whatever. We just don't have that right now. So, um, I think that'll be very helpful, um, for the counselors to actually, to actually see. And I know some districts might have more than others. So, but thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Thomas, thank you. I think you're spot on, I'm getting some of those concerns too, so I appreciate those comments. I would say I still, you know, I wish we had entertained several times it was mentioned, uh, about putting a local, uh, body and advisory body of our developers together, which we got some really good ones. I wish that was the case, but I understand that we're about to probably soon mobilize, uh, in in the start of this project still. I mean, you could, I guess you could say that 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 entity could still help out at at this point. However, uh, you know, I, I, you know, I, I haven't asked anybody about specifically about when, uh, the team that's working on the judicial center will be mobilizing, but, um, I imagine it soon. Uh, let let me just ask you this, Director Pruitt, with the, or Ms. City Manager, the, the idea, I like the idea of having, you you're gonna need, I mean, you're gonna need people on site, you're gonna need people managing, you're gonna need project managers, okay? I mean, we, it's just, there's a lot of things that can happen in this size building, especially things that get missed. You don't wanna go back. I mean, you wanna catch all these things on the front end regardless. And and it it doesn't matter what stage you're in, the, uh, structural, architectural, civil drawings all the way across the board. Things get missed and you always wish you could go back and 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 do it all over again. So I I think that, uh, there are people in our community that can help. But what is the intention with the positions? Is that coming out of our annual budget? Or is it coming out of the cost that we've, uh, we've taken out bonds? That's another thing too. The the bonds have already been initiated, so there's certain obligations there. Is it coming out of the cost of the project, out of the bonds? I mean, you understand what I'm asking, Ms. City Manager?
That they, at least two people that I've talked to, uh, the director about, uh, will be a part of the project cost. And so they won't be on, uh, I, out of our general fund, if you will.
Right.
Be part of the project cost. And we do realize that with the size of the project and the number of projects that, um, the director is dealing with, that we, uh, we need those boots on the ground every day. It's, I mean, we've not had a project this large, a single project in the history of our city. And we gotta get it right. And, um, and so, you know, we'll, we'll bring an update as requested, uh, at the next meeting. And, um, I I will, uh, we'll, we'll bring that update. Our challenge has been, uh, I mean, we've talked to you and we've shared with you where we are in project cost and, um, and 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 some thing, other options that are being considered with the weans and so forth, to, uh, keep the project within cost. But and and we've had conversation with judges, as the counselor has said. But we haven't come to a consensus with the judges on what we last shared with you, and so that's what we've been working on. But we'll bring an update at the next meeting.
And that's good, thank you. I do think that, uh, you know, it gets, I'm thanks, sitting here thinking about the history and the lessons we've learned from the past. Sometimes it's once, once said, the history is your grow, one of your greatest teachers. You learn a lot of lessons from it, but you know, all of us, I think all of us here today could probably think of things that could have been done better in the current judicial center. You know, you don't wanna be in that position come 10, 15, 20 years. So, um, you always miss something, but, uh, like I said, I wish you could still entertain that thought about having people that do this. We got some good developers in our community that do this on a daily basis and maybe they can still assist.
All right, thanks, sir.
Um, yeah, just in closing, uh, Mayor, you know, we went through some numbers about, uh, permits issued, number of inspections, code cases worked. You know, if you add all those numbers up, um, you know, we're over 30,000 interactions with the public a year that my department averages and that's not including phone calls and things of that nature. Um, and and a lot of those are not friend necessarily. The public doesn't necessarily want us to be there. They don't want to be told what they have to do with their property. They don't wanna be told that their, uh, building inspection failed because they missed something. So, um, you know, I get very few complaints, uh, through our interactions with the public and our customers and it's really a testament to my employees' work ethic, their professionalism and their knowledge of the code and the ordinances. So I certainly couldn't do it without them and and I just wanna thank them publicly for all their work.
All right, doesn't appear to be any more questions, Ryan. Good, good job on the presentation, but but a better job with what you and your staff do going, uh, day to day.
Yeah, and and obviously you can see the challenges he had, but I I've asked Ryan multiple times. I know that somebody asked him a question, maybe Counselor Davis. I think I asked you a week or two ago, do you need more people? And his response was no, I don't need more people. We are meeting, you you share with me, your, um, standard of, um, doing it within so many days and so forth. And it's not typi, uh, it's not typical that I would ask a director, do you need more people? And they say no. But he said no. So thank you for the hard work and all that you and your team are doing.
Thanks, sir. I think Counselor Cogle wants to.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, I think the, um, One Small Step, people who are fourth on our agenda need to go and I'd like to make the, uh, request that we bump them up to, uh, the next presentation for the railroad crossing, if that's okay.
Yes. And so, um, Mayor Proteam Allen is listed for One Small Step, but I think he sent the people he want to, um, address this topic. And, uh, I do see Katie Bishop, if you would come forward. Just come forward to the mic, yeah. Katie, would you just introduce him, please? It's Ms. Katie Bishop.
So Katie Bishop, um, we are the agency that'll be working, um, on behalf of StoryCorps and One Small Step, a new initiative we're excited to talk to you guys about. And Neil Griffith is going to be field director here in Columbus. So he'll be here a lot, really, he's here once a week for like half the week. So we're excited to have him in the community and I will pass it over to him to give you guys a little info about the initiative.
All right, well, good morning.
Morning, Neil, welcome.
My name is Neil and I want to thank Columbus, Neil Griffith?
Griffith.
Yes. And I want to thank Columbus for welcoming me here into your open arms. So thank you so much. And I want to, um, express thanks to our mayor, and I'm saying our because I feel a part of the community now, and, uh, city council. So I'm here to, we have the slide presentation. There's a, oh, I didn't see it, okay. We have a quick slide presentation to introduce, uh, our One Small Step initiative. Just a brief summation. One Small Step is an opportunity for, um, conversations. It's an opportunity for conversations of people of different backgrounds, specifically political backgrounds. One might lean more conservatively, uh, one might lean more liberal, liberally. But in these times today, there's a lot of contention and a lot of exhaustion among people that have differences of opinions. So One Small Step is an opportunity to find. Surely, One Small Step is an opportunity to find their similarities instead of their differences. So we're excited to present this One Small Step presentation. So we have One Small Step, which is Columbus, Georgia. We're excited to let you know that we're going to be launching One Small Step on September 13th. We're excited to let you know that we're going to be launching One Small Step on September thirteenth at the National Infantry Museum. So One Small Step uh mission is to preserve and share humanity stories in order to build connections between people and create a just and compassionate world. StoryCorps, so StoryCorps is a company that comes out of New York, and um StoryCorps is uh in, StoryCorps has interviews which are forty minutes, recorded conversations between people who know each other and may not know each other. People record stories and conversations to honor the life stories of their loved ones. More than six hundred and fifty thousand people have shared their stories. The StoryCorps archives is in the Library of Congress, um, and it's the largest single collection of human voices gathered. So in two thousand and twenty-one, StoryCorps launched something called One Small Step, and that's what I referred to earlier as the conversations between two people of um political opposites, and it is a approach to fostering meaningful conversations across the political divide. Okay, so at One Small Step, uh we match two strangers with different political views for a respectful fifty-minute conversation. These are not debates uh over issues, but a chance to just talk about your life and talk about similarities and things that are valuable to each of these individuals. StoryCorps trains faciliters, guide participants through the conversation. The goal is for people who might not normally interact with each other to get to know each other. We chose Columbus because Columbus is a small town in a fairly large city. And I know you might be having trouble hearing me. Um, Columbus is a small town in a fairly large community, and it was ripe for the picking. Um, there are different, there are people of different backgrounds and different um spiritual beliefs and also different political beliefs, and we felt that it was an opportunity for them to meet and to get to know to learn more about each other and their similarities. So the demographic makeup, the political affiliation, um, and also other markets are beginning to get the traction. We also implemented a poll surveying people in Columba- in the Columbus area and found that Columbasites are exhausted by the current culture of toxic polarization and are open to being part of the solution. So it is excellent, excellent community to be in this project. Um, I'm just gonna, we're just gonna share a video in terms of what's what's small steps the conversation looks like. All right, do I? Okay, it's going up?
With the hat.
Okay, great.
And I noticed that you were surrounded by some people, and I noticed that they were being kind of threatening.
I heard a click of a lighter right behind my ear, and there were about three people trying to light my shirt on fire with lighters.
And then somebody snatched your hat off your head? And that's the point where I, something kind of snapped inside me because I wear a um, I'm Muslim hijab, and I've been in situations where people have tried to snatch it off my head.
Wow.
And I rushed towards you, and I just started screaming, leave him alone, give me that back.
I don't think we could be any further apart as people, and yet it was just kind of like this common, that's not okay moment. You are genuinely the only Muslim person I know. I just, it's not that I've actively avoided, it's just I've just never been in the position where I can uh interact for an extended period of time. So I guess my views on uh the Muslim community have been influenced by a lot of the news articles and and things of that nature.
I feel like a lot of times in the media, you don't see the normal Muslim, the one that listens to classic crack like I do. You don't, you don't meet that Muslim.
Can you tell me about where you grew up? What was that part of your life like?
So I was born in Baghdad, in Iraq. I moved to the US when I was ten years old.
Okay.
Being a Muslim girl, I stood out in almost every single way that you can in middle school, the worst time to stand out. What about you? How was it like when you grew up?
I was homeschooled.
Mm-hmm.
So it was, it was a vastly different experience socially. It was, I didn't have, I guess, as many friends as most people would. I only went to public school one year of my life, and I got in three fights, and I lost all of them.
Oh.
I actually lost a lot of friends because of this election, because of my political stance. So I hope that I can be the reason that someone decides to talk to someone as opposed to just cutting them out of their life or blocking them on Twitter, you know?
I'd like for this to encourage other people to engage in more conversations with people that you don't agree with.
Well, it's all about. I'm so glad I wasn't the only one who felt like that.
Is my on? Okay, so this particular uh video that you just saw serves as a perfect This particular, this uh particular video. Thank you. All right, just stand right here. So the particular video that you just watched, it serves as an example of an opportunity for people of different faiths, um, people of different value systems, and people of different um political um viewpoints to have a conversation that they would not normally have. We see, can you jump on it? Okay. So we see an opportunity here to do that in Columbus. Um, the demographics, as we referred to um before, in Columbus is strategically fit very well uh for us to go ahead and proceed with this. So we're excited that um you have allowed us to introduce StoryCorps, One Small Step, and to come into the community. Next, um, taking One Small Step. All right, taking One Small Step um towards increased connection with people of opposing views, reduce anxiety about cross-part- partisans uh interactions, and increased ability to recognize the humanity of others. More than two thousand people across the forty states have recorded One Small Step interviews. We have a powerful method of bridging our differences. We see strangers across the political divides come together, look one another in the eye, and remind and re- and be reminded that it's hard to hate up close. You are officially invited to our, thank you, to our One Small Step um political launching conference. As I said earlier, it's going to be held at the National Infantry Museum at nine thirty AM on September thirteenth on Wednesday. So, again, we want to thank the chamber. We'd like to thank the council members. We'd like to thank um the mayor of Columbus for allowing us to have this opportunity to be a part um and weave ourselves into the fabric of the Columbus community.
I just want to add just a couple of other things. So One Small Step is only in three other communities in the entire nation. We're the fourth community chosen. Um, so it's a big deal. StoryCorps, if you've listened to um NPR radio, they're a really large organization that's known nationwide. Um, they did a lot of research, a lot of polling. It's a big opportunity for Columbus to be an example for other cities across the nation. Um, the poll that he mentioned, some of those results are going to come out soon. I've already seen some of them. Um, and the responses, and this is hundreds of phone call conversations they had with people that live in our community. Um, there is a serious need for people to come together from different political divides because all these people said by heaps and bounds percentage-wise, that they feel completely polarized and completely separated. So we have a huge opportunity to use this, and and why we're here today is asking you all to get your districts involved, get them to the table. One thing that they've seen in other communities like Wichita, where are the other, Wichita?
Richmond, Virginia, and Fresno, California.
Those are the other three cities that they've had this in. Um, the biggest issue that they see is conservatives will not come to the table. They're just not as open to having these conversations, and that's where we need everyone's help. We need to see both political sides at the table having these conversations, and their goal is to have a thousand by by the end of the year, excuse me. So Public Launch is at the NEM Wednesday, September thirteenth. We'd love to see every counselor there. You'll be getting an invite in your email as well. And then we will really be utilizing you and your network to get as many people as possible to have these conversations over the next year. Um, so we appreciate your time and expect some more via email soon.
One more thing, and we want to encourage you to massage your conservative um persons that you represent because we want conservatives to also know that they have a voice in this community, and they might be um designated as being other, but we want to make sure that they feel a part of the community and a part of this initiative.
May have, may have a few questions. Counselor Huff?
Good morning. Thank you for being so patient, and I appreciate Counsel Kogel moving you up because you would have been here till about one.
We did not pack lunch.
Yeah. Uh, just wanted to say publicly that the Mayor Protem and myself, I don't think any other councilperson was there, but the Mayor Protem and myself attended a session with them. Uh, and it was just an amazing presentation. Uh, I've grown accustomed to your manner in which you present, so that was me sending the microphone to you because I saw you trying to jam, trying to look up at the presentation, and you were very active when we had the last meeting, moving around, so I knew it was kind of yeah, it was kind of restricting you. So I ho- hopefully it helped a little.
Thank you.
Yeah, but uh, this is something that's really needed. Uh, uh, Ms. Bishop and I have talked over time about generational gaps. She sees things some days the same way as I do, but not a lot of people do. And we have private conversations about how we bring the city together. So hopefully this will work to get all of the different backgrounds and political viewpoints and all other viewpoints together, because what I, what I found interesting just listening is watching people pour their hearts out and be themselves, unapologetic, and then become friends. Yeah, because you don't have, you don't have to think the way I do. We just need to respect each other and move ahead, and if we can accomplish that in Columbus, we'll become a better city. Uh, we're, we're, we're a good city. We're really a good city. But we could, we could, we could get better, and uh hopefully this will come about, and it's September thirteenth at what time?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty?
Yeah, national.
National Infantry Museum.
National Infantry Museum.
Okay.
See, I like the mic. I like to move around.
I know, I know.
I'm in my comfort zone now.
I, I kept looking and looking and looking, and I sent it to you because I thought you were going to really have a hard time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for being here. I look forward to seeing you uh, and you'll be boots on the ground?
Yes.
For some time.
Yes, I'll be around. And also, we want to have you recognize that this is really an opportunity to put Columbus on the map as a city that is a national pl- template for people working together in solidarity. So this is something that is going to be recorded um in the Library of Congress forever and ever. So we want to make sure that Columbus has a um a placemaker or a place mark in history.
Will you have uh some of the other presentations we saw at the National Infantry Museum?
Yes, we will.
Yeah, I know, I know, based on time this morning, you were trying to get the best you could get and move on, but
Yes, we, we will have those presentations um at the National Inf- Infantry Museum. And then also that day, we have something called a um, it's a One Small Step informational, which is going to be at Saint Thomas's uh church. And that's going to be in the afternoon, and we've also invited the community to come out and attend.
Okay, thank you so much.
Appreciate both of you for being here, and you know, S- StoryCorps is a, is an interesting organization because they, they talk about how when you put two individuals, whether they know each other or not, into a, into a small booth with a microphone, it, it, it kind of frees up the conversation some rea- for some reason. The microphone being that when you're in public, obviously sometimes makes people a little more hesitant, but when it's just the two of them, it, it, they tend to to open up. I know the city manager and I had, were invited uh to participate in a StoryCorps uh discussion about uh former Mayor Protem Evelyn Pugh. And uh, and it was um, i- i- it, it was very well done, and it's, and it's kind of cool to know that somewhere in the Library of Congress, there's people talking about Evelyn. So uh, excited about seeing where this leads. Uh, I, I think it's a great opportunity to remind people, nobody's trying to change anybody, just trying to get to know one another and discover that there really are more similarities than there are differences. So, thank you. We look forward to it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mr. Neil Griffith and Katie Bishop. Thank you for coming. Uh, next, uh, Mayor and Council, we've got Railroad Crossing, another subject requested. Uh, got Director of Engineering Donna Newman.
Good morning. Make sure I stand where you can hear me. I tend to move. We have approximately a hundred and twenty-one crossings in Columbus, Muskogee County. Um, and sometimes it's hard to know who really owns a line because some of them are owned by Norfolk Southern. Um, and there's actually two divisions in Muskogee County. We, I'm sorry, we have the Alabama Division and the Georgia Division. Uh, we have Georgia Department of Transportation actually owns some of the lines. Uh, Georgia Southwestern and Genesee and Wyoming. Um, I think they leased from Georgia Southwestern. Uh, the city actually owns some of the rail lines, and then there are private spur lines. Um, some of them are still in use and others uh have basically been abandoned, I guess, when there used to be industries in, in locations, and then they no longer operate. Um, sometimes it's hard to tell because they do frequently lease from another railroad, so it may not be operated by the owner of the railroad. Uh, just, just some general information as far as, make sure, oh, okay. As far as maintenance responsibilities, um, the railroads maintain the tracks and the crossings. We're technically not supposed to do anything on a crossing without the track supervisor present. Um, the ones along Veterans, I know we get a lot of complaints on that one in particular. That track supervisor is located in Selacaga, Alabama, so we have to schedule well in advance to get him down here. Um, the city's participated in the past with partnerships. Um, the concrete panels that you see throughout the city, uh, the city had to pay for those. Um, and then we also partner with them many times on uh if we need to change the approaches to the railroad crossing so that the asphalt matches the crossing itself. Railroads routinely ride the rails and to identify deficiencies, sometime their settlement of the track, sometime the rails are worn, and um sometime cross ties need to be replaced. It just needs some maintenance. And once that's identified, and we saw that um in more recent years where they came in and renovated many of the crossings throughout town. Again, just a little bit of history on the concrete panels, because I know we get a lot of calls and questions about those. They were installed on, at limited locations between two thousand eight and two thousand twelve. Uh, the city provided the concrete, I'm sorry, provided the concrete panels and the paving, and the railroad installed the panels. Um, Norfolk Southern had a program to make repairs on crossings and rail lines in two thousand and twenty-one due to deficiencies of the rails and the cross ties, and again, that's what I mentioned before. Uh, we recently, on August eighth, had a meeting with Georgia Southwestern um and GDOT. Uh, they do also fall under GDOT um throughout town. But in specifically at this crossing, at Sixth Street and Veterans, um, and we had hoped to meet about Ninth Street and Veterans, but we uh, GDOT realized that Georgia Southwestern didn't own that track. They actually, it's actually owned and operated by Norfolk Southern. Um, and we are actively trying to get another meeting scheduled with GDOT and Norfolk Southern to come down to meet about the Ninth Street Crossing, and hopefully uh, we're going to be able to talk about the Second Avenue Crossing. Things you need to consider about a railroad crossing. Railroad crossings are flexible. If you ever sit at an intersection and watch a train go by, you'll see the rails and the crossing itself deflect. So you can imagine with the traffic that goes across there, um, it with trucks and heavy vehicles, it's also flexing. Um, it's not rigid. Roads are designed to be rigid, so ideally, they're not flexing. So, ideally, they're not flexing when they're carrying traffic. The other thing that concerns me is last year, we got notified that the state was considering it, and they did, in fact, pass a new regulation that allows trucks to carry heavier weights. That's going to impact our roads. That's going to impact our rail crossings. Hopefully, not our bridges. We did have to repost our bridges because of this. The other thing is the volume of truck traffic. If you get a lot of heavy trucks coming across a crossing, it's going to wear out sooner than a crossing in another part of town, where it's predominantly cars and vehicular, passenger vehicles. The geometrics of the road crossing has an impact as well. There are locations in town where the rail crossing is elevated. And in that case, it makes it difficult to place asphalt, because typically, you'll see when we resurface a road, you see a spreader out there that lays down the asphalt evenly. And then we come behind with a heavy roller and roll it out to compact it. Well, you can't do that on a raised rail crossing, because you can't get a spreader across it, for one, and it's not even. And then, two, you don't have a real good way to compact it. So, that's why you see those tend to settle over time with traffic going across them. This is Second Avenue. And unfortunately, it's hard to show elevations, but there are significant elevation changes across this particular rail crossing. And the other thing is this crossing is on a skew, and that makes it difficult. This is Sixth Street... This is the one that we met with Georgia Southwestern on. And they have agreed, right now, this, as you can tell by the grass growing in there, is not an active track. We asked them if they could remove it, and they said they did not want to do that, because it costs a lot more to have to go back and build, basically, build a new rail line. So, they have agreed or agreed to look into and possibly come back and maybe be able to pave over this particular track, just to make it smoother. And then it would be something they could remove in the event they got another contract and was able to put this particular line back in service.
Excuse me, Donna.
Uh-huh.
Counselor Kogel has a question?
Sure.
On the Sixth Avenue or the Sixth Street, are they talking about just that intersection? Or are they talking about all the way east to west?
Mainly the intersection at this point in town.
Is that something that we can have a conversation with? I mean, traveling east to west is fairly treacherous. You can almost not drive on in that lane without driving in the parking lane as well, without... Or straddling... You either have to choose to straddle the center lane, or you either have to choose to straddle the parking lane, traveling east to west. Because the railroad tracks and the grass, I'm not sure that this picture really does the landscape justice going east to west. So, if that's something that we can have that conversation with, I know that that neighborhood would appreciate that.
We can ask the question, but I'm not sure, you know, if they're willing to do that because of the added cost in doing so. But we'll ask the question. This is Ninth Street. This is the one that we want to have a conversation with Norfolk Southern about... We did try the concrete panels here, but part of the problem at this location, and fortunately or unfortunately, I get to hear it all day long, trucks come down this road. They're going at a pretty high speed, depending on the signal, of course. And they... There's a slight depression across the track. And so, you hear the trucks hit all day long. And so, they're pounding the concrete panels. They start rocking with the compression of the trucks. And then it eventually breaks the straps that keep them in place. And then that's where... Or the concrete breaks up. And so, that's the problem that we're having here. I believe there's concrete under the asphalt on Veterans Parkway. So, it may not be as simple as going out there and just milling and removing the asphalt in order to bring it closer to grade. I asked the question when we were talking about it briefly with GDOT about raising the elevation of the rails. Well, that's not easy either. Generally, the rails are at a 1% grade or lower, which is like 1 in 100 foot. That's the change in the rail elevation, which is not a lot. So... And they said anything, raising anything over... I'm sorry. 3% requires going all the way up to the federal level. So, I don't think raising the grade of the crossing itself is an option. So, we're going to have to look at what can we do to the road to try to smooth that out more. And again, this will be working with GDOT, because Veterans Parkway is a state route.
Counselor Kogel?
So, for this particular intersection, I think Counselor Davis is going to agree with me, because we both drove over it this past weekend. But that particular exact spot right there, that rail is actually lifted up off of the ground, and I'm fairly certain that it's broken. And so, every time you hit it or a vehicle hits it, it actually kicks the rail up. And if you were to... I know I am concerned that it's going to lodge itself in one of my rims one day. But it is... I mean, it does calm traffic down significantly there, because people have to roll super slow over it. But that piece of... That particular piece of track right there, is there something that we can do? I know GDOT, our conversation with GDOT is not exactly a speedy situation. But that intersection on both sides is a huge safety risk right now. I think the people at PTAP watched a part of a truck, I guess, dislodge the other day and launch itself forward, because they hit that piece of rail and it kicked up. So...
I think they're actually hitting the concrete panel.
Okay. Well, I mean, regardless of whether it's the concrete panel or the rail, there's... That's a... It's a large safety risk that's escalating faster than I think our conversation with GDOT is going to partake. So, I don't know if that's something that we can address as a city, just from a safety standpoint. But I am concerned every time I go over that, which is daily. And I know others are having that experience as well.
So, is that GDOT or Norfolk Southern?
The crossing is Norfolk Southern. We will have to contact them. We can't touch them.
Right. So, we as a city can't even put up any warnings or we can't take any preemptive measures?
We couldn't even put asphalt out.
I mean, or put a sign up that says "slow" or take... There... If you are not from Columbus, Georgia, and you hit that rail, and this is our main artery in our city, you are hitting that rail bed not at a happy speed. So, I think we... I think that would leave a sour taste in my mouth if I was visiting or going over to Fort Moore, and I hit that rail bed and ruined my car or my rental car. So, is there not some preventative measure as a city that we can take to either slow traffic down there or close that half of the lane? Or are we just going to let this sit and hope for the best?
We'll have to work with GDOT on that, because it is a state route and Norfolk Southern.
So, we can't just, as a city, go and put signs on a state road? So, we'd have to request that they put signs out. And we can certainly make that request.
Yes.
That they put "slow".
Be an easier ask if it precludes us from having a bigger issue out there. I would think they...
Right. I mean, I think that's a conversation that needs to be expedited.
We'll get that conversation moving with them and see if we can't get that done quicker than some of the other...
And we are going to have a conversation. We had hoped that we would have the meeting scheduled by now. And while they were in town for the meeting, we could discuss all the other issues. But I've been watching it closely myself. And we are going to have to go ahead and get the track supervisor down here to look at some temporary measures until we can resolve what the permanent solution, hopefully, for this intersection is going to be. This is Tenth Avenue. And you can see from this one, the concrete panels have held up well. So, it really does make a difference on the road approaches as how well... Because Tenth Avenue gets a lot of truck traffic too, maybe not the same and maybe not the same speeds. So, there's a lot of factors that go in how well that track crossing holds up. This is 54th Street. This is just an asphalt intersection. And you can see that they do have the rubberized rails along the side of the main rail. This is at River Road. Again, this is a concrete panel. These have held up well. And this is where they've recently resurfaced, part of the resurfacing of River Road. This is at Fortson Road. This is an area, as you can see, where there's a lot of truck traffic coming through here from some of the quarries and other industrial uses in the area. So, it gets a beating. And it's also raised, so that makes it difficult. Williams Road. This is the Williams Road. This is Technology Parkway. You can see there's some concerns on this particular one with the asphalt. This is Woodruff Farm Road. It's held up pretty well. So, that was just a few of the crossings.
All right. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad we're having this conversation today. Ms. City Manager, one of the reasons I asked for this is because, you know, knowing that part of the duties and responsibilities of the office is to direct and supervise and the administration of our roads or streets, the maintenance thereof, the bridges, all those things fall under the privy of the administration's duties and responsibilities. I want to have a constructive conversation. I mean, that's really what I want to have today. I don't want anybody to get tense or anything like that. Let's just figure out how we can resolve this matter and come up with a solution. I want to say, and again, this is for, you know, we just had people talking about having conversations, okay? This is about having a conversation here. I think everybody at this table is aware that I've been talking about this issue for quite a while. Matter of fact, I went back and saw some of my emails. It's been close to two years. Two years, especially with Ninth Avenue on that road. And going over to my mother-in-law's house on a frequent basis in South Columbus, I cross that track all the time. Now, heading south, we've got a problem over there that I could not swerve out of the way, and I hit. And it's just not a good thing. What we're always being told is that, you know, we're going to have that conversation. We're going to send a letter. We're going to talk to Norfolk Southern. We're going to talk to GDOT. We're going to do this. We've been saying that for two years. Come on. Y'all know this. But something is not connecting somewhere. I don't know what it is. But I do know we've got a problem with these tracks, and they're not getting addressed. Now, specifically speaking, Smith Road, I mean, that's bad. That's really bad. I'm getting citizens calling me about that every day. Most likely, I think there's probably going to be people on the public agenda soon coming and talking about that. That's a problem. It's also a problem with the quarries not doing their end of what they're supposed to be doing and keeping the roads clean and the gravel and all the rest of that stuff out there. It just seems like there's neglect. Williams Road, I just sent an email a month ago. I looked it up. It was a month ago, Ms. City Manager. I sent it to your office, to everybody. I copied it to everybody. I have not gotten a response since then. That's one of the reasons I asked for this, to talk about railroad crossings today. Williams Road, it's my understanding on Fortson Road, when I want to say Morton, but I know I probably have it wrong, but we closed the road off of Fortson Road. And part of that agreement, it's my understanding, under the documentation, ordinances that have been passed by this council in the past, that Norfolk Southern was under agreement in the past, that they were supposed to make road improvements if we agreed to close that road. We closed that road. And part of that agreement, I'm pretty sure my constituents have told me before, that live over in the Nankipoo area, that Williams Road was supposed to be upgraded to concrete panels. Well, they did that not long ago, when we went through the city and we did some upgrades. But for whatever reason, they took them back out. But it was supposed to be an upgrade, but then they went back out and put asphalt. Now, we're dealing with the same issue, because, you know, all those dump trucks go through there all over again. We're dealing with the same issues we were having. I don't know why they took them up, because it seemed to be working at that time. But they did take them up. I think it's under agreement, under a binding agreement, that they're supposed to maintain that with concrete panels. The documents I have, and I think I forward them to the departments, that's my understanding, and that's what I was told that took place in the past and the way I read it, they are supposed to be upgraded with concrete panels. Now, you know, whether there's documents out there, when all that took place, that state that specifically on Williams Road, I'm going to say I don't know that completely. But the ones I have, it's my understanding that that was supposed to take place as part of that agreement. Anyway, it needs to be addressed. And then you've got some other areas in town. The City Mills District, you've got a situation there where you've got... They went in there and they put a ramp. And you've got other areas that you brought up that need to be addressed as well. I guess where I'm going with this is, it's my understanding that GDOT standards, they're standards. There's Norfolk Southern standards. And now, we... You know, I thought, what was it, Sixth Street we just talked about that you started? I thought that was GDOT matter, that it was in their hands. But you said Georgia Southwestern?
Georgia Southwestern is the railroad that owns the line.
That's not a DOT. DOT doesn't have any control over that?
They have control over Veterans Parkway.
Correct.
And they have some input into rail lines.
Well, they do have standards. I know GDOT has standards. Norfolk Southern has standards. These railroad crossings that we're talking about do not meet their standards. They're not even up to their standards. There's negligence. There's neglect. And somehow, we're not connecting. I know as a city, we're... Every time, I think every time that I've asked about some of these matters, it's, oh, well, we'll send a letter to them. We'll talk to them. But nothing is being done, and it seems to be a standard habit. It seems to be the MO of the railroads. So, how are we going to address this? I guess I'm trying to find a way. The only thing I can think of would be, do we need to, as a city, do we need to up our game and enforce, make these entities comply, enforce them to meet their standards? And then you may have to take legal means to do that. And if that's what it takes, the question here at the table today, do we need to do that as a community to get somebody's attention, because obviously, they're not listening? And I'm not blaming anybody around here. I'm just saying we've got a problem that we need to resolve, and it doesn't seem like the people we keep pointing the finger back at are doing anything about it. Doesn't seem like they care. You know, you've got to go find these supervisors. They should already been down here. Because I've brought it up several times. Y'all know I have.
Oh, we understand, yeah.
And it's been going on for a while. So, that's one of the reasons I've asked to address this matter today and to have this work session and talk about it, because, I mean, we're falling behind, but yet things are getting worse out there. And, you know, we're getting the brunt end of it, of people calling and having the issues. And, you know, I'm trying, I'm reaching for solutions, is what I'm doing today, that we've got some issues. So, I'm ready. If that's what we need to do, to send strong language, to get people to comply with their own standards, I... You know, I'm positive the courts would probably... I, you know, I'm positive the courts would probably enforce that. If that's what we need to do to get their attention, then the question is, do we need to do that? And I don't know what else to do, but certainly having this conversation today is important. And I hope y'all, you take that from a positive standpoint, a constructive standpoint on behalf of the citizens, 'cause we do need to figure out and we do need to keep people, look, if they're gonna claim and own these crossings, then they need to meet their standards. And they need to listen to us and when we are communicating that we have problems in these areas. But Ninth Street, I don't, I mean, I don't know how anybody in this room cannot say that we've got a problem there.
We do.
Or Smith Road.
We do, and they have patched it several times for us. And I believe we have started those conversations.
Well, they never, I'm telling you, the places that I see and the places that I have to veer off and miss, they have not touched them at all.
Well, there are other things, in my opinion, and again, I've been watching it. There are other things going on and some of them may not be associated with the crossing in itself. There could be utilities under there that are creating part of that problem or there have been bores or some other activity that are contributing to that. And the other thing is, and we'll go back and we'll refer to the standards. A railroad standard and a citizen standard are not gonna be the same. Because they are looking at the crossing, not necessarily at the road and the right ability. So sometimes I think expectations are different. So that's what we've got to get clarified, to see if they in fact meet GDOT standard and railroad standard.
And I appreciate that and I understand that. I think that the point is that they're not our standards and what, they, look, they're their standards. The matter about citizen standards, no, they gotta meet their standards and their requirements, whether it's GDOT or Norfolk Southern. They have them and they're there for a reason. And, you know, we can't keep having, we can't keep coming back with the, look, we're gonna have to find a way to be more proactive, that's what I'm saying. We can't keep coming back with the same, having these meetings, we're gonna have another meeting and the same thing's gonna be set over. I mean, it's just regurgitating basically the same information and nothing gets done. I view that as unacceptable. So I hope you take it as positive, Miss City Manager.
Well, I,
For the sake of the community.
Yeah, I share your concerns and I've been dealing with railroads all of my years in the City Manager's office, as City Manager and Deputy City Manager. And I go to the Georgia City County Managers' Meetings. And the problem is the same all across the state. And, you know, and we don't have the control of the railroad. They do basically what they want to do. And for whatever reason or however that came about. And of course, you know, and the road, especially on veterans, belongs to, it's a state road. We can't even put a sign up, so we don't control anything. We don't control the railroad, we don't, it's a state road. And we just gotta figure out a way to get a breakthrough. And we have not figured that out yet. And I saw the Norfolk Southern representative at a meeting two weeks ago. And I said, "We need to meet and we need to talk." And I came back and I told you, "Make sure you coordinate this meeting." And so we are going to meet and they are going to, this person is, has been good about trying to, to help, but it's not, you know, we have a higher standard and then when we have the higher standard, there's a cost to it.
That's right.
There's a cost. And it's a matter of, you know, whether we want to pay for the higher standard, but this is their minimum standard, this is their standard. And we expect something at a higher level and, but we'll have to pay for that concrete, if we want concrete versus the asphalt. So we don't have a breakthrough yet, but we're dealing with entities that we have no control over whatsoever. And so we're still trying to figure it out. But I hear you and share your concern. I travel, I travel Ninth every single day, multiple times. So I see exactly what you see and what your concern is.
And I appreciate you sharing those thoughts, 'cause, you know, it's the citizens that are listening, 'cause they're concerned. And we don't have this conversation. They just, they're gonna throw rocks at us, so.
Well,
You know, at the end of the day, they're gonna throw rocks at us. But, and I don't know, maybe in agreement here that, do we need to send stronger language to get someone's attention?
Well, and maybe we do, but I can tell you, when I said, "We need to meet," to that person, they're first, out of their mouth, "We're under litigation. I can't talk." And, "Oh, I'm kidding."
That's right.
That was, yeah.
Well, they've kind of been saying that for years. That's my understanding.
That was the response to me. And then so, "Well, yeah, well, let's meet." But we don't control them and we are going to try and pin them down, get a breakthrough. And, but we have no control.
Well, the other thing, I know the last time we did upgrades, you know, we had the same conversation with the, Mayor, you remember, where we had to do the upgrades in the community. And I think Mayor Tomlinson at the time really pushed hard to get these upgrades. I mean, she had the same, shared the same views and that, and concerns that we're dealing with here today. I think we put up, if I'm not mistaken, we did upgrades all over town and we put up, what, two hundred thousand or something like that to get it, to get it done? And replacing, whether it's the concrete panels or replacing these crossings in many places. I don't know the specifics of that agreement, but it got worked out. And we had to put up money. And, you know, if we're gonna have to do that today to put it under the road improvements and the maintenance thereof and keeping the roads in a good condition, then, you know, we need to consider that. If that's where the relationship goes again and we do something same. But replacing these panels, I mean, I don't think it's gonna be hard and these panels can be replaced. It's just a matter of getting the people, look, they put them down. They put the panels down. They ought to be able to replace them. I mean, there shouldn't be any kind of issues from that standpoint. And I just think that we need to consider, Miss City Attorney, if we need to create some strong language, I believe you can do that in your office. Am I right?
I mean, if we're gonna talk about potential litigation, we can do that in another forum. But, you know, there is potential litigation at each crossing and there is potential litigation concerning the rail yard in general.
Well, there is, yes, and, you know, recourse there. But one other thing, and I'm finished, Miss City Manager, thank you for allowing us to have this conversation and putting it on the work agenda today. I appreciate it. Thank you, Director Newman, for presenting. Appreciate that as well and taking the time to put it together. I will ask again if you'll look into Smith Road and Williams Road and Ninth, those, you know, if other council members have some concerns. I was told that the one at City Mills, that you can hardly get some trucks over it, that you, it's so angled that you hit bottom. You bottom out. So, you know, those are some that I know of. I know Forty Fifth Street has a panel that's loose that moves every time you go there by Columbus Tech. But last thing. When you have that conversation, get them to clean their property up over there, where their offices are.
Yeah.
'Cause it is in code violation. They need to clean it up, clean the sidewalk up and everything else that goes along with that. That just, when I see that out in the community, I see that and then I, you know, I hear what they're saying. And it just leads me to believe, do they really care about Columbus? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Thomas?
Just a quick note. Thank you for presenting this today and thank you, Counselor Davis, for bringing it. I think if nothing else, this is to the community. We are, we are aware of your concerns and we are aware of what's going on. To most of the people who call about the railroad tracks being hurting my car and impassable and all that kind of stuff, they don't care that we don't, we can't do anything because it's the GDOT or it's Norfolk Southern or whatever. They want us to do something about that road. And I want us to be able to respond to that and say, "We are looking and we are trying and we are doing this." And not to say, "Sorry, it's not our, you know, we can't do anything about it." All of those roads that you showed us were, as I, as I went back through them, are roads, are tracks that the Norfolk Southern uses. They're active tracks. And so that's, you know, going down Second Avenue, you know, you gotta stop before you get to that railroad track or slow down because it's gonna, it's gonna be a mess. So I really appreciate you bringing this to us today. I appreciate Counselor Davis asking for this. And I think it gives us as counselors a little more information so that we can respond to our constituents as they call us about these issues. And if it takes litigation, if it takes another, you know, money from our budget to get these things fixed, let's, let's give that a serious look and see if that's not something we want to do so that our citizens are not, you know, I, I asked Counselor Huff sort of tongue in cheek that Ninth Street railroad track right there by P-TAP, does P-TAP get extra business for that? They probably do, you know? And that's not acceptable for, for there to be streets in Columbus that our citizens do not feel safe and do not feel like they can cross the railroad tracks without damaging their property. So whatever, whatever you need to bring to us, please don't hesitate to do that. Bring it and let us take a look at it and see if there's not something we can do to make this better. Thank you.
Agreed. Counselor Kogle?
I just, I just had a thought of, you know, what we're talking about, you know, we can't do anything about, about veterans right there because it's a GDOT road. You know, we, we do have our own representative living in Columbus who I'm, you know, I think Kathy Williams would be more than willing to have a conversation about what we can do to mitigate that safety. And I think she would probably have had that, either had that conversation yesterday or, or tomorrow or this afternoon. She's always very, very readily accessible. And I know that she values our, our community as much as we do as counselors. And, and so I think that's probably worth the conversation with, with her. I mean, she's present, she lives in the community and is happy to help. So I, I'm not sure, I, I think working together with her, we can come up with a viable solution for that intersection sooner than later.
Thank you. I believe that's all the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor, Council next, I've got Parks and Recreation, update, Holly Browder, Director of Parks and Rec.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. I'm here this morning to provide an update over Parks and Recreation as well as any challenges that the department has had. So first, we're gonna talk about facility concerns. Facility concerns currently are that we have our roofs and our rec centers and many of our buildings are leaking. And I'm also gonna tell the good with the bad. So currently, we have an RFP out to have Northside, Shirley Winston, Frankchester, Salmon and Fox repaired. And that was out of the general fund. We've also had waterproofing treatment by Twenty-Ninth Street Recreation Center. It was also already done and it was part of the funding from fiscal year twenty-four. We also have other facilities currently though that are still leaking, that have either already been replaced or are still lacking funding. Haygood Gym, Brett David Studios and Boxwood, as well as Tillis, have already been repaired or replaced. Then we have Pop Austin, Carver Park, Gallup's, Edgewood and Comer that still need funding to be replaced. Carver Park, however, does fall within the SFOST for one of the upcoming projects that we have. So we do feel like we can do it as part of the project. Next would be our HVAC concerns. And you can see here, without me going through all of them, where we are on whether they are on order, on back order or whether they've been completed. Other concerns for our recreation centers and facilities are that many of our facilities are aging. Our newest facility is about twenty years old and that would be Northside. It was opened in two thousand and two. With that comes the need for carpet and flooring and as well as being painted. Water fountains that need repair or replacing, as well as we also have a school board that's in need of repair. All of these are items that are not budgeted each year in our budgets and are currently in need of funding and repair. Many times you, some of you have asked about playgrounds here in the city. And so I wanted to give an update on where we stand. Here is a chart of our playgrounds. Also provides you a rating chart of where we are and also if they've been replaced. Most of those have been done with community development block grant funding beginning in two thousand and fifteen till present. So you'll see those that are highlighted in yellow with asterisks. And then also you will note at the bottom that Boxwood, Charlie Hill and Lake Bottom Park are slated to be replaced within the next twenty-four months, yeah, twenty-four months with the new grant that we received from Governor Kemp. So we look forward to being able to do that. Obviously, when it comes to Parks and Recreation, we have a lot of facilities. We do not manage, or I'm sorry, we manage, but we do not maintain those facilities. So we rely heavily on Public Works and their Facilities Maintenance Division, as well as all Public Works to assist us with a lot of our needs. So with that, I'm gonna ask that Drell Short come up and give a short presentation in regards to our facilities.
Good morning, good afternoon, I should say to everyone. And I wanna thank the Mayor, the City Manager, Deputy City Manager and Holly for allowing me to come forward just to give you a glimpse of what facility maintenance has to deal with on a daily basis as it comes down to handling all of these, these structures. So first and foremost, I'd like to remind you all that facility maintenance manages, and I'm talking about the maintenance, over six hundred and fifty-two structures. That's inhabited and uninhabited, that's parks, bathrooms, that's statues, that's fountains, anything that the city owns, we maintain it. With that being said, I think it's very important for you to know how many buildings each section has. And I'm only talking about inhabited buildings, meaning people are actually in these facilities at all times. Parks and Recreation has seventy-seven inhabited. That does include irrigation as well for your ball fields. General Government has nineteen inhabited and Public Safety has twenty-three inhabited. So just to give you an idea of what our budget looks like on an annual basis that we have to use to work with to do these repairs, we have two different budgets. We have the capital funding budget that we get every year. And then we have the operating budget that is done with the facility maintenance budget that we have to utilize in order to maintain all of these buildings. So in FY twenty-one, we had six hundred thousand dollars allocated to facility maintenance. And with that money, we did everything from courtroom carpet replacement, that's for all the courtrooms in the government center, a new vent hood for Fire Station Eleven. I'm just giving you examples. We demolished a beer garden at Golden Park before the new tenants moved in. We had a new fire station put, a new generator placed at Fire Station Number Seven. We had the roof replaced on, at Haygood Gym. We replaced a boiler at MCP. And I can go on and on and on to show you the various things that we're doing with these funds. We also started our HVAC replacement program for all of our R twenty-two units. And that was something that came down that we had to shift because of the cost. And that was something that came down that we had to shift because of the cost for the freon for these units. In FY twenty-two, we were granted one point five million. And with those funds, we did everything from a partial pipe replacement at the jail to improving, making improvements at the auditorium for all the different events they have there. That includes having all the lights changed out, having mini splits put in the concession areas, so forth and so on. We had an accident occur in the Front Avenue garage in which a person drove through. We had to have that done. We made repairs to our fuel pumps. And of course, we continued with our R twenty-two replacement. We did a hundred and ten units. In FY twenty-three, we were granted a million dollars, which is a lot of money. But in this day and age and the cost of repairs, it's like very expensive. What used to be ten thousand dollars is almost quadruple now. So we really have to watch how we're, how we're spending that money, how, what projects we are prioritizing based on the importance of them. But in FY twenty-three, we had a million dollars funded to us or allotted to us. And we did repairs at the Health Department that were not predicted. We did not know that they were gonna have the issues that they were having with the sanitary lines. And we've spent over three hundred thousand dollars just in that one building. And when we have those unpredicted events to occur and they're expensive events, then we have to reprioritize the list of repairs for that year. But in that year, we also put in a generator at the Annex. We did HVAC repairs at the Recycling Center. We did sanitary repairs at Fire Station number one, that's the one down across from the Government Center. We did additional auditorium repairs to the restrooms and pool packs. Water, water heater replacement at Fire Station number, I think that was eleven, I'm not sure. Rock Island Waterline Replacement, Fleet Maintenance, Roll Up Doors Replacement. And the list goes on and on of the things that we try and do to maintain all of our facilities. But this is telling. This shows you exactly, based on our operating budget, we have left capital funds, we're talking operating budget now. We have three separate line items for facilities. And one of them, the first one is Parks and Recreation is at sixty-five twenty-seven, that's the line item number. Remembering we have seventy-seven buildings that have to be maintained with the funding that is allocated in this line item. And as you can see, in twenty-three, we only received two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now if you take that two twenty, you divide it by the seventy-seven buildings, that equates to just over two thousand dollars that we have available to spend per building if we had to do something to each and every one of those buildings. That's not enough. It absolutely is not enough. If you look at sixty-five twenty-eight, that's Public Safety Building, Buildings. They have twenty-three buildings, that's your fire stations and everything. We were awarded in twenty-three, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That equates to about fifteen thousand dollars per building. Sixty-five twenty-nine is our General Government Building, that's approximately nineteen buildings. That includes the Government Center and other locations, Public Works, Facility Maintenance, Fleet Maintenance, all these other different buildings. We were granted four hundred and forty thousand dollars and that equates to about twenty-three thousand dollars per building. So it's really important to understand that we have things on a list, we have them prioritized. But if they're not being funded, then of course, we can't make those repairs like we really want to. We want to be aggressive, we want to be progressive in making sure that we're doing these things so that the public can read and sees a ceiling tile that has a yellow spot because it needed a roof. We should have been put a roof on it. But of course, roofs are very expensive and I understand that. So when we talk about facility maintenance funding is one aspect of it, but another-
I was going into staffing, but I'll- Yeah, just ideally, you know, considering the buildings and grounds and all that you do, you showed the one point five million one year, million dollars another year. What kind of budget do you need?
I have recommendations at the back, at the last slide and just buckle up. But it's gonna be a real, a realistic recommendation. But I do wanna talk about staffing because staffing is something that we are completely challenged with every day. In FY twenty-one, we had thirty-two slots. That was thirty-two administrative individuals, six plumbers, eight electricians, five HVAC, four carpentry, five custodial, and that should be two correctional officers. That's not enough for the number of buildings that we are having to maintain. There you go. I wanted to show you what we had, starting in FY twenty-one, we had thirty-two slots. In twenty-two, we only had thirty-two slots. And in twenty-three, we were granted new positions based on the opening of City Hall. We received four custodians, we received, correction, five custodians, one plumber, one electrician, one HVAC and one carpenter. And unfortunately, we've got three custodians and that's it. We are having a hard time getting trade individuals to come to the city of Columbus to work in these capacities to make sure we can maintain these buildings. So as you can see, as of right now, we have sixteen vacant positions in facility maintenance. And therefore, that requires us to have to absolutely contract out a lot of the work like we had to do at the jail because we didn't have any plumbers. And that's expensive. I wanted to show the staffing locations for each of these facilities, main facilities that we have. The Government Center right now and has been full since twenty-one, that's not been an issue. The jail, of course, we have four maintenance people there. We have two plumbers I'm excited about, but we still need an electrician and an HVAC tag. The Annex is full as far as vacancies is concerned. The Citizen Service Center has one maintenance person. It's vacant. Right now, this morning, we got word that the, there was a problem with one of the ladies rooms and at the, it was too cold in here. I put my division manager and his assistant to work. Matter of fact, the assistant is still back there working on fixing the ladies room. And that's because of the shortages that we have. We should have a staff here to maintain this building. MCP, we have one maintenance person that is full right now, but they absolutely need more than one. City Hall, we have new positions, four custodial and four maintenance. We have three custodial on, on the payroll, one pending. We have no trade op, no trade personnel right now. That's your plumbers, your electricians, your HVAC or your carpenters. We are still putting out advertisements and unfortunately, the ones that are aver, that are applying are not skilled. Once you sit down and you talk to them, you realize that they're a jackleg, a jackleg electrician that will, can do more damage than any good. So we, we don't want to hire those type of people. And then of course, we have what I call field maintenance. These are individuals who go from location to location to location when needed to make sure that we can assist those that are stationary in these locations as well as going to different park facilities that need the assistance. So what are my recommendations? So first and foremost, we have to increase funding for what we need to do in order to do the capital improvements as well as just the standard operating maintenance that we need to do for all of our facilities. So for capital improvement, I am recommending that that be improved, improved and increased to three million dollars for the entire city. Increase the facility maintenance operating line item, that's for sixty-five twenty-seven, just Parks and Recreation to at least a minimum of one point five. Understand that if an air conditioning unit goes down, it's not gonna cost ten thousand dollars like it might be at your home. It's gonna cost seventy, eighty, a hundred, a hundred and forty, fifty, depending on the size of the facility. And then of course, the other thing that I think would do us all well is to have a maintenance team assigned solely for all of our parks facilities. That would be a team that would still fall under facility maintenance, but all they would do would be to focus on all of our various, those seventy-seven facilities that need constant upkeep because of the age of the facilities, quite frankly. So those are my recommendations as far as how we can go about doing a better job of maintaining our buildings. We don't want people to see substandard buildings because of the fact that we didn't have the funding to make the repairs that we needed to repair. Whether we have staff or not, but we have to contract it out, it's being done. But we have to have the funding in order to do that. And with that, Mr. City Manager, I'm gonna turn it back over to Holly.
Counselor, talk.
Thank you. Actually, that was very informative. If we provide the increased funding and seeing that we have had, I'm gonna say some challenges with staffing, meaning, you know, plumbers and some of those trades. If we increase that, how is that going to help when we can't get those employees?
It would allow us to contract it out. You know, we, we don't have the staff to do it, but believe me, there are companies out there that would be more than willing to come and do it, like we had to do for the jail when we had no plumbers. We had Benjamin Franklin come in.
And that's, you know, what I was gonna say. At least you could contract it out, but, you know, and of course, you know it's better if you've got your own plumbers. Because we can't-
I'm sure it's expensive. And I was at the Aqui, over the summer, the Aquatic Center kept, kept the plumbers at the Aquatic Center and I'm sure that was expensive. And that was the thing, do we need to do three million or one point five in reference to maintenance for Parks and Rec? Not actually adding positions, but just forecasting for possible, you know, doing contracts?
I would also-
Well, again, you know, but obviously, the preference would be our own employees versus a contract. But we get to a point, we don't have a choice and we have the contract like we did at the jail. I think we diverted plumbers from another major project that we had because we didn't have any plumbers. We sent them to the jail, I think they were there for six months. It was five hundred thousand dollars.
Were, were you all bringing like this recommendation, is it for next fiscal year? Or are we trying to add something during mid-year, mid-year budget?
I would say that we should look at it at mid-year. But my thought would be for next year's budget. We are going to bring a finance update, I believe, at the meeting on the twelfth. We need to kinda share with you where we think we, where we are, not where we think we are, but where we are. But ideally, the, the, the solution would be to add something at mid-year.
Cause one of my concerns, six hundred thousand seems to go fast.
Oh, it goes very fast.
And I'm thinking it doesn't last half of the year with some of the concerns that we have in Parks and Rec. And that sadly, some things get put on the back burner and it's like year after year. And it creates more-
Problems.
You know, problems. And sadly, it's probably one of the reasons why we need new pools. Cause that is a expense to maintain those pools. So, and I know we're gonna get into that. But with the new pools, eventually we'll get moving on the installation of the new pools. Do we have a maintenance plan specifically for the pools?
Outside of what the general contract will allow for, we have not forecasted anything past that.
You know, and-
Standard warranty is what I'm saying.
And, and I would say, you know, of course, we would obviously be bringing something forward to you in budget requests as the new pools start to come online. And that would be the next budget process, no different than, than the director here did with City Hall. We knew City Hall was gonna become online and we started adding in the budget, the maintenance people. Trying to time it that they would be hired and, and you did approve maintenance people for City Hall. And so it would be the same way for pools and other projects that are on the horizon. As they come to fruition, you know, we, we're gonna have to add staff. I, I was talking to the IT Director, for example, yesterday. And he's coming to my office about hiring the cybersecurity manager. He talked about how Augusta got hit, how Savannah got hit. So we're gonna be coming back to you with, with some personnel requests for those kinds of things.
And then also, one of the things that we talked about are the inhabited. But what about the uninhabited? Like Belvedere Park, Promise King and some of the other parks. Like what, what is it that we do for those regarding our budget or regarding-
It depends on what's needed at those, at those locations. But let me be clear, the inhabited locations are a priority, for sure. And then we work our way down to the uninhabited based on the funding that we have available. If Holly were to call me or anyone would call me and say, we're having a special event like she's done on many occasions, then we will do a shift, shift funding and try and get the facility where it needs to be for that event. But we do look at inhabited locations first and then we go down to the uninhabited.
Cause I'm thinking, and Director Browder can help me. Didn't Belvedere have an upgrade on the restrooms at that park for the SLOST?
No ma'am, Belvedere is not on the list for upgrades. It was not identified as one of the, the key locations that was broken out when it was voted on, so no ma'am.
Okay, I thought I had saw that part.
Is he, is he one that's uninhabited?
No. Yeah, it's-
No, Heath Park is open to the public and we use it. But to Counselor Krav's point, it was not one of those that was broken out and identified directly.
All right, Counselor Thomas?
I would suggest to you, both of the directors and to the city manager, that this request for an increase in funding be brought back to us at our budget hearing for FY twenty-five. I, I'm a little concerned that it's being, from, from what I hear and understand, it's sort of being piecemealed. And I don't like it being piecemealed. I wanna know the full picture. And so I would recommend to you that it, that you do whatever is necessary to bring it to the city manager and the mayor as they prepare the proposed budget for FY twenty-five. And let's see if we can't get this done. The other thing that, that every time I hear a presentation like this, this comes to my mind. Columbus Tech is graduating plumbers, HVAC, all electricians, all of these kind of job folks to fill these jobs. I, I would love for us to have a program with Columbus Tech, with Jordan, with Spencer, with Shaw, with whoever is doing this in our educational program to pull those people in, whatever we need to do to pull them in. Do we give them an internship? Do we do, you know, what do we do to pull these folks that are graduating from our educational facilities so that they wanna come to work for the city of Columbus?
Yes.
And, and let us know what, what we need to do to make that more attractive to this, this kid that's eighteen years old and is graduating with a HVAC certificate and, you know, let's, let's get him here, let's get her here. Let's do whatever we need to do to make that attractive. And I don't hear that. I don't hear that we're having any kind of connection with our educational facilities. And I, I would like for us to do that. I'd like for us to make that a, a priority, that we hire those, those folks and put them to work and, and make it so that they'll stay with us for thirty-six years.
And we do, we, we, we've talked and we've had meetings with both Jordan High and Columbus Tech as well as the Trade School in Americas. So they know we're here, they know we're looking. Unfortunately, we get into a bidding war because the trade skills right now are, are very scarce. And they are throwing money at these young people and sometimes we can meet their requirements, sometimes we can't. We lost one today, an electrician who's been working in the field for over ten years. Young guy, would love for him to come in, he got a better offer. So do we wanna get into a trade war, you know, a, a bidding war for employees? I don't know if that's the answer, but we are definitely working with all of our trade schools here in Americas to make sure that they know that we are here and that we need people. And to make a difference, we also took our, our- And to make a difference, we also took our, our, uh, our one positions. We, you, we have them from one, twos and threes depending on the skill level and have turned those into an internship, if you will, meaning we're taking people with not the skill knowledge that we normally would have. But we're pairing them with someone who has more knowledge to bring them up, so as they obtain their knowledge, they can be moving up, they can move up in the ranks from a one, two or three, whereas we used to take a one had to have a certain amount of skill in order for us to take them, but now we will take them with less skill with the understanding that they have to go with and be paired with someone with more knowledge in order to work with us.
But we've gotta continue to work those relationships. You're talking about internships. Yeah, yeah, they've got a C D O, um, training courses being constructed and they're gonna be, you know, um, people can go and get their C D L license, but, uh, but we are challenged with, I, I mean, the, the trade wars. I, I was talking to the engineering director, um, last week. Um, young man we hired, uh, as a construction manager, had him working with Ryan Pruitt and, and, uh, straight out of, uh, west, one of the Georgia, over in Statesboro, that school. And we hired him and I think he's been here less than two years. And I thought he was still here and last week I asked about him. He took a job down in Tampa with a construction firm. I mean, he, he, we hired him straight out of school to get him ready to grow and to work right there with Ryan. And he got le- just less than two years and a big construction company hires him and we can't compete. So we're dealing with that reality, but we gotta keep doing, we gotta keep doing it and so hopefully we'll get some more state.
And what I'm asking you to do too, I think, is bump it up a notch. See if we can't, come to us with, and, and see if we can't do something to make the Columbus job, the ci- the job with the city of Columbus more attractive than.
Yeah, I, I get it. I, I think that's what, you know, I, I think that's what we thought we were doing, cause this kid out of high school with no experience, I think he started with us at like sixty thousand dollars. And, but anyway, we, I get it, I get it.
All right. Thank you ma'am. Councilor Crabbe?
Thank you. It seems like it's structured. You know, you're looking for nor- for new positions to create a Parks and Recs maintenance team. And then you had mentioned, um, the city manager about how you were creating a a maintenance team for the new city hall. So it, it appears that we have all these maintenance teams throughout the city in these different buildings. It seems to me that it would be more efficient that if we had one team that went out to the different buildings, we could have and through a work order system or something like that, we could pay our team members more. And we're not duplicating different positions in different buildings. We could become more competitive because I have a hard time believing that we need that many teams working separately.
Well, we, don't, don't misunderstand me. When I say teams, I mean, that's their home base. That doesn't mean that's where they stay. If we've got a project going on, let's say here, and we have to take someone from the government center, move them here, then we do. But it's not something that's done every day because government centers still has to be taken care of. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand it completely.
So, and, and we are doing that, even with City Hall right now. I have no maintenance people, when I'm talking maintenance, I'm talking trade, not custodial in City Hall, but if something goes on right now, we are sending other electricians or, um, H V A C techs from either the field or from another location to City Hall to try and rectify or at least diagnose so that we can get a plan together and how we're gonna do the, resolve the issue. So we are doing that. But I guarantee you, the minute something happens in the building and I don't, we don't have anyone in that building that can react right away, it's gonna be a problem and we don't want that to happen. We don't want that to happen.
All right, Councilor Kogel?
Um, I, I would, I think I would like to see, um, mid, like at our mid-budget, um, what it would cost to like wh- what, what we need to get to where we are, but then the opportunity to overfund it, to get ahead. And then to come back at the, um, next, next budget re- um, review with the, uh, like a detailed preventative maintenance plan that's gonna be proactive so that we're not always chasing. I feel like if we can get ahead a little bit and, and possibly overfund and fix some things ahead of time and then, um, I, I think that will afford us the opportunity to, to catch our breath, but create that preventative men- maintenance plan so that we don't fall behind again. And, and I think, um, a lot of us like we hear what we're, all the things that we need to fix over and over and over again, but what, what are we doing to, to prevent those things from breaking? And I think there's a little bit of a, um, maybe not a miscommunication, but a gap in communication with, um, you know, what, what we're doing to prevent these things. And you, and, and I'm sure, I mean, it's obvious that you're doing a, a great job, but it's not fair to you to always be playing catch-up. And, um, and so I think, I think we can, uh, we're in a position right now where we can, we can, we can get ahead. Uh, so that you can have a little bit of breathing room so that we can create a better plan to stay ahead. Instead of always reacting to fixing H V A Cs and, um, and just doing what the contractor says that we need to do for the pools. There's, there's gonna be stuff, if we wanna keep these pools open and functioning, um, then those are things that we need to have on hand, like the natatorium is a great example. I mean, it would be really great to have parts on hand so that they can be fixed before, uh, we have to delay a swim meet or, um, just, just to, we just need to stay ahead of the game, I think, in, in the, in the city right now.
All right, Holly.
Thank you, Drew. And Holly, you may, you may wanna touch on, cause it's, I know the people watching, when they hear that there's no maintenance done, they think that there's never any regular maintenance applied to the pools and some of these other areas and that's, that's just not accurate. It's just some of the deeper dive that we don't have the personnel to do when some of these pools get to the age of twenty-five years. It starts going wrong that we can't see or anticipate, but the maintenance, the regular maintenance, you're supposed to do that all the time.
Yes, so between our staff and Drell's staff with the plumbers, the regular maintenance gets done. But to Councilor Kogel's point, we can't predict if a motor's gonna go out. I mean, we have no way to know that a motor in a pool is just absolutely gonna stop working. But we aren't funded, I mean, a motor for, for one of the pools is thirty-five thousand dollars. That's not something we're budgeted for that we keep on hand. Um, and then the small pool, if it goes out, it's twenty-five thousand dollars for a motor. There's just not enough funding that's set aside for those kind of issues, but yes, to answer your question, yes. Maintenance is done daily. It's done by our staff and done by Drell's staff, so it's certainly not something that gets put on the back burner, but it is done daily.
And, but, but know that when you say it's not set aside, if you've got a thirty-five thousand dollar motor that goes out, even if it's not budgeted, we're gonna get a motor.
Right.
Uh, you know.
And we do, we absolutely do, but to Councilor Kogel's point, it's just not sitting there. So, yes. Um, but moving ahead, as we talk about capital improvements and things that need replacement, um, I'm gonna try to go through this quickly, but when we talk about our parks, so in Park Services, we have four restrooms at Cooper Creek that are uh, slated for replacement. We're looking to do that as part of our SPOSS project. We have restrooms at Pop Austin Alexander Fields that need replacement, restrooms at Lake Oliver. Um, for those of you who remember, we previously had one outdoors at, uh, Lake Oliver and unfortunately it was burned down. Um, so now we're forced, when we close, the public doesn't have access to restrooms any longer because the only restrooms onsite are actually contained in the building. Um, we also need to replace the restroom pavilion at Charlie Hill. Um, and we also need, uh, to rebuild or replace the pavilions and picnic and, um, bathrooms at Flat Rock Park. But we're hoping to address some of that with our SPOSS budget, um, when we get to that project. Um, in addition, we also, in athletics, we are in need of scoreboards and lights.
Excuse me, Holly, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Just one second. Um, Councilor Davis?
Um, you know, I, pardon me, I just had to step out a minute, but, um, on the, uh, Lake Oliver deal, I know we're self-insured. So, and the bathrooms burned down, that's been a while ago, but currently, do we keep the bathrooms open once the marina shuts down or is there virtually no access to bathrooms once everybody leaves?
That's correct. There is no way to give them access because it's part of the building itself. And so we cannot leave that portion open, um, when we close the building, when the staff leave.
And so we're totally responsible as far, there's no insurance that covered that facility at all that, that burnt down.
Right. Yeah, we, uh. Yeah.
Do we have fire insurance?
Is, was that?
So, we were told by the risk management at the time that our amount of the value of the building did not meet the deductible or did not meet our minimum.
Typically, our deductible is, I, I believe it's twenty-five thousand. Um, uh, i- is what I believe. I don't know how much, what's the value of that bathroom?
I don't recall, but I know it was less than fifty thousand is what was reported by the risk management.
I don't recall right off, but it's, it, it could be fifty, it may be twenty-five, our deductible. And so that may be the reason.
Well, and that, uh, you know, I ask myself with all the people that use that marina, what do they do if they have needs? Especially after people go home, um. I have no clue what's going on.
We, we need to, we need to handle it.
Okay.
Yeah, we do.
There, you get the picture, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, athletics, um, of course, we need scoreboards at various facilities across town as well as lighting replaced. Um, we did receive, um, funding for baseball scoreboards at Rigdon Shirley and Edgewood and we're currently working in the RFP process, um, and getting, um, those quotes so that we can move forward in getting those replaced. Um, we also need a new football scoreboard at Lake Bottom. And then as we move to aquatics, I know it was asked earlier today about the pools and so, of course, we're in the middle of that project, working on pools right now. Um, and we were on schedule to reopen in summer of twenty twenty-four. The demo schedule, uh, will start in September, so in September, we will start with Salmon Road, Shirley Winston, then move to Rigdon. And so for citizens that are wondering why that hasn't started before now, we did not, and the contractors did not want to tear out the pool shells that exist now and then have water to fill them back up or to rain in them and create more issues. Um, one, then we have to worry about from a health and sanitary standpoint with mosquitoes because obviously it's nice and warm outside and if water was to stand in those big holes, uh, where pools once were. Um, so that's part of why it was not done until they are actually ready to start working on the projects and putting something back in place. So, but that demo will start in September and we will start with Salmon Shirley and then Rigdon, um, moving forward. Um, and also, um, just a quick note, I will come back with an update just on renderings and update for the pools. Um, but this was just to be included as part of today, but this is a conceptual design that I showed everyone back in March, I believe. Um, that shows you what, um, the pools might look like as we get ready to move forward. But again, I'll bring more substantial renderings when I come to do an update again, but I did wanna share this so the public as well um, would have an idea of what it might look like.
Excuse me, Holly. Councilor Tucker?
Yes, um, you said September.
Yes, sir. I mean, yes ma'am.
Um, if they start in September, are we really scheduled to open?
Memorial Day weekend, twenty twenty-four.
For all three?
Yes.
And while we're pausing there, I, the deductible is fifty thousand. Uh, I gotta text from staff.
Okay.
So I wanna show what a few of the amenities might look like, um, that we have looked into, um, and are, um, forecasting for these facilities. So there on the top left, you can kind of see the, the climb where they go across the little lily pads, little circles there. In the top right, you see a little boy and there's a little what we call a tot slide. So it provides something for the younger children to play on. And then you can see at the bottom, there's a little climb-on feature with a little well there. Um, so these are some of the things that we're looking at as we, um, go into building, um, the new pools. Um, but again, I'll come back with renderings in more detail and, um, closer once we get started on demo. Um, next, I wanna talk about Carver Park. Um, things that we've talked about previously, we're updating the park, dredging the lake, renovating, replacing pavilions and the picnic space as well as replacing the playground. Of course, this is a SPOSS project, um, that we will start next year. Um, but we've already begun, um, working on, um, renderings, um, trying to be ahead. Um, even though we know funding will not start until, uh, next year. Um, so with that, I wanted to share a conceptual design that we're currently looking at. Um, I'm super excited about this. I hope the community will be really excited about this. But this is kind of the first glance at what the new park could look like. Um, so with that, you can see that we've, um, we've restricted, uh, vehicular access on the northern portion of this diagram. It becomes pedestrian, um, more pedestrian friendly, I should say, from a biking, walking standpoint. Um, and then you will also see that we're going to try to enhance the athletic field, um, basketball courts, possibly some tennis, pickleball courts. Um, also opening up more green space so the community has additional green space to utilize as well as, um, the walking trail, um, making sure that it's, um, renovated as well. But holistically, it really gives the park a fresh new look as we go forward. So it makes it way more, um, modern, um, than it currently is at this point.
Councilor Tucker?
Yes, um, in reference to dredging the lake, um, what's the, the benefits? You know, what?
Sure. Absolutely. So dredging the lake, um, typically what happens dredging the lake is, is needed because of residual sand and runoff from, um, from the park that ends up there. A lot of our parks, you all know, are watersheds, which means they're able and they're built to design to hold water. Well, with that also comes a lot of sediment that comes in from creeks and rivers, um, and just general runoff, um, of, you know, sand and things like that from the park itself. So dredging the lake and, um, basically improves the health of the lake. It allows us to restock it with fish. It goes from being a shallow, um, kind of mucky, uh, dirty area and sun spaces to being um, deeper, fresher, cleaner. Um, not that it's not clean now and it's not fresh now, but uh, it's really difficult to, to adequately explain other than it just fills with sand. If you take a cup and it has water in it over time, as it, water runs off into it, obviously it fills up more and more and more with sand. So you can see the line and the layer of water gets shallower and shallower, which makes it less healthy, not only for the, the fish that live in the lake, but the other, um, animals and mech- you know, not into all that, but all those little environmental things that go in there. Also, it affects the environmental health of the, the trees and the plants and the animals and everything that lives in the park. So we really look at it as an environmentally, um, friendly option for us to enhance the park. Um, and give back to that park and make it, um, longevity-wise to give it kind of a fresh new life, um, to be honest. But that really will benefit our citizens as well because once we're able to restock the lakes and the fish are able to, um, basically have a better environment to exist in, then they're gonna also multiply and it's gonna just, we're gonna all reap the benefits of it.
All right, so when we, when we dredge, um, the lake, we don't remove all the water, just?
They will, I can't say to how much, but if you've ever looked at, um, at Carver Park, if you drive out on the end, um, where you can drive now with a vehicle, you will see that there is a pipe there. And that pipe is there for the purpose to drain down, um, the water in the lake so that it can be worked on. So if you were to sit on the dam and you look to your right, which is the far east side of the lake, you will notice over the years that the water has receded and we have more vegetation that has grown around the lake. So those are the kind of things that we will address. Once it's pulled down, the water, kind of like at, at the lakes, um, like, like Oliver and Lake Harding and things like that. How people are able to work on the, the grassy area kind of that grows up and the rocks and stuff like that. That's one of the things that will get, um, to be addressed. And so be able to clean that up, um, really fill the lake back in, uh, with more water and expand the life of the lake.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Okay, um, so this is our, um, conceptual design currently for what that might look like. Of course, pavilions, restrooms, um, a new playground, um, all of that would be updated as part of the SPOSS project. Um, moving to Lake Bottom, um, things that we're looking for there, up to, um, update park and amenities, tree canopy work, renovating the football field, uh, repair place, tennis courts, basketball courts, pickleball courts, renovating the walking trail and of course, replace the playground. Um, this is a SPOSS project as well, uh, but we will be going ahead and renovating or replacing the playground with the funding that we received with Governor Kemp, so that portion will move forward. Um, the next project, the next park is Theo McGee Park, also a park that's designed to have SPOSS funding. Um, renovating the park, removing fencing lights, replacing the bathroom. Um, renovating the park, removing fencing lights, replacing the bathroom, um, renovating or replacing the basketball court, creating a walking trail, um, and also the replacement of the playground. The playground has already been replaced. Um, we've done, we did that several years ago, with Community Development Block Grant funding. And a lot of these other areas, um, you can see some photos on the left. I wanted to make sure that our community got credit, because this is a part that our community has really taken, um, taking a, you know, a really good interest in, it really wants to help us. So, we've had a lot of different groups and a lot of different agencies and people who have come to the park to help us. Um, and so, this is just a few of those um, those photos. Um, the biggest partner we have, of course, is Trees Columbus. And uh, due to the hard work and uh, partnership with Trees Columbus, to date, they've raised eighty-five thousand dollars privately. Um, that has funded a lot of the things that have been done. Some of those things include the tree inventory for planning and a maintenance plan, a survey of the park users and the potential users going forward, uh, a concept plan um, for the park. Um, we also had a pri, uh, press conference with Pratt and Whitney at one point for a planning, planting partnership, and funds were donated to pay for um, plants and trees that will go into the park. Um, of course, the drains in the park were cleared. That was worked by Trees Columbus and Columbus Water Works, as well as engineering. Um, as you can see from the photos, trees were planted in January of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three this year. Also, um, we've worked with Georgia Power and are grateful for their assistance. They helped remove the light poles. Uh, many of the light poles needed to come down, so they were removed. And also, the fencing. We've removed the fencing on the old field that was there, so that we can create a walking trail and open field space, so it can be used for other sports, um, as well as the things that were currently already being um, held there. So, you can see a lot of different things are going on. Um, but again, this is a SPOS project, but we have had some local um, gender stoners to privately fund this with the help of Trees Columbus. Um, moving forward, we have Memorial Stadium, um, but I really wanted to really quickly say a huge shout-out to Spencer High School. Um, they were able to send out a hundred and twenty-six scholar students. Um, so thank you to their principal, Ms. Patterson, but they sent a hundred and twenty-six students um, to Memorial Stadium to help us clean up all the trash and um, things that were in the park. Um, so a huge thank you to her and those students for coming out and helping us with that. Um, but you can see here some of the things that we still lack and are still needing to do, like field lighting, um, turf, irrigation, drainage. Um, the field needs to be widened to accommodate other sports. Um, there's a lot of things that we are really looking at doing down the road, as far as replacing the press spots, concessions, bathrooms, um, locker rooms, um, officials' room, ticket booth, scoreboard, stadium sound and hospitality suites. These are all things that long-term really need to be done um, at the stadium. And then, Cooper Creek, of course, we have a lot of things at Cooper Creek that um, long-term need replacement. Uh, the courts need to be resurfaced. Um, we need to paint, repair, replace the poles. We need new LED lighting, um, railings. There's just a lot of things out there that due to age, just need to be replaced um, because of the ti, timing of how old they are. Also, in addition, we need to resurface the courts at Frank Chester and Lake Bottom. Um, those desperately need to be done. Lake Bottom could be done with SPOS. Um, and perhaps Frank Chester, hopefully, that could be done when we do renovations to Binning Park. Um, Binning Park is another park that was identified with SPOS funding. So, the hope is that once we get to that, that project, that we'll be able to do um, their tennis courts as well. Um, of course, Cooper Creek, the park itself, as well as the tennis facility, um, is SPOS, um, listed, as I said before. So, we'll be able to hopefully address updating the park, bathrooms, the lake, pickleball courts, pavilions, picnic tables, and renovating the trails, um, just to name a few of the things.
Counselor Tucker.
Um, in reference to the capital improvements, have we put a dollar sign to some of the projects? Or some of the things that you have listed?
We have not at this point, because we did from, we did at one point, yes ma'am, counselor, we did. But kind of to Director um, Schwartz's point, everything keeps, the price just keeps expounding. Every time we hit a number and we think this is what it's gonna cost, if we wait any time period of all, the cost has gone up greatly. So, we're kind of holding back until we get closer to this project um, at this point.
Uh, and I, cause this last budget session where we kind of rushed to put some things on the, on the budget. Um, if we could possibly see maybe some of the top things that we need to address and be able to forecast, you know, what we possibly, I mean, even if it's just an estimate, what we possibly could be looking at and, and what we can be, um, what we'll be working on as a council to approve for the next budget cycle. Just something we can see, you know, in dollars. And then also, um, I see we have dredged lake, um, again, at Cooper Creek. I think there, and I don't know if we have, um, missed the deadline, but some of the land-water conservation fund grants, I'm not sure if we have applied for some of those um, to help us with our parks that have lakes.
We have not at this time, no ma'am, we have not. Um, but the plan from the department's standpoint, and would have to obviously speak with the finance director and city manager, um, would be to possibly try to apply for those as we get closer to some of these park projects. Um, so that it can, it can be leveraged. But those are not grants that you can apply for every year. Once you apply, there's a waiting period that you, um, if you receive the dollars, that you can't go back. Uh, I apologize, I don't know what else to talk in my head, though.
Okay, that's, I was about to ask, when was the last time we?
I do apologize. I do not know.
So, it's probably been a while? Okay.
Um, so, let's see, um, Lake Oliver, um, of course, I mentioned before, we need to rebuild the outdoor restrooms. Um, bumpers, we really need to replace our bumpers on the docks, um, that have worn away, that's so that the boats don't get scratched um, when they come up to get gas or to get other services at Lake Oliver. Um, and also, um, we have some rotten wood around the building, just because it's on the water, that needs to be replaced, um, as well as some gravel and rock on the banks. Um, when we get to South Commons, a huge thank you, um, Mary Sherman's here today with the Sports Council, and a huge thank you to them and their support and the funding that they've helped us to provide at South Common to do a lot of upgrades. But there's still things that we need additionally, such as some Georgia Power poles that need to be updated. We need to update our roundhouse. For those of you who don't know, that's the large building that does the scorekeeping, has the restrooms and the concession in the middle of the um, complex. It needs to be updated. We also need to uh, provide some more safety nets around the complex to catch foul balls and to update our scoreboard in the stadium. Then at Bib City Soccer, we need some new LED lighting. Um, also, we're looking to renovate the field bathroom and concessions. But I'm grateful to say that we were, received a um, grant from the state with Governor Kemp. And so, those bottom items, the field bathroom and concessions, um, as well as fencing, will be paid for out of that grant. And that was a non-matching grant, so we will have that um, sh, very shortly beginning um, to take place. Next, we have Woodruff Farm Soccer Complex. This is also a SPOS project. Um, we need upgraded bathrooms, more bathrooms, LED lighting, more fields. And the reason for that is that when this complex was built, it was the first complex of its kind here in Columbus. And we went from the Bib Field that I just mentioned to Woodruff. So, at the time, it was built out in, in such a way that they thought that that would cover the need of the city. Unfortunately, today, there are so many children that wish to play that we've outgrown our complex. And simply put, we could use two of the complexes um, to be able to accommodate the request um, for usage, which is fabulous. That's fabulous that we have that many children and families here in our community that want to participate. Unfortunately, we've outgrown our complex um, and need more field space. In addition to that, we need to address, um, we have a lot of storage there that's kind of been piecemeal together over the years. It'd be great to have one large storage area. We need playground replacement, meeting space, and to add some streaming services, so that maybe if a parent or grandparent, they host a lot of tournaments with kids who come from all over, um, they would be able to watch those games. And so, those are things that we would look to, um, to try to add. Um, but again, dollars won't go as far as we'd like for them to, so we'll have to see as we closer. But this is also a SPOS park project. Heath Park, um, we need a new, we need a restroom facility um, near the pavilion. It's been asked several times for that. We also need a replacement playground, and the pavilion uh, really needs to be replaced um, due to age. Charlie Hill Park, um, needs restroom and pavilion repair. You can see the note there. This is also a park that we see, received a grant, and so, we will be replacing the playground at no cost to the city. Uh, Flat Rock Park, we need to update the park, replace bathrooms, again, dredge their lake, replace pavilions, picnic tables, and renovate the trails, and this is also being funded by SPOS.
Holly, if we could, let's go back to Heath Park. I think Counselor Crabb has a question.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, I'm seeing these Governor Kemp grants um, in the different parks. How did you choose which parks were going to get um, use these grants?
So, I'd actually didn't get to choose very much. So, it was based on the census tract provided by this, by the governor's office. And so, we were only able to use our park space that fell within the census tract for Governor Kemp. Um, and that actual census tract was different than the census tract or census information that we use for Community Development Block Grant with, with the Community Re, Reinvestment Department. Um, so it actually didn't mirror very well, but we, we used what was provided from the state, and that's how we had to make our selections. Um, the selections were very narrow, I'll be honest with you, because as you can see, there were a lot of projects that we would have liked to apply to it, but we're very uh, restricted in what we could actually apply, like what facilities and um, areas would apply. So, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, sorry. Binning Park, um, I mentioned earlier, there were things at Binning Park that, like, such as the courts that we would like to resurface. Um, we also need to renovate and basically update the whole park, uh, renovate the softball complex, so that we can host um, more tournaments um, and, and accommodate more teams, uh, replace the bathrooms, concession, um, and of course, playground replacements as well. Um, but the playground replacement was already done with um, Community Development Block Grant funding. Um, now, moving into capital equipment, these are items that we've typically asked for in our budget each year. So, you can see the items there listed in Park Services, from lawn mowers to vehicles to trash trucks. Um, and you can also see the items that we were funded this year. Um, we received one zero-turn mower out of fiscal year twenty-four and the field conditioner, um, which is called also known as Ball Field Groomer. A lot of people refer to it in that way, and that was funded in this fiscal year. In the area for Refuge or Trash, uh, we're looking to purchase additional trash trucks. And at Cooper Creek, rollers to be able to remove the water um, from the courts. And Recreation Services, you can see here, we're asked, we'd asked for and need, still need um, vehicles such as buses. Um, we're looking for score tables, tables in general, um, chairs, um, and some AV equipment, so that we can start new technology programs for our teens here in the community. Also, we're um, in need of replacing bleachers at Frank Chester and Shirley Winston. Those facilities were opened in the late nineties, in nineteen ninety-nine, to be exact. Um, and so, after about twenty-four years of basketball games and cheerleading and you name it, um, they're just in need of replacement. We have looked into um, renovating them as far as just resurfacing or replacing some of the benches, and were advised that was not the direction that we needed to go. Again, um, Lake Oliver with replacement of bumpers. And then in aquatics, you can see we are going to need um, additional vehicles as we get back to opening these pools, um, to be able to service and maintain them um, with staff. Um, moving to Columbus Aquatic Center, you can see the things here listed for the Columbus Aquatic Center from uh, lane rope replacements, because now the building has been open ten years. Um, we need additional lane ropes, and we also need to replace our starting blocks. Those are the things that the kids stand on when they take off uh, to actually compete in the pools. Um, we have long since replaced a lot of the parts on them, um, but now the parts are no longer available for the models that we have. And so, we're being forced and being told that, hey, you're just gonna have to buy all new starting blocks. Um, we also need new touchpads. When you go to a swim meet, um, they touch a, a device on the wall, that's what is their timing mechanism, and those are ten years old and are also up and need replacement. In our therapeutics, this, um, you can see we need an ice machine, a vent hood, a stove and a fridge. They're just outdated, um, or in, in not the best working condition and really need replacement. Um, at Britt David Studio, the same thing. You can see the items that we need for repair in our um, cultural arts facility. And again, this is just due to age um, and usage.
Excuse me, Holly.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Tucker.
Yes.
Yeah, so I was on the screen where you had, I think, treadmills and the um, bikes. Is that enough for replacement?
That only covers the rec centers, um, and that doesn't cover all, but it does cover most, yes ma'am.
Okay, cause I was in Shirley B for the senior citizen event, and one of the seniors was asking about the bikes. They are in horrible condition.
Mm-hmm. Due to age and use.
Oh, it's, it's, it's the whole, the whole bike is?
Yeah, and we have had them repaired. We had a contractor or vendor that would come in and do repairs for us, cause that's more of a specialized. Um, but again, they're, they are commercial, but we use them in a commercial way, and they get a lot of usage. Um, but that's again, something that we've just not been able to replace.
So, so, and I'm not sure what the condition is of Fort Moore, but they have, like, resale, and their equipment, this, I guess outdated, is way better than our equipment, and I'm not sure how we could possibly work with them, but they're always getting rid of their equipment.
Well.
It's, our, our, our equipment is in real, real bad shape.
Well, and, and I can certainly have a conversation with my uh, counterpart about um, maybe donating, but typically, when they do, they gotta go all the way up to the Department of Defense. But, but we can have that conversation if they've got something that we can use.
Yeah, and I, I'm just thinking, cause sometimes, you know, it, I think we had, we, I'm saying personally, got a treadmill and some stuff from Fort Moore, and at the time, it ended up being free.
True.
So, if we could possibly, I mean, they, they're, they're was, I guess, considered outdated is way advanced compared to what we have right now. So, just looking at, at ways, but looking at eight treadmills and two bikes. I think we had like two over there at Shirley B. Um, two bikes, and I think it was elliptical. I don't, I think in the treadmill, but all of them was, and that's just one. So, if you have eight and eight, that's not gonna be enough for?
No, it's not a complete replacement, but it does give us something for citizens in each portion of the community.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Huff.
Director Browder, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to slow you down, cause I know you're gonna get into uh, personnel in a few minutes. Uh, I want to go back a little bit. You said on the active parks that we have, uh, I wanted to touch base about Fluela Rec Center. They have uh, two basketball courts, one here, one across the creek. Will those be re-striped and new nets or whatever to keep them, cause that's the rec center, I think, is doing well. May need a few things, but basketball is key.
Yes, sir. Um, we replace the nets regularly, so that's something that we do all the time. We can certainly get with staff and see what we can do about replacing the lines. Um, we will have to contract it out. It's not something we can do in-house. We don't have the equipment um, to do so. Um, but we can certainly see what can be done in regards to the lines.
Cause they're looking for um, some of their outdoor competitions to have the three-point line.
Okay.
Uh, is Primus King on your, on your radar as far as the basketball court?
It is not right now, cause kind of to uh, Ms. Schwartz's point, uh, because it's not open and operational, it has not seen as much attention. Um, and we have so many others right now that are.
Well, I know about the rec centers, I, I mean, the courts.
No, they are. Yes, the courts are. The courts are on our radar to redo the same thing and do the redoing of the stripes. Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and we may be able to talk to engineering about striping the basketball courts. They can do that in, in-house.
Okay, okay. Um, that would be goals and nets. On the, it was mentioned earlier about the Land Water Conservation Fund. What can it be used for as far as land use, courts and things of that nature?
So, it's pretty open-ended from what I know, um, about the land and water conservation. As far as projects go, it's pretty open-ended. Um, but it, there is a match, there's a matching portion to it, I can tell you that much. Um, I do not recall the, the, the amount. Um, but there is a matching portion to it, um, in regards to the grant, but I think it's pretty open-ended. A lot more people use it for conservation and, and things of that nature, for buying property, um, and starting in that way versus um, brick and mortar as far as buildings and things of that, that way. Um, it's been more for trails and clearing and things, getting projects started, uh, I think, more so than anything.
Now, I was asking, because you mentioned earlier that you may get to the courts at Frank Chester.
So, those will be part of the SPOS project.
It will be?
Yes, those could be, those could be redone as part of the SPOS project, and so, what we're trying to do is?
Tennis courts, pickleball courts?
Yes, to identify those areas.
Girls ain't there as one of.
Right.
Not a lot of them use the courts.
And we used it all summer for the group that came before council for um,
For street hockey?
Street hockey, yes. We used it. Street hockey, yes. We used it all summer in that capacity as well. But yes, it does need to be resurfaced. It's got dips and, and holes in it, um, and that's not something that can, you can just fix. The whole court needs to be re-resurfaced. Yes, sir.
Okay, um. Anything on the radar for bending heels in the future?
We don't as of this time, but the playground is not gonna be far off from needing to be replaced and the same for the basketball court. Needing resurfacing and, or not resurfacing, but restriping and things of that nature. So yes, it will also have to be looked at.
Okay. I think I'm good for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um. So moving forward, the senior division, these are some of the areas, um, of items that are in concern. Same thing pretty much as what you saw in recreation services when it comes to vehicles that we need replacing, um, stoves, exercise equipment. Um, and it's really, you can see, it's more from the exercise standpoint and then of course tables and chairs, um, are things. But because we have to buy in bulk of so many, the cost is great. Um, but those are the things for the senior division that we're looking at. And then I'm gonna move into, um, personnel, which we've spoken, um, previously about. Um, but to go back for a moment, I wanted to kind of see where, where we started and where we are now. Um, you can see here on the screen the years in which either deleted positions, um, were done in the department or unfunded positions within the department. Um, that leaves us at the shortages we see today. Um, so you can see in oh-six, we deleted forty-four positions. Uh, oh-seven, thirty-three, in eleven, two, twelve. Um, in fiscal year twelve, there were unfunded seven positions. In fiscal year fourteen, we unfunded four. And in fiscal year fifteen, uh, we unfunded thirteen positions. Um, so that's kind of where our shortages, um, began. Um, so personnel needs in our department, um, are great, I'll be honest. Um, and questions have been asked at council before in regards to this. Um, the first, we, and we did it by division, um, if you will. So the first is, um, administration. And that's no jab that it's any more important than any of the others. Kind of an alphabetical person, so I'll kind of like to go in order. So, um, administration just came first. Um, but I know a lot of you, um, will reach out to me a lot of times and sometimes I'm not as quick as I would like to be to respond. Um, but I don't have an assist, I don't have an administrative assistant. I have a deputy director in my department, but I don't have an assistant, I don't have a secretary, um, that answers my emails or schedules my calendar. Um, I do that myself. Um, nobody else does. Um, uh, we also in our department don't have a grant coordinator. We don't have someone who writes grants. You're looking at that person. Uh, between myself and our deputy director, Ms. Summerlin, uh, we write the grants in our department. We over, help oversee the grants in our department. Um, and then marketing, you're also looking at the person, I shouldn't tell the public this, but you're looking at the person that a lot of times if they write to our social media, I'm the person who responds to them, or our deputy director is the ones responding to them. Because we don't have a marketing coordinator. We don't have somebody who does that job in our department, that does all our social media, does our flyers or does our advertising. We don't have that person. So a lot of times it's tasked between the two of us to make sure it happens. In recreation services, um, this was also asked, um, in regards to how we're staffed. And the fact that we only have one full-time person in our rec centers. Um, and that is because we lack our recreation program specialist two positions, which is also, um, full-time. So we would really need eleven of those positions to get us back, um, to having two people there. Um, and that's simply because when we lose a full-time person, we don't have someone who can go and run their building. We, we just don't have that, um, that stability to be able to do it. We have to move someone from somewhere else or we have to try to maintain it with part-time staff. And unfortunately, there have been times over the last few years where we've had to come and say, unfortunately, we're gonna have to close this facility for a short period of time until we can get the staffing. And that is never what we wanna do. We never wanna not have the resources for our community. But we're kind of tasked to choose, which site do we close? What do we do? Um, and so for us, um, that's really what we've had to do, uh, due to the lack of those positions. And I will say, when I began with the city twenty years ago, that was a position we had in all of our rec centers and all of our super centers. And all of our facilities had that staff, um, because it allows them to, one, not have to work every weekend or every hour or special event. Um, and that's what we're seeing is now with the shortage of staff, people are burnt out because we do a lot of events for the community. Uh, we see a lot of you in your, um, in your neighborhoods and your portions of the community. Because we're doing events or activities or we're having something that's going on that's providing staff to have to stay longer. Um, also, um, with this, we would also ask for something that we've seen for a long time we really needed. We have a great boxing facility here in town, but it's open part-time. And we have a lot of the community that would love to use it more often. But again, it's open part-time because it's run by part-time staff, because we've never had a full-time position to run the facility. Um, and then when it comes to recreation centers, leaders, which those are the part-time staff that work at the rec centers, the senior centers and across the recreation division, we're extremely short. Not only are we short right now because we don't have people in the positions we have, we just don't have enough positions. When I started with the city in two thousand and two, we had about ten part-timers at the site that I worked at. Today, at the very same site, we're lucky if we have four. We have four positions, but we're lucky if we ever have four. But we do have four positions down from about ten that we had for twenty years ago. So that's why we ask and we request for additional, uh, part-time positions. To be able to build our facilities back, to be able to offer more programming, to do more for the community. Um, to offset crime and violence in the community, to provide people places to go and things to do. But we just don't have the manpower with the positions we currently have to do the things that are often asked of us. Um, next, I wanna talk about park services. We get a lot, and you get a lot. Um, you get a lot of complaints and questions from citizens on why things aren't done, um, why they're not done more quickly. Um, why not, are they done, um, more efficiently sometimes? And we agree with them. We absolutely, we do the best we can with the manpower we have. But to give you an example, um, talking about the park, Cooper Creek Park, um, here in the city of Columbus is a hundred and eighty-seven acres. We do not have a full-time dedicated crew that works that park. That crew is on a rotation that gets cut just like about six or seven other parks that belong to one or two correction officers. So there's not staff that are able to go to that facility and, I'm, I'm sorry, to that park every single day and weed eat or cut grass or pick up all the trash in the park or when it floods, when the trees that fall down. Um, we're not able to do that because we don't have a dedicated, dedicated crew. So that's why we would ask for a supervisor and six full-time park maintenance worker ones, uh, because they don't have a dedicated, dedicated crew. The next part that doesn't have a dedicated crew is Flat Rock Park. Flat Rock Park here in the city of Columbus is two hundred and one point six-three acres. It doesn't have a dedicated crew. Do you know how long it takes to cut grass in two hundred and one acres? Now, don't get me wrong, there's a lot of space that we don't cut. This lake and this other things. And of course, we cut it with a bush hog, but still, we don't have the staff to maintain that park, um, like a lot of the community and, um, a lot of people would like for us to. So there we would request, again, one full-time park crew supervisor and six full-time park maintenance worker ones. The next park is Carver Park. It also does not have a dedicated crew and it's sixty-five acres. And there we would ask for the one full-time and six full-time park maintenance worker ones. Again, another park would be Heath Park. We get a lot of concern about Heath Park, um, and getting it cut and maintained and the things done that we would like to see. Um, it doesn't have a dedicated crew either. It's one of the parks that's in rotation that gets cut, um, as quickly as we can get to it. And let me say, if we get pulled because there's an event or something happens in another park and that crew ends up being pulled to work there, well, then that means that some of these other parks don't get the attention that they should as quickly. Because we just don't have the manpower, um, to put people out there. So again, for Heath Park, we would ask the same. Um, we would ask for a full-time crew supervisor and six full-time park maintenance. Um, the next park is Britt David Park. Um, we really need to add staff to that park due to all the amenities and the ball fields and everything that's in that park. So we would request, um, three full-time park maintenance worker positions. That park does have a dedicated crew, but they're just lacking in the staff they need. And that park is forty point three zero acres. And then of course, Lake Bottom Park has a crew. They do have a dedicated crew. Um, but we could also use three more full-time people there, um, and Lake Bottom is only forty-six point three acres.
Counselor Tucker.
Yes, she knows that this is my passion, parks and red. Um, so you're asking for one full-time, six, um, one full-time supervisor and six full-time for most of these parks to be there on a day, daily basis. So can you give an example of what, um, a day in the life of a crew supervisor and park maintenance looks like today? Like, how often do they, are, are they at one particular park?
That I cannot tell you. I can tell you what a typical day for them looks like, but I can't tell you how often, um, they get to a park because it varies based on the sizes of the parks. Um, cuz obviously some parts take more time to cut than others. Um, so I can't tell you that part, but I can basically tell you, they end up, um, going, and, and let me, let me back up for a second. So please understand, our parks crew supervisors, just because it says the word supervisor, don't think that they're sitting over there watching their staff work or, these are working supervisors. These are people who are in lawnmowers or weed eaters or tractors or whatever it takes. They're right out there with their staff. Um, they're just the lead, if you will, um, in their particular parks. Um, but typically, they will, they come in at seven AM and, um, they leave from, uh, Casilla Road and they will head to whatever park, um, it is that they have to start at for the day. They'll cut there until basically they get as much done or they're finished, then they'll leave and they'll go to their next park. And that's all day, every day. That's just what they do. Um, and so, you know, if it rains and they can't get it cut and they have to come back, or, you know, whatever the case is, um, somebody's out sick. Um, or we lose somebody because they move on to another position somewhere else, then we're short. So it really kind of handicaps us into what they can get done, um, just because there, there's not enough of them.
How many do we have now?
Um, I don't know the exact number per supervisor. I can tell you, we only have roughly about seventy, um, park service employees. If that helps, and I apologize, I can get exact numbers, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, just trying to, trying to look at if you have, I mean, it's a lot of acreage. Um, how long it takes to go through a hundred and eighty-seven acres or two hundred and one acres? You know, in a day or a week.
Right.
You know, how long it's taking them to actually.
Yes, ma'am. I, I totally understand. And like I said, it varies cuz it varies by park and the size. And also it varies by what's in the park. Um, is there a lake in the park? Is it just flat property? Are there trees? Is it heavily wooded? So there's a lot of things that, that go into that that changes from park to park. Um, but there again, that's the other part to why we ask for the equipment we ask for because, like I just told you, they go and they cut, 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 cut with the grass and then they move to the next park and they cut with the grass. So our equipment, um, wears out quickly. We are constantly at, at the Fleet Shop with Trail and her staff because our equipment wears out quickly. I mean, we wear out belts, we wear out, you know, things that just wear out from usage. Um, because it's a lot of grass to cut, um, in the city. So, yes, ma'am.
Counselor Grab.
Thank you. Um, Heath Park and Britt David are pretty close together. They're not, mm, they're probably within two miles of each other. So I'm wondering if those two crews could be combined and, you know, the supervisor that you need at Heath Park, if the supervisor that you have at Britt David could, could supervise both of those and then get some more staff where they're working both locations.
I'm not gonna say the supervisor couldn't manage both, but we can't do it with the number of staff we have right now. Because at Britt David, you're talking about on the Little League side, all the baseball fields and two baseballs, um, larger fields that are for, uh, Babe Ruth or Dixie that we play, plus a football field, the trail, the playgrounds. No, unfortunately, there's not enough staff to, that you could say, okay, and we'll just have one supervisor and the staff and we'll make sure they cut both. There's just not enough manpower. That's why Heath Park is in the greater rotation with correction officers and we cut with inmates. And that's why the majority of these larger parks are cut with inmates, um, and crews that go from park to park. Um, because we just don't have the man, we don't have the manpower, nor do we have the equipment to put to, to maintain them in that way.
Yeah, I would think that Britt David is probably one of your highest maintenance areas. Um, it doesn't have a lot of, um, natural areas where Heath Park has a lot more natural areas. It doesn't have a lot as much maintenance, definitely not as much maintenance as Britt David. Britt David and Lake Bottom are probably your two highest maintenance.
Heath has areas that currently need to be cut back, um, to be managed better, um, to be honest with you. But over the years, i-if anyone in the community has lived there, then they recognize that things have grown further and we've let it grow out further, which makes it natural. That's, that's not it. Um, but it's not manicured in the way that we would prefer. Um, and there's things that we, as a department, being parts of recreation, see and would prefer, but we do the best we can with the resources we have. Um, and then if a citizen needs assistance or something, then we try to do that in the park as well.
Maybe you and I could coordinate, um, a work day or, you know, a work weekend in Heath Park. Because I think I do have, um, a lot of citizens that, that would come out. We did that one time already and we had a pretty good turnout. And I think we, I think, um, maybe we can plan to do something like that.
Sure, we have, and we are grateful. We get lots of volunteers across the city throughout the year that do that and we are extremely appreciative. Um, and they are able to assist us. So, yes, ma'am.
Check, we keep Columbus beautiful and they'll, they'll jump in there and help with you too. Lisa Tutswell.
Sounds good. Okay, um, so next I wanna talk about, of course, we can continue to discuss, but these are the facilities. This is how much we oversee, um, here in the parks. Nineteen hundred and twelve acres of parkland, fifty-two parks. Um, three, thirty-two point five miles of walking trails. It's actually a little greater than that now. Um, swimming pools, rec centers, community centers, uh, playgrounds, athletic fields and auditoriums, skateboard park and dog park. Um, and so we have one trash truck. So, uh, Drell handles most of the city with refuse, but when it comes to the parks and park facilities, we maintain and do our own, um, trash pickup and trash service. Uh, most of the year, that's seven days a week with one driver and one truck. And that's all we have. Um, there are portions of the year when the, the late, um, late, late fall, basically winter, when it rains a whole lot and we don't have a lot of games and activities going on in the parks, that we will only do five days a week. But the majority of the time, it's seven days a week. Um, and it is impossible. We can't always get to all of these facilities and all of these parks in one day with one truck and one driver. So when we get complaints, uh, because a trash hasn't been picked up, we do our best. Especially if we know there's gonna be rentals or events or larger activities, then obviously we will go to there and try to make sure that we've taken care of that. But some things pop up. Sometimes things are had that we're not aware of that the public just decides to use something and that's okay. Um, but if they leave a lot of trash behind, we might not necessarily know until we get a citizen complaint because there's a lot of trash piled up. Um, but understand that we have one trash truck and one driver, um, to do all of the parks, facilities, centers, um, everything that's here in the city of Columbus. Um, when it comes to cleaning crews, um, bathrooms here in the city, we have fifty-six outdoor bathrooms. Those are cleaned by six people. That's all we have. We have two crews of three people each and they clean the bathrooms daily. Again, same thing. When we have large events, when we have things on the weekend, we works, they work, there's a crew that works seven days a week to clean bathrooms. We have to. Um, when they get vandalized, when they get destroyed, when the homeless live in them, they, we have six people. Um, and most weekends when we have softball tournaments, one of those crews has to work softball tournament at South Commons to make sure. So they will go there, they will leave, they'll make sure it's clean, they will go in the city and they will clean bathrooms. Then they'll reach a point, they'll come back, they'll make sure the bathrooms are clean for those guests that we have for out of town. We just don't have the manpower. That's, that's all we have. Um, and so that's fifty-six bathrooms. And you can see here other positions that we're asking for in park services. Um, we do a lot of setup and events. You guys have been to plenty of the events that we set up for. Um, special events, um, announcements, ground breakings, um, you name it. So we have a crew that that's their job. Um, they also have to take down and move fencing when we ho-host tournaments. That all has to be done. This is one crew and they do all of it, whether it's moving stuff because someone's requested something that has to be moved, fencing that has to be moved, or an event that they have to go do tables, chairs, tents, podiums, that's the crew. So we're asking for another person to go on that crew. Um, I mentioned before, we talked about crews that travel. We were talking about, um, parks, but we also have what's called a ball field crew. Um, those are the people that will go from park to park and help maintain the ball fields, dragging the fields, lining the fields, um, things of that nature. We really could use some more help to help those people, um, because right now they are basically killing themselves because we don't have enough of them and we have so many fields. So we're really asking for five full-time people to be able to assist. Um, soccer, same thing at soccer. Soccer does have a dedicated crew because with soccer, you have to paint the fields a lot. Especially when the field, um, layout changes. So we're constantly out there cutting the grass, um, weed eating the grass and painting the grass so we can make sure that, um, those teams have what they need for the kids to be able to participate. So we really could use two more full-time park maintenance worker one positions in that way. Um, when it comes to South Commons and AJ McClung, so South Commons, don't think about it just being the softball complex. Think about South Commons as being the area around and also in the parks. So not only in the softball field, but around the softball field, inside the football field, outside the football field and also around Golden Park. There are staff that have to maintain that and we desperately could use more because those are the people who are working seven days a week when we have tournaments. Those are the people, every weekend when we have a tournament, they don't get a break. They have to work because they're also the ones helping line the fields and set things up. If it rains, pull tarps, um, things of that nature. So we have a lot of, um, a lot of overtime in that way and a lot of burnout in that way because the staff never get the time off because we don't have enough of them, um, to allow them to be off. So we would really like to have four full-time. Um, that would allow us to. Um, that would allow us to, so, um, basically create two crews and they could rotate weekends. So they could at least have a weekend off every other weekend to spend with their families, um, which they're not really able to do very much right now. And then when it comes, like I mentioned before about trash trucks, um, we would really like to have some additional trash trucks. Um, we'd like to have another, um, what we call MEO, which is a motor quintupla operator. Um, we need three, um, MEO ones and two MEO twos and two MEO threes. Those are different level operators, which means what kind of equipment they can operate. Can they operate a dump truck? Can they operate a trash truck? Can they operate a tractor? Um, that's basically what the different designations are and that would assist us in being able to cut the parks more efficiently if we had that. Uh, Lake Oliver, Lake Oliver was renovated in two thousand and nine and we still have basically the same staff that we started with in two thousand and nine. Obviously, um, it, the amount of traffic and flow, um, that is there at that site is a lot greater than it was in two thousand and nine. So we'd really like to hire another full-time person. We currently are in the same situation there that we are in our rec centers. We have one full-time position and then we have part-time positions there as well. Well, those people are the ones that are having to pull your bait, um, for the fisherman that comes up and wants to, um, to buy, to buy worms or to buy crickets. Or whatever it is. And they might be the same person who's have to fix hamburgers or fix chicken fingers or whatever. I mean, and they're fabulous and do a great job and make sure they maintain. But it's not fair that they should have to, to be able to do both of those for our citizens who come to the counter. Um, and then that, that full-time person is working their forty hours a week and often over, just to cover the hours that we operate currently to the community. Athletic division, you can see here that we're really asking, um, for one position. Um, currently we have two full-time people that manage all athletics for the city of Columbus. And you guys just saw how many athletic fields and how many things we have here in the city. Um, I know when I started with the city twenty years ago, we had eight full-time staff. And those eight-time full-time staff, it took all they could do to keep up, um, with the programs and things that we offer. And this would really help us to be able to serve the community better if we had another person. And that's still a far cry from where we were eight years ago. That would still only give us three people. Um, the next position would be our athletic chiefs, uh, which are part-time staff and currently we have three. And we just offer so many more events and activities than we did years ago. And so those three people are forced to work all the time. Those are the people that open the complexes, if we have to open South Commons or open, uh, Memorial, um, things in that way. We always want to have somebody on site, um, to make sure if there's any problems or any issues, that we have a person there to be able to assist in our facilities. Uh, but we could really use six more of those people based on how much, um, we are currently doing as a department for the community. When it comes to aquatics, um, this is just kind of a precursor, um, for where we're gonna be, um, come next year in Memorial Day. With the addition of three pools, we're gonna need ninety-five guards, three pool managers, three assistant pool managers and nine concessionaires. Um, so those are kind of, they're our staffing and what we're projecting as we move forward for next summer. Um, this past summer, we had roughly, uh, about twenty-five guards outside and then the manager and two assistant managers. So we're looking at the same, um, type scenario as we move to open the other three pools. Also, we could really use some more maintenance staff when it comes to our, um, pools, uh, to be able to maintain them. Um, because we haven't had those, um, those outdoor pools in a number of years. We haven't had the staff either. So we're gonna need some staff to make sure that we can continue to do the year-round maintenance that's needed. What that means is that we don't want the pools to be green, we want to be able to see the bottom, um, things of that nature. And to do so, they have to keep up the chemicals, they have to work on the equipment, um, and make sure everything is in operating, um, position. Excuse me. And then when it comes to our indoor aquatics, the Columbus Aquatic Center, we would really like to have two, um, more administrative clerks. What is that position? That position is the position that runs the front desk. Currently, if someone quits, then we have to send our, uh, deputy director, so our, my assistant director of the department, has to go to the aquatic center to help out. Um, because it's very hard for us to operate when someone quits or they, they move on to a full-time or another position. Uh, these are part-time positions and we just don't have enough, um, to cover what we need to for the facility. Um, the other thing that we need is a, a aquatics program maintenance supervisor. Um, we really need that, because we are operating more hours, um, than we really can handle a lot of times, especially if someone leaves us. Um, and that seems to be an area that's very difficult to maintain or keep staff. And the reason for that is these people are working the weekends, just like the others, to host swim meets. And so they're not getting time off and they're getting burnt out. And right now, they're on a rotation. That regardless, one of them has to work the weekends to cover the hours, even when we don't have swim meets. Uh, but on the weekends, we do have swim meets. It's kind of an all hands on deck and everybody's there, but there's never time for them to take off. Um, so it would assist us if we could have one more, um, maintenance supervisor or program supervisor. To be able to put them in a rotation so that they can be off, um, and not get burnt out. Um, we also, at the indoor aquatic center, could really use five more lifeguard positions. And you're probably like, why would we need more guard positions? Um, you know, we haven't really changed the hours. What we're finding is that in order to keep our lifeguards, a lot of them obviously are high school or college age, majority are high school that are at the aquatic center. With their schedules, it's very hard to get them to work the full twenty-nine hours a week. So we're forced to work with them on, maybe they work ten hours a week or fifteen hours a week, but we're taking what we can get, because we need lifeguards. Um, and this would afford us the opportunity to add a few more guards on, that maybe can't work twenty-nine hours a week, but they could work ten hours a week with their school schedules. And would allow us to make sure we have extra, or not even extra, but enough staff to open and be open all day, the hours that we currently operate. Um, and then Britt David, um, cultural arts studio. Uh, many years ago, we had a rec specialist three position. It was cut as, um, one of the budget cuts that we took back in oh-six and oh-seven. Um, and this would allow us to put two full-time people back at that facility, which we currently do not have. Also, we would ask for three part-time pottery specialists. We would really like to see our satellite pottery studios, for those of you who don't know, but the supercenters when they were open. At Shirley Winston Solomon and Northside had their own pottery studios, so the community could come in their neighborhood and take a class. Um, we currently need extra staff to be able to operate, um, those facilities. So adding those three part-time positions, um, would allow us to do so. Oops, apologies. Um, August eighth, um, Director Hollowell came from HR and she prevented, presented the vacancies. Um, and so here's the vacancies that she presented at that time. There were a hundred and thirty-seven part-time position openings and six full-time. Those are represented here between all the divisions and the departments, to give you an idea where that, um, lies within the department. Um, I'm happy to say though, I mean, we normally do our own, um, job hiring and interviews. And we've done countless job fairs and we just haven't been very successful. So we've been working with, um, Reether and her staff. And on October the nineteenth, we're gonna kind of have a onsite, um, one day we will do everything. Um, so they'll be able to come, fill out an application, interview, we, um, and we'll be doing hiring and on-the-spot pre-employment screening. So basically, anyone who's looking for one of the jobs that we have open, they're all able to come onsite that day and it's a one-stop shop. So they can, will be able to fill out their paperwork, do an interview, be hired on the spot, go downstairs, do their drug screening. And then we're even gonna provide transportation to the government center, if they, um, at that point, to be fingerprinted and do their background check. So everything could be done in one day, um, for someone who's looking for a job, um, with the Parks and Rec Department. And that's going to be on October the nineteenth at our office at City Hall. And then next, um, we have a new, um, a new program that we started a few weeks ago. Um, and I want to say huge thank you. He's here, the warden is here from MCP. Um, he and his staff, um, he particularly, um, came to me, because we had expressed the need in our parks, that we needed safer parks. And we wanted more, um, visibility in our parks. And he stepped up with him and his staff to come to us and, and volunteer sort of, uh, to help us with that park patrol. And what that represents is that we started on August the twelfth with park patrols. There's three routes of park patrols with here in the city. And at any given time, there's gonna be three officers, whether it's officers or supervisors that are patrolling. Um, and they're patrolling thirty-one different parks, our trails, park facilities, um, and this is seven days a week. Um, so far, I know that they have had, um, positive response by the citizens that they've encountered. Um, and that's also given them the opportunity to talk with the community and deter crime before it's happening. Um, he sends me a report every week with the information of what they've encountered. Um, and I will tell you, there's been quite a few things that they have been able to kind of deter, just by them simply, um, being in the parks. Um, I don't know if he wants to speak to it or not, um, but we think it's great, um, and it's been very successful and very helpful for us in Parks and Recreation. Um, so, um, it's kind of an unseen, like Park Rangers program, if you will, but we have been, um, very excited by it.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Senate Manager and, uh, City Council, City Attorney. Uh, she said it all. We, we just, um, we presented it and, um, it was accepted. Uh, my staff at MCP stepped up and volunteered, um, whatever. We're being asked to do, we're doing it. Um, right now, we're trying to stay in the parameters of some hours, since this wasn't budgeted. But, uh, myself and Holly's become pretty good friends since, since August the twelfth. But if she calls or emails and asks us to do something or go to a park where, a couple of days ago, they was out four-wheeling in the park. Tearing, tearing up the parkland. And, uh, we had an officer, uh, one of my lieutenants was on site. And she told them to load those four wheels back up and get out of that park. And, uh, we, the next phase of it is, uh, we're gonna see about being able to ticket those folks that we seeing in the park areas where they don't supposed to be. And, um, go ahead and start enforcing, uh, the rules of those parks. Um, seven days a week, we kind of divvying the hours up. Uh, when the most people are in the parks, hopefully we can expand those hours some. We have three vehicles currently, um, that's gonna also probably be a part of the next year's budget request to get some new vehicles. Um, those vehicles have been, uh, pretty much kind of taken out of service. And, uh, we're using, utilizing the best way we can. So, uh, we have, I don't think we're gonna be able to go away, because the citizens have now adopted MCP. And MCP has adopted the citizens. Um, we had Sergeant went out there and took ice pops out to some of the kids that were playing. I took some water out to Lake Bottom. The guys was out there playing ball in a hundred-degree weather with nothing to drink. So, um, before I left, my new name was Unc, instead of Warden Walker. But, you know, we, we were spending ninety-five, we were spending ninety-five percent of the time talking about five percent of the people who were causing trouble. Instead of focusing ninety-five percent of our time on those ones that was out there enjoying the parks. And so that's kind of the message that we have going around MCP and, uh, relaying to Holly. So whatever we can do, whatever she needs, she know we're here for.
Ward, we appreciate that. Y'all have done an outstanding job. Just the presence out there has given a, a greater sense of safety. And of course, one of the most important things, uh, that we do in public safety, it's all important. Making sure that these youngsters that are out there enjoying the parks when they're out of, out of school. Uh, I mean, that's, that's something that is, it's, it's immeasurable, the kind of peace of mind it gives to the parents. So, great partnership. Counselor Huff.
Warden Walker, thank you sir. Director, uh, Browder. Uh, I was thinking back to, that's all I knew as a kid going to Carver Park. Uh, the guy's name, I can't remember his name right now, but he was the officer, always at Carver Park when we walked in. They had a little store there, they had the lake, they had the boats, they had fishing. And he was our protector, you know, we were, we were boys and we got into little scuffles and things. But he separated us and gave us a little talking to and we went on to enjoy the park. So I think that this, this has been needed for a long time. So I'm glad you're taking it on. Uh, I, I, I can see where the public would be embracing you. Because this is, uh, this is what it's going to take for those, that five percent, to understand that they need to take that elsewhere. So we can get back to enjoying our parks and get the kids back out, walking, running and having a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks sir.
Went to that? If, if there's any additional questions?
Counselor Tucker.
Thank you, um, Director Browder. This was a very informative, um, presentation today. One of the questions that I had, and I know that, um, I think myself, Counselor Coggo and, I can't think of the other individual, might have been, um, Counselor Crab. Um, wanted to probably go into a deeper dive with Parks and Rec. Um, one of the questions, when I had the town hall, um, at Shirley B. Uh, was, was our, like, five-year plan. Um, so developing, we, I mean, for the most part, you have a pretty good, um, inventory of what's needed, but to truly take a deep, deep dive and have that in a, a plan, you know, to see what we have. I mean, it was good to know the acreage of Carver Park and, you know, Flat Rock and all these places. But also the inventory of what we have within Shirley B and Frankchester. Meaning those, um, things that we discussed regarding treadmills, basketball courts. But looking at everything we have and developing a plan. Um, and forecasting our needs, um, in the future, you know. So from, if we wanna start working on it now and it be a twenty-twenty-four five-year plan. Um, looking out to see where we're gonna head in reference to Parks and Rec. And then also getting public input, I mean, dr- doing a true, um, five-year plan. Um, I know for some of those grants, that they do request, you know, some of that, that information. Um, but I do think is, is needed. That way we'll know, um, how to assist you as counselors. If we see exactly, it's almost like doing a needs assessment, but just going a little further. Like what, what do we want Parks and Rec to look like, um, in twenty-thirty? Cause you know, what's crazy is really right around the corner. Time is gonna go by fast. Um, so this, this was, I feel like this was good. This was a good start. Now it's time for us to forecast.
So if I may, um, the department, because we're an accredited agency with the National Association of Parks and Recreation, um, Association. Um, here in United States, there's less than two hundred of us. I will say that, because I've served on their committee, so I know how many of us there are. Um, as part of that, we have to have a master plan, um, that's turned in as part of our accreditation. So we currently have a master plan, but master plans can change. And the biggest part of our master plan that changed was that we received, um, SPOS funding, um, here in Columbus. Um, so before that, we had a master plan that now, because of the SPOS and the opportunity to do some of the things that we looked at. Really needs to be reevaluated and updated. And so I know that Becky, uh, Summerlin and I have discussed at, at length. Um, the changes that we're gonna make, um, for that. And yes, it does. It has the five-year increments, if you will, to that, on what that will look like long-term. Um, because many of the things that I discussed with you today, there are SPOS projects, um, or the things that, to your point, that need to be, um, identified or need to be worked on. Most of those are already outlined in our master plan, um, that just simply need to be updated. Um, to make sure that we're receiving accurate information from the community. Um, and as you know, when I, cause I was, you were with me at one of the ones that we did. We do ask for public input. Like when we did the pools, um, I went to every facility, all of our part, um, areas, if you will, the districts. That we're gonna have the pools replaced in. I mean, we ask for community input. Um, we often do Survey Monkey and do surveys online to ask for or garner, um, input from the community. So yes ma'am, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, but I don't want anyone to think that we don't already have a plan. Um, we do. It just is time for it to be updated.
Yeah, and I, I'm not sure if that master plan was shared with the council. I think I recall seeing something, but it seemed like it was real general. I don't know how detailed that master plan is and if there's something that can be shared with council.
Okay, um, we can certainly share. Um, I'll have to see, because we worked, when we did it. Um, so our plan, um, we worked on started in twenty-fourteen and it's typically a twenty-year plan, is, is how we do it. Um, and planning at the time helped us work on it. So they were the keepers, if you will, of the document. Um, but we can certainly, if any way possible, we'll be happy to share. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Huff.
Thank you sir. Uh, first point, I wanted to, uh, have you to give kudos to your, uh, Director James King.
Yes.
Rec center person. Uh, he had a great opening at Tillis Rec Center a couple of weekends ago. Uh, I didn't get a chance to see the interview he did with Channel Nine, but there were a lot of kids and parents and had popcorn and everything. And I just went by to see him. He seemed, he was happy, but I mean, the, the people in the neighborhood, some people parked, some walked around. It was, it was a great day. Um, my other piece is, cause you have, uh, Director Sherman here from the, uh, Sports Council. Uh, Clay Dickey, uh, has one of the largest. Clay Dickey has one of the largest African-American traveling softball tournaments. He was here August 5th and I had no idea. It was too quiet. So if I could get Director Sherman and the city manager, if we could advertise this Labor Day tournament coming up. He's bringing ninety teams to Columbus, Georgia this weekend. If we could put it on CCG and our website and you could put it on your website and everything and we could get word out. But I spoke with some people from Atlanta and one young lady as far as LA. They brought a whole team here from Los Angeles, California, and she said she would be back. So they had a good time and I can't imagine, I want to take a look at the economic impact because I think they had probably sixty, sixty-five, sixty-six teams about August 5th, first weekend in August. But I don't know who knew they were here. They had, they had like a large following, but I didn't see, I saw it on your calendar, but I didn't see anything, social media pushing it, you know? So I spoke with him a couple of days ago and I told him I would let you know, you know, that we could probably push it and try to get people out, let you know, let them know they're there. And the last question they had was, they said, a lot of the teams love the atmosphere, but when you cut the trees down, it's very hot now. So they wanted to know, will there be any future of a canopy type piece put up where the fans can sit and enjoy the game?
So yes, sir. The answer to that is yes. And it's already been designed and we are currently waiting for them to install it. That seems to be the, the problem nowadays. Anytime you want something done, we want it done yesterday. They're not quite as in a hurry as we are. But actually, they're getting ready to get started on pouring the concrete slabs. The slabs will go back in those areas. If you've been to South Commons, you knew that in between the complexes or in between the fields per se, there, it was a very rounded mound and then the pine trees were up on top of that with a lot of pine, pine straw debris. We lost some trees over the year. So the trees were removed and they have been graded and so now it's flat. And so those areas will see brand-new concrete being poured very shortly. US Council have approved it and have approved the new shade structures that will go up. And so in between all of the fields will be very large. I can't quote the exact footage, but somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-five to forty feet in length. I think that's about right, lengthwise to cover. And it will basically cover where the tree shade was before. And so we'll have very, very nice canopies to provide shade for those in between games and also those watching the current games on the field. So we're gonna make sure we take care of this.
Other than that, other than that, you know, I was introduced to him when he first came. And he's really fallen in love with Columbus. And he said that he went out, Mr. City Manager, he went out and put a poll out among all of the teams. And the teams voted to come back to Columbus. They love it here. So the canopy piece, I'll let him know. I'm gonna go out this weekend. But it's the most fascinating thing I've ever seen. Because you see a lot of college tournaments and things, but just everyday people having fun playing softball. And they take time to spend their own monies and travel all around the country. So I'll be out there this weekend, but thank you. I'll let him know shade is coming soon. So please keep coming back. Thank you.
All right, Holly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Browder. Mayor, the last topic is from Chief Appraiser of the Tax Assessor's Office, Suzanne Whitehouse.
Before we get to that, Counselor Thomas had a comment.
Mr. City Manager, before we leave your agenda here, if you will, I know that you will remember and the council will remember that at our council meeting last week, we passed a motion to increase the radius of the dollar ride car in Columbus and that we were told that as part of that, there had to be at least two, I believe, two or maybe three public meetings in order to put this out if we were gonna increase the governmental radius. Have those meetings been scheduled?
We've not scheduled the date yet, but we are going to do an update for you with consultants at the meeting on the 12th. I think we, I think it was yesterday, we met with the lawyers. And we are gonna come to you with an update on 12th.
Well, one of the things that council said last week as we were having this discussion is that we want this done quickly, as soon as possible. Because we have citizens out there who are not being able to get where they need to go. And we think that this action will, will help with that. So please don't wait for two more weeks before you, or three more weeks before you schedule those meetings. They need to be, you know, we need to get those things in place so that we can move as quickly as possible to get our dollar ride into the communities where it needs to be.
We, we are working to schedule those.
Thank you.
Counselor Tucker?
Thank you, Counselor Thomas, for bringing that up. I actually received a text message from the individual that was here, Mr. Rika. And he wanted to know what was the process regarding scheduling the dollar ride. Were we going to go ahead and let him call and schedule the dollar ride?
And that's why we're gonna give you an update. If you want me to do that, we'll do it. But I'm trying to make sure we are legal and we don't have any violations. And that's why we continually keep the attorney involved. And we, we just met, but if you're asking me to do it, we'll do it.
Yeah, cause I think he was within the
Well, and, and they are telling us not to even refer to it as dollar ride. Mayor, you were on it. You were with us on it.
Is it paratransit?
No, they would refer to it as premium service. And so not dollar, premium service and not dollar ride. And, and all we wanna do is operate within the FTA and keep all of us out of trouble. And so, and, and I forgot, Mayor, you did join us in the, in the call with the lawyers and with the consultants who've been doing this for forty years. And, and we are going to do an update on the 12th. And so I, I want to do it right. And that's what we're trying to do. And, but if you want something done before that, you tell me.
Yeah, cause it looks like per the regulation that we as a city can, can go above and beyond. It was, I mean, per the regulation that, I think I sent it to the city attorney, the assistant city attorney with that information. I don't know if you wanted to say something, Mr. Fay?
Hit your button, if you would.
Yeah, that's what we learned yesterday from the consultants. You can always go above and beyond, but there's gonna be a certain cost. And you gotta follow the process to get it in place. And you don't wanna call it paratransit. You're gonna need to call it a premium service that would be accessible to everybody within the particular radius, not just one or two folks. Yeah, it's doable. There's gonna be a cost and they're, they're coming up with the cost and the process that the city manager wants to bring you on the 12th, but it can be done.
Okay, so. Yeah, well, Councilor Crabbe was asking in reference to the person that's grandfathered in, are they paying for the service? Do we know if they're paying for the service?
Well, they, what do you mean paying for it? They'll pay for it if they use it.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. Are the person that's grandfathered in that's being picked up right now?
Oh, absolutely.
Are they paying?
Oh, yeah. When they use it.
When they use it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, but it, it's more complicated than you, you might think as the lawyers could see yesterday. And, and, and we can certainly do it. But it's gonna require more buses. It's gonna require more drivers. It's, it's a because of what the federal government requires in the equity thing. And, and so what we were planning to do is bring you an update and kind of outline these things for you. And, and so you, you gotta have your full-scale plan together or how you gonna do it citywide when you do your public hearing? You just can't, I mean, you don't just go do the public hearing and say, we're gonna expand service. You gotta tell them something. And, but if you're saying you want to do it in advance of that, just tell me. But we want to make sure that we don't have any compliance issues. That's my thing. Because if you got compliance issues, we know how it is with the feds. You can have one form not signed. You can do one thing and they want the money back. And we just don't wanna put ourselves in a, an awkward position.
Okay, so it, so right now, because the person might be listening or others might be listening at the second Tuesday council meeting, we're gonna get an update in reference to, it's gonna be called premium?
You're gonna get an update on what we need to do to expand the service citywide. It would not be tied to, or as the lawyers heard yesterday, you don't want to, you don't want to tie to your dollar ride program in any kind of way. You want it to be something above and beyond, but separate. And they can tell you better than I can because they've been doing it for forty years. I recommend we follow what the consultants provide. To make sure that we don't have any issues.
Okay, and
That's what I recommend.
And they're gonna look at probably like best practices of other communities that may be doing this similar?
Well, I think the lawyers heard him and what I recall is that no one else is doing it.
Maybe Rhode Island, but I mean, you're talking only one or two places, but you gotta call it a premium service. Gotta be available to everybody at twice the mileage rate away.
Yeah. And, and my preference would be to slow down, comply or get it right by making sure we're
They're gonna put together a plan, should be by the 12th. So I would just listen to what they say.
So you were saying, Mr. Fay, it was in Rhode Island that they actually go above and beyond?
I thought they said Rhode Island had been the one
So, so let me Yeah, let me just say the, the full plan won't be ready by the 12th, but they'll be able to
At least you could get an idea of the mechanics. And you could probably start it, but it's gotta be across the board. You gotta have hearings. You still gotta have two or three hearings.
Yeah, you, you gotta promote it and you gotta advertise it citywide.
Right.
You know? And so if you advertise it citywide, the reason you don't tie the dollar ride is you cannot neglect your dollar ride for the premium service. Because that's when you're gonna get in trouble with the feds.
They made that clear. You've gotta keep paratransit and dollar ride is your minimum, minimum requirement. It's gotta be met, but you can go above and beyond, but there's a process.
Yes, there's a process. And, and I just wanna get it right. That's all.
All right, Counselor Begley?
Would there be less legal red tape if we kept it the same program but changed our route map?
What you say, change your route map?
If we adjusted
You may expand the public transit portions?
I, I'm saying keep dollar ride the same proximity to Metro, but change the Metro route. Is there, is there less red tape to do that?
You mean expand the route so that you're not, the, the dollar ride, that person is within three-fourths of a mile?
You can say expand. I'm saying change the route. Well, is there, I mean, are we not, do we have to have federal approval to change our Metro route map?
Well, yeah. You, you gotta go through that process of, of public hearings. You cannot expand or decrease. You can't even, you can't cut a route without having these public hearings and going through that process.
Even for Metro, we have to go through a public process?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
So, but now that's a good thought that you, you have. If that route that is, that makes that personally of, I hate to say it out loud, three-fourths of a mile, well, outside of the three-fourth mile, if you move the route out, that puts that person closer to within the three-fourth mile.
Is that, is that easier? I guess that's what
Well, that's a good question.
That's why it's
Yeah, but, but, but I'm saying if you do it for that person, that's why I don't wanna say it out loud. And someone else said, says, well, bring the route out some where I live over here so that I'll be within three-fourths. And so
I think it's slightly different because we, there was already one person that was affected. And, and so I think the, I think it's, hey, we, we missed something. We created this initial route. I think going forward, there'll be better communication around what's covered within the routes. Cause I think that was part of the issue was a miscommunication. And so if we, if we do change the route, if that's the easier step. And then it also gives us more time to pursue any kind of more
And I guess I say, you know, we had a, we had two consultants with us. One has been doing this component, I think he said for forty years, forty, forty years.
Yeah, that, I guess that's my only request. When you are talking to the consultant, consider the idea of like, would a, would it be less?
Well, certainly we can, we can ask that, but I, I'm saying when we, if, if we do it and we're saying it out loud here and someone else asks for that same thing.
We'd have to make that decision.
That's right. So.
Well, we got a few others here that wanna comment. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Is the consultant aware of the grandfathered-in rider?
Absolutely.
And they do not think that that's a compromise already?
It's, it's not a compromise because that was approved some time ago. And, and they will, Metro would have gone through FTA to make sure there were no issues with that. And, but the consultant went and pulled the video from the last meeting and they watched all of your discussion. And
Take a deep breath and
I'd know, right?
Say what
And they had concerns about the discussion and what was being proposed.
Okay.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, I did not in any way mean to imply that I wanted you to do something that was not appropriate or not legal. I just wanted to, again, bring to your attention and to the attention of whoever is working on this issue that council very definitely said, do it as quickly as possible so that we can get it done, not only for Mr. Morrison, but for anybody else in the city that needs this service. And I'm probably gonna ask you about every council meeting, where are we on this until you tell me, here's the plan? Okay? But because this is such an issue for those of our citizens who are handicapped or who have some disability of some sort to get to where they need to be. And council said, do it quickly. And I believe one of the last things I said to you was, I'm gonna hold your feet to the fire until we get it done. And so consider your feet held to the fire today and we're gonna do that until we get it done correctly.
Yes. And, and that's why, you know, I, I say, we're doing it as quickly as we can. We just gotta do it right.
Absolutely.
And that's why we convened consultants quickly. And that's why we included the attorneys in that meeting because we wanna do it right.
Now, are these consultants consultants who typically work with the FTA to do this, this sort of thing?
Yes, and they've worked with us. And, and, and we want, and, and the mayor wanted to be involved and that's why he was in that meeting. So quickly, I just wanna be clear, you know, cause they're gonna outline it for us and 'cause they're gonna outline it for us, and I hope that we can tell you, give you some dates for a, um, for public meetings at the next meeting. I hope that we're able to do that. But if not, it would be for a reason, not that we don't want to, it would be because of process.
Do it as quickly as possible.
Yes, I got you, I understand.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Yes.
Counselor Kogle?
I, I think the point was made, I think it, Counselor Thomas was just asking for a date, so that, uh, it sounds like you're gonna bring us some options on the twelfth of September, and that way, if we are able to publicize those dates now, and ahead of time, um, with Labor Day weekend coming, people can plan ahead, we can get our proper communication out there, and that way, we're not pushing this until, um, October, so, um, even if we have some temporary dates out there, um, that can be presented, so that we can
That's why I wanna be clear, I don't know if I'm gonna have dates for you on the twelfth.
Okay.
If the consultant can work with us, and we can do it right, and have dates, we'll have dates. If it doesn't work, we will not have dates. We just, we have, look, I've been, as you know, we have been through situations dealing with fe- federal dollars, and we just don't wanna go there.
I would, I just would hate to see it lengthened up.
I would too, I, I mean, I wanna, I'd like to get it done, just like you, but we gotta do it right. Uh, with that, I have Suzanne Whitehouse, uh, and she's going to talk with us about Department of Audits and Accounts' sales ratio study, uh, Ms. Whitehouse.
Good afternoon, everyone. So, the 2022 Georgia Department of Audits and Accounts, uh, statewide equalized sales ratio studies been released. And, um, to kinda give you an idea of where we are in the state, out of one hundred and forty, fifty-nine counties, only forty of them are in compliance, we're not one of them. Uh, a hundred and seventeen of them are within threshold, but they're not compliant to be able to equalize the Public Utilities Digest to forty percent. And eighty-one of the hundred and fifty-nine, or fifty-one percent, are below the thirty-six ratio. So this is kinda what the state looks like at the moment. Everybody who's red is below, uh, thirty-six. If they're green, they're below thirty-eight. If they're white, they're between thirty-eight and forty-two, and if they're in black, they're above forty-two. So, the question is, is how do we get here? Couple of things are going on, one is in 2011, um, the state legislature passed Senate Bill 346, which placed a sales cap on properties that said that if a property sold, the next year, the value could not exceed its sales price. Fine and good, in a quiet market, that's only going up a couple of percentage points year over year. But when you have a market that's going up fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent, that means that the next year, you're already undervalued. So, that's half of how we got there. The other half was in 2015, they passed House Bill 202. And House Bill 202 changed the way the Department of Audits and Accounts does their review of our sales ratio study. And it says that they will adjust upward or downward, um, the data that they're using to reflect January one, so they say. So, one of the things that's important to note is that as of January first, that's our date that's controlling. So, when we are talking about data that Department of Audits is using, we have to use to create value for January one of 2022, which is the year in question. We're, we're all the way back to 2022. We have to use sales data from 2021. Department of Audits uses sales data from 2022. So we are using two different sets of data, and we're using two different sets of rules. We have one set of rules that we use, and they have another set of rules that you, they use. We do not trend our data. Our data is the raw data. We look at it, um, we use the median sales price in order to determine what our value is going to be for that one January of 2022. So it is not trended data, because we have adequate sales in the prior year. So twenty-one, we had plenty of sales in order to establish a market for 2022. But then they turn around, and they use the twenty-two data, they're supposed to trend it back to January one in order to determine whether our values were good. So they're auditing us on data that we don't even get to use. So, a couple of things happen as a result of that. They're, they're using, we're, we're operating on two different sets of rules. We are not adjusting to January first, because we're using data that's already occurred to determine a value. They're using different set of data. And that trending and time adjustments that they're doing is creating this greater disparity in a, in an escalating market, the difference between what we're capping stuff because of sales in that subsequent year, and then the trending that they're doing, it's just, it's, it's exasper, it's exacerbate, bleh, I can't even say my word today, exacerbating, um, the, the situation. And I'm gonna give you some examples. We had a sale, December of 2021, bare lot. That's all it was, bare piece of land. Twenty twenty-two, they pulled a permit, December twenty-first of 2021, to build a house on it. Construction didn't start till after one January. The law states controlling is what the situation of the property was on one January. Okay? Pretty clear, it was a bare lot. Had a permit to build a house, but no house, it was a bare lot. They built the house, they sold the house, sold for four hundred thousand dollars. Guess which sales department of audit used? They used that four hundred thousand dollar sale, and they bumped it up against our capped bare lot sale from twenty-one, for like twenty thousand dollars. We ended up with a ratio of five. They used that in the audit. We found ten of those that they used. And that just pulls our number down. Our number, and I'm sorry, this is so small, and it's kinda hard to read, um, this is the, this is the Department of Audit's results. And they break it down by individual categories, you'll see that we have residential, agricultural, commercial, industrial. How much ag do you think we actually have here in Muskogee County? There ain't a whole lot of agriculture. You'll notice twenty-four hundred supposed samples in their study. Those are residential units that are using the land. Industrial, do you think we had ninety-four industrial sales in 2022? No, we didn't. They pulled, they, they do, in order to have enough samples, they'll pull parcels, they'll do their own, um, appraisals. They're supposed to provide us with that list for the appraisals, and they're supposed to give us the actual appraisals if we request them. I have yet to see the list of properties they use for those appraisals. So I can't tell you whether that's accurate or not for the industrial. So, these are some of the issues that we have with this Department of Audits, uh, ratio study for 2022. So that's kinda the reason that I'm here to talk to you all, because it has ramifications for us. Now internally, we run sales ratio studies ourself, before we release notices of assessment. And we run initial ones that tell us what the situation is before we make adjustments to the digest, and what the situation is after we make the adjustments. This is our overall. Our system does it using a fair market value, the state of Georgia uses an assessed value, so off to the side there, I've put the assessed values in there. The bottom number is the one that matters, that's the median, and that's the one that we get rated on. And you'll see that our bottom number on our internal sales ratio, after we made our adjustments to the digest, was thirty-nine point six. That is right where it's supposed to be, we're supposed to be between thirty-six and forty-four. We wanna be between thirty-eight and forty-two in order to assess public utilities at forty percent. Thirty-nine point six is about as good as it gets. And we did a, a just over ten percent increase, gross increase to the digest in twenty-two. So we increased that digest in twenty-two, we increased it again in twenty-three, but we increased it in twenty-two to get us to this point. But Department of Audits says we're at thirty-four. Department of Audits says, oh yeah, you're uniform, you're unbiased, but you're undervalued, is what Department of Audits said for our 2022 valuations. Because they're using data that happened after the data valuation, while the market has continued to escalate. And they did not, and were not trending it back to that one January timeframe for that controlling. So, this is our overall study, uh, residential, also with thirty-nine point six. Um, and then our commercial was a forty point four, our commercial includes commercial and industrial together. So, here's the process, we would like to appeal this. The Board of Assessors does not have the right to appeal. The right to appeal is limited to the county governing authority and the school system. Um, the school system is doing a called meeting to discuss this issue tomorrow afternoon, and I will be there to let them know the situation as well. The process to appeal is we have to appeal by September eighth. Um, once we appeal, once we file the appeal, we will get all of the data. The appeal is actually handled by the Board of Assessors, but we don't, we act as your agent, we don't have the right to actually file the appeal. Um, so we will be able to collect all the other data that we're still missing, once we file that appeal, they have to give it to us, so we will get that. Um, then they will schedule a hearing, it's an informal hearing for the first step. We'll go through, we'll show all the data that we've got, we'll scrub all of the data that, that they have provided to us, which we've already done. Um, and then they will have the opportunity to make adjustments, if they so choose. They will let us know what their findings are. If we disagree with those findings, we have the ability to continue it on to arbitration. Uh, we have fifteen days from the, from when they provide us with their appeal findings. If it goes to arbitration, it's done with a, a panel of three arbitrators, we pick one, they pick one, and the two arbitrators together pick the third one. Um, the decision of the arbitrators is final at that point. So, here's what's at risk right now. Because Department of Audits says that our ratio is below thirty-eight, means that we cannot assess public utilities at forty percent. We would have to assess public utilities at thirty-four point two seven percent. That works out to about just over nine hundred thousand dollars in revenue at risk, split between this body and the school board, uh, for the city, about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars of revenue. And you know, I always say I don't do taxes, but I did the taxes on this one. Um, that would be revenue that is at risk of being collected if we don't, uh, appeal this, and get them to acknowledge that they didn't use good data. Um, the, uh, school has about five hundred and forty thousand at risk. So last year, a whole bunch of counties, um, appealed theirs, we, we did not appeal ours last year, we were okay. Um, so far, from all of the colleagues that I've spoken with, everybody that I've spoken with that appealed, did prevail, because they ended up with these same kind of situations. We can do, most of the analysis is, uh, can be done in-house, we're already doing it. Um, we can hire an industry expert for a flat fee of forty-five hundred dollars, they will represent us all the way through the process. Uh, this is somebody that has handled these appeals last year, and will be handling them this year. Um, the arbitration costs are two hundred and fifty doll, up to two hundred and fifty dollars per arbitrator, plus per DM and travel costs per arbitrator. Um, I believe that the city attorney's office has already prepared a resolution that spells out total cost. Um, the school board has already indicated a willingness, provided they passes their school board tomorrow, I just, I've spoken with Dr. Lewis, they've already indicated a willingness to split the cost, this forty-five hundred and the cost of the arbitrators with the city. Um, so it would be basically half of what I have up there on the board is, is what would cost the city to appeal this. No, they're gonna split it fifty-fifty.
Counselor Thomas?
Um, let me make sure that I understand, um, this process. We appeal to the Department of Audits.
Yes, ma'am.
They make a decision.
Yes, ma'am.
If we don't like that, then we, um, we can file an appeal that would be handled by the three arbitrators.
Correct.
And then the, the decision of the three arbitrators is final.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I had that process correct, thank you.
It's a, it's a two, it's a two-step process.
Got all the questions for the moment?
No, I, uh, Counselor Crabbe, I thought you were speaking to this side, Counselor Crabbe?
I would like to see the split forty-sixty, because we get forty percent, they get sixty percent. So, they pay sixty percent of the expense, and we would pay forty. Not fifty-fifty. We base it on the, on the split.
Well, we can pass a resolution subject to that split of sixty-forty.
I think historically, though, they have argued that they pay full price for the collections that we, we do, and which, and there's been some discussion that in other communities where it's, it's collected like that, uh, it's not, as I had, split more favorably for them, I just, I just throw that out there, because I think
They've asked quite frequently that we let them pay a lower cost for collection of all the tax digest money.
And i- if I may, it, they don't actually have to participate. That's the other thing. It only requires the approval of one, of you boards. So if y'all approve going forward with the appeal, they can say no. So, that's just something to bear in mind, it's, it, it doesn't require both of you to appeal, it only requires one to appeal.
I like the idea, I just
I, I prefer, I prefer having, I prefer having both of you on board, because to me, that gives more support to our appeal.
Forty-sixty.
Okay. So
Well, we've got a resolution around the table on the agenda for the equal split, we can condition that, if, if the majority of council wants to do that forty-sixty split, but we need to have that amendment first, if we're gonna do that.
I make a motion that we would split it forty-sixty.
That we would go forward with the appeal, with the one
Yes.
Amendment, okay. All right, so the motion is to move forward with the appeal, but modify the resolution to reflect a forty-sixty split in cost of, of the process. Is there a second? All right, dies for lack of a second. Does anybody wanna consider the appeal with the original fifty-fifty?
Resolution on the table, as is, would be the resolution authorizing an appeal of the results of State Department of Audit's twenty-two sales assessment ratio with cost split fifty-fifty between Columbus and the Muskogee County School District has set forth with the proposed expenses, and that's ready for adoption.
All right, hearing none, it'll, we won't appeal it. So move to up, to adopt that resolution. All right, there's a motion and a second to adopt the resolution that's around the table, which is the appeal with the fifty-fifty split of the cost of the appeal. Uh, any discussion, Counselor Thomas?
And Mrs., Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, to, uh, Counselor, uh, Crabbe's position, we're talking about nine hundred dollars here, and I don't want us not to appeal for nine hundred dollars, quite frankly, I think that that, I mean, I, I agree with you that if they if they, um, get sixty percent, perhaps they should pay more. But I don't want this not to go forward on the basis of nine hundred dollars.
All right, there's a motion, second, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's unanimous, it passes.
All right. And that passes, Ms. Whitehouse, you can inform the school board and let us know their decision too.
Counselor Kogle?
Let us, let us know, absolutely.
Thank you, she, well, you may have a question, is there a question?
No, it's not, it's not to
Suzanne, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Is this a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, Counselor Kogle wants to make a motion, Mayor.
Okay.
Um, since we're at the end of our agenda, um, there's, uh, been a series of events, um, that have been happening as of late, and I think, uh, council needs to initiate our powers And I think, uh, council needs to initiate our powers, uh, to have an investigative firm to work in conjunction with our internal auditor. So I'd like to make a motion to request that we hire Troutman and Pepper. To work alongside of our internal auditor in a previously approved audit with the intention and goal of. Providing a detailed report of some of the concerns that have surfaced. Um, I think we just need to get some answers. And we need some help to completely understand, uh, some of the issues that are going on so that we can get back on track and in control.
Motion and second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes.
And then Mayor, we will, of course, get with the internal auditor, let her know this particular vote and with Troutman Pepper as well.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, if it would be appropriate at this time, I'd like to add a resolution to excuse, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Allen from today's meeting.
Motion second to approve, uh. Mayor Pro Tim's absence. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's excused.
Thank you.
Shouldn't have. He's out there floating somewhere. No, I don't know where he is. I think he went on a cruise. Alright. I think that, is there anything else that needs to come before the council today? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, we're adjourned.